What? All right, folks. It is 9:05. We're already behind schedule. So if I could get everyone to take a seat, feel free. There is still food and beverages outside, but we are going to start the meeting now. I obviously need some of my colleagues to come up here and join me so we can have a quorum as well. I believe I saw Mayor Protem Negrete and Councilmember Terosus. If I could get them to come in. That's all right. When we're here at 3:10, we'll know who to blame. All right, we are going to begin. We have an overwhelming majority of council members here on our makeshift dais. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for coming out on this drizzly Santa Monica week. The mayor has no control over the weather. I want to make everyone clear about that. When it's good, I take credit for it. When it's bad, it's not my problem. So we're going to call to order, and we're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is over here to my right, so if you'll stand. I think we will have Mr. Smith. We will -- all right, okay. How about Ms. Cola? Will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll now have the roll call.
Councilmember De La Torre.
Here.
You have to press the button.
Oh, yeah, it's working. Okay.
Councilmember Terosus.
Here.
Mayor Protem Negrete.
Here.
Councilmember Brock.
Here.
Councilmember Para.
Here.
And Councilmember Swick.
Here.
And the mayor's here, too.
And the mayor -- I'm sorry. I'm looking at everybody.
That's okay. So obviously, we're not here in council chambers. I want to thank my colleagues for accepting the change of venue. What it does mean is I don't have the magic get-in-line machine that tells me when you've pushed your button to request to speak, so I'll try and have my head on a swivel. But don't be afraid to, in sort of votoche, call up and say, hey, I'd like to speak if needed, because I will try and keep an eye out, but it's a little harder without the technology that I've come to depend on. So I'm going to give you a brief overview of how today's going to go. I'm going to start out by asking all of you to silence your cell phones. I'm sure you have wonderful ringtones, but it might interfere with what people are saying. So first, and because this is our council workshop, we tend to be a little less formal than we do when we're in council chambers, so we will be using first names today, which we should not all get in the habit of. We want to always be respectful of people, but we're in a little more informal environment, so we're going to be a little more informal here today. So first, our city manager, David White, is going to kick the day off, and then we're going to hear public input after we hear the staff presentation. After public input, we'll hear from Gigi Decavales Uz, the city's finance director, sharing a comprehensive budget update. Next, we'll hear from Susan Klein, Assistant City Manager, with an organization status update. And after both presentations, we're going to stop for council questions. So I'm going to ask you all to hold all your questions, and then we'll have questions relating to those two presentations, and it'll be questions only, folks. Our goal is to complete these two presentations and the questions in the morning, and then we're going to break for lunch. Then after lunch, the city manager will present the proposed council priorities for fiscal year '23-'25, and at that point, each council member will be able to ask questions of staff and then provide comments and make any motions related to the priorities. Then the city manager will start the presentation on the proposed fiscal year '23-'25 budget items that reflect investments in what we believe will probably be our adopted priorities. Obviously, that may change depending on the prior item. And for these items, we'll use a similar process. Staff presentation will be provided. We'll go into council member questions and questions only, and then we'll go into comments, and at that point, motions can be made as necessary. So after this, the city manager will briefly go over the next steps, and then we'll begin the meeting. This is a workshop, so we have a couple of rules going forward. As I indicated, we'd like you to silence your phones. If you do need to take a call or there's an emergency, please feel free to step out. Also, even though we don't have our Rules of Civility posted, I do want to remind everyone that we really do want everyone to feel comfortable making their comments, so we ask that people be respectful and that they not make any comments while other people are speaking, that they not speak out loud or try and engage the council from the audience. If you support something someone says, we have a tradition here in Santa Monica of using what they call jazz hands or happy hands. Feel free to raise your hands if you agree with someone, but please, everyone should feel comfortable making their comments. A couple of things I want to emphasize. The first thing is, this is obviously a very important meeting. What we do here today is going to set the budget priorities really for the foreseeable future for the city, and so I think it's really important that we try and stay focused on what we're here to do today, which is let staff know what our budget priorities are. There are other things I know that we'd all like to discuss, and those will be appropriate at another time and place, but not today. And the one thing I want to say is, you know, as we've been preparing for this, I've been getting a lot of input from people about, ah, you know, the city has lots of money, and you're going to hear a presentation today that will disabuse you of that belief. But the one thing I want everyone to understand is that we're here to govern, and that means sometimes making trade-offs. And so, you know, we want to hear your input as to what those trade-offs may be or should be, but I think that the most important thing we hear about is what's important to you, because that's going to guide our work for the remainder of the day. So I really appreciate you all being here. I appreciate your braving the weather. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our city manager, David White, and let him make some opening comments.
I'm done. Good morning and welcome, everyone. Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council, thank you so very much for taking a Saturday out and being with us and focusing on priorities and our budget, and thanks to all the community members that are here as well. It's nice to see so many folks out here this morning. So I'm going to go through some opening remarks, and then we'll kick it off through our agenda. And before I do that, I also want to thank, you'll see in some of the back rows over there, our department head leadership team. I want to thank all of them as well for being here and being here to support all of you and respond, hopefully, to all your questions as we get through this morning. This workshop is an important first step in our biennial budget process, and we will certainly begin the conversation today. And by the end of June, we'll work together to adopt a two-year budget that will guide our work and resources over the next two years. Council priorities are an important component of the city's budgeting process. Priorities inform what issues are most important to the Santa Monica community, provide a framework for staff to work together to fulfill council's direction when analyzing projects and developing recommendations, and ensure we focus communication on what is important to you and the community. This year, when financial and staff resources continue to be constrained, the priorities provide a critical framework through which to make recommendations on new investments and focus staff efforts and projects. And we have an exciting day planned for you. We'll start off. Our Finance Department has worked hard to develop a comprehensive budget update that will provide a foundation for today's discussions and a common understanding of our financial outlook. I know that we're all aware of many of the financial challenges our organization has faced and will face in the coming years. The strong economic recovery we saw in the last year and a half is slowing. We are faced with labor shortages, supply chain issues, historically high inflation, and economic volatility. Santa Monica is also grappling with fundamental shifts in our economy driven by lasting changes in how people work, shop, and socialize. Santa Monica is also experiencing some extraordinary one-time liabilities that we're all well aware of that are curtailing our ability to increase services. The comprehensive budget update outlines the state of our general fund, expenditure challenges, the status of our enterprise funds and funding streams, and forecasts our projected revenues and expenditures for the next five years. As I mentioned, the general fund has multiple unprecedented liabilities. My hope is that we come out of this presentation with a solid understanding of where we are financially and the challenges and opportunities we anticipate in the next few years. As we look ahead to shape our budget, it's also important to understand the state of our city as an organization. The city organization is straining to meet the needs of this community and the expectations of council while also contending with fewer staff and resources, an unprecedentedly competitive labor market, increased staff turnover and vacancy rates, and new regulations and requirements for doing our work. I want everyone to be well aware of the realities that we face from a staffing perspective, and staff have prepared an organization overview and status update for you. These updates on the financial forecasts and the state of our organization will provide a foundation for our discussions around priorities and budget direction. It is important that we create a common understanding of our current environment and what the future looks like. And again, the city leadership team is here today to help answer your questions and provide information to help us all get as clear a picture as possible in these uncertain times. After lunch, it will be an opportunity, or maybe before lunch if we move swiftly enough, it will be an opportunity for this council to fully engage with each other to establish council priorities. Priorities are not the end-all, be-all of city work, but as I stated earlier, they help us focus on what's most important to this council and this community at this point in time. We believe this is a moment to continue our work on the three existing priorities adopted in 2021: addressing homelessness, clean and safe Santa Monica, and equitable and inclusive economic opportunity and recovery. After reviewing council actions and directions to staff over the last two years and reviewing community survey results, we are recommending the addition of two other priorities, and I'm excited to introduce these to you today: racial equity and social diversity, and sustainable and connected community. And these do come to us from deeply listening to everything that you've stated from the dais, in the community, and listening loud and clear to the community of what's important. These new priorities encapsulate so much of our work today and where we need to focus efforts to achieve established sustainability goals and to establish goals and priorities for our DEI efforts. My hope is that we come out of this portion of our workshop aligned on council priorities and then use these priorities to inform our next biennial budget. Finally, we're going to ask city council to provide direction on items that will inform the preparation of our upcoming two-year budget, given the constraints and opportunities outlined by our finances and the agreed-upon organization priorities. And I'm excited about this section of the day as well, because I think it's going to really help inform future vision and direction and concrete action as we move forward. Some of the things we'll talk about are proposed allocations of Measure CS funds, a strategic plan to address homelessness funded on a one-time basis using Measure CS funds, a conceptual framework for a new organizational structure to align and focus the city's work on council priorities, the implementation of newly adopted tax measures including Measure GS, CS, and the Moss-Adams homelessness study. We'll also discuss a potential reallocation of funds currently programmed to pay down the city's PERS obligations to reinvest in our community, in restorations and initiatives that align with council priorities. And that's important to me, because when I've been asked about this, I've always said, if I'm going to invest a dollar, I'm going to invest it in Santa Monica. We cannot do everything, however. The goal of today is to launch our budget process by establishing a framework of council priorities and getting strategic direction that will guide staff in developing the upcoming budget. I'm excited to embark on this journey with you today. Madam Mayor, back to you.
Sorry, I'm still eating muffin. Thank you. Thank you, Dave. I really appreciate that. So what we're going to begin with is public comment. We're not in our normal council chamber, so we're going to do it a little differently. We do have a podium back there from which you can speak, Ms. Klein -- Susan, sorry. Old habits die hard. Susan is there waving, so we'll speak there just for ease, so we don't want people tripping over codes. You can line up right in front of the TV screen there. So I'm going to call four names at a time. Obviously, the first-name person will speak first, and then if the next three can line up, we can move expeditiously through all of this. All right, here we go. My first four speakers are Emery Cunningham, Maya Williams, Willa Ross, I'm sorry, and Micah Quist. And I don't control that microphone, so will they just need to press the button?
Good morning, city council members. I am Emery Cunningham, a junior at Santa Monica High School and co-president of Team Marine. I'm also the chair of the Los Angeles Metro Youth Council, as well as a member of Junior State of America and of Model United Nations. I think climate change deserves to be a top priority on the city's budget. Climate change has always been a question of the future. Not that climate change only affects our future; it's taking place as we speak, damaging communities that we may not see, but that it is a question of whether we get to have a future or not. Climate change is a very complex problem. When we raise the temperature just a few degrees, all sorts of things start to go wrong. Storms rage more frequently and destructively. Fires are bigger and more dangerous. Droughts are longer and drier. Things are getting bad, but it's up to us just how bad they end up getting. I believe that we must choose to protect our future. There is no future for Santa Monica, for our world. If there is no future for Santa Monica and our world, then what is the point in investing in any of our many projects and ideas? If we do not invest enough to protect our future, then why are we investing at all? We must protect our future first so that all our other dreams for this city can eventually come true. Please choose to prioritize climate in our budget for the next two years so we can protect the future of Santa Monica and of our planet. Thank you.
Thank you, Emery. We really appreciate that. Maya Williams.
Good morning, city council members. My name is Maya Williams, and I'm an 11th grader at Santa Monica High School. I'm a leader of Team Marine, Sam Ojai's environmental activism organization, and the president of Human Rights Watch Student Task Force Club on campus. I stand before you today to urge you to prioritize sustainability in our city's budget for the next two years. Growing up in Santa Monica, I have seen everything that our beautiful city has to offer: our gorgeous coast, our parks, our libraries, our schools. But in recent years, I have also begun to see how the climate crisis and its related issues loom over our city, from the ash collecting on our gym floors and the smoke in the air during California's wildfire season to the plastic pollution devastating our beaches after heavy rainstorms. We have just seen the beginning. Santa Monica has long been regarded as a world leader in sustainability. These next two years are a critical time for taking definitive environmental action. Our Climate Action and Adaptation Plan highlights a goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions to 80% below 1990 levels by 2030. As of 2019, we're at a mere 36% below 1990 levels. How does the city expect to bridge this gap in the next seven years without prioritizing the environment? The youth of Santa Monica want to be proud of our city and the actions that it's taking to prioritize our future. The climate crisis is not an issue that is far away. The time to take action is now. I urge you to vote in favor of prioritizing sustainability today and to invest in the future of our people and our planet. Be the leaders that we so desperately need in this time of crisis. Make us proud. Thank you.
Thank you, Maya. Willa Ross.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Willa Ross. I am a junior at Santa Monica High School and am one of the co-presidents of Team Marine, which is an environmental activism club at Santa Monica High. Team Marine works on all spheres of climate activism, including creating policy, educating the public, and collecting data. Through my involvement in Team Marine, I have learned how important it is to advocate for our earth. I am here today to ask you to prioritize sustainability in your 2024-25 budget. I love seeing my city be a leader in sustainable practices, and there is so much more we can do. Just last week, Team Marine did a beach cleanup by the Pico-Kenner storm drain, and we found a distressing amount of styrofoam in and around the beaches that are integral to our community. As we prioritize sustainability, we can avoid becoming complacent, ensuring that policies we have in place, such as the styrofoam ban, are being followed and enforced. We must continue to make strides towards making our city as environmentally friendly as possible, spreading our progress and influence throughout the Los Angeles area. Thank you.
Thank you, Willa. And Micah, before you begin, I'm going to call a few more names so folks can line up. We have Fernanda Casas, Chris Gutierrez, and Dan Hall. All right, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Micah Quist. I am a member of Team Marine, a student at Sam Ojai, and a member of JSA. I first became truly aware of the climate crisis in the fourth grade when I had to miss a week of school because wildfires were affecting my lungs because I have severe asthma. Since then, no issue has been more pressing on my mind than climate change, because it personally affects me. Growing up, I've noticed the changes in weather and the changes in the world around us caused directly by climate change, and I think that all of you should be focused on valuing the lives of young people and the future of our city. In doing so, you can protect -- in doing so, you can help prioritize the youth, and you can help prioritize the future of your city, which I know you all are fighting for. Thank you so much. Please vote to prioritize sustainability in Santa Monica.
Thank you, Micah. Fernanda Casas.
Hello, I'm Fernanda Casas. I'm also a student at Santa Monica High School. I am a senior this year. I am also a part of Team Marine's leadership and a member of Human Rights Watch Student Task Force at Sam Ojai. I speak for you all on this day to urge the prioritization of sustainability in our city's budget for the following two years. This is crucial as it will allocate the necessary resources for staff and projects. It will also impact our ability to receive grant funding. Moreover, Santa Monica is a key leader in sustainability. I am proud to live in such an eco-friendly city, one that has banned polystyrene in plastic bags, one that will ban the selling of gasoline-powered new cars after 2035, and one that has a climate action and adoption plan and is part of the Clean Power Alliance. Of course, Santa Monica has done so much, but imagine how many more projects we can pursue if we prioritize sustainability on our budget. As of now, the Science and Security Board of the Bulletin of the Atomic Scientists' Doomsday Clock is 90 seconds away from midnight, midnight being the moment we will have made Earth uninhabitable because of climate change, nuclear war, or some other disaster. It advanced rather quickly when only from 2020 to 2022, it was 100 seconds from midnight. Even recently, we can see the effects of our pollution on climate change. I can't be the only one thinking that rain in March is strange. Us youth want a bright future. We want a healthy planet that can support all its inhabitants for years to come, one that will allow us all to thrive. I believe that if we can achieve this, the human race will be able to accomplish great things. Please be the leaders that we all want you to be, leaders that support a sustainable, green, and thriving environment. Our futures are in your hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Fernanda. We really appreciate it. Chris Gutierrez.
Good morning, Mayor Davis, council members. It's great to be here in person with you and with the community at large, and especially with youth and children. So I'm Chris Gutierrez. I love our community and city. I was born here. It's one of the reasons that I had co-founded Climate Action Santa Monica, the Climate Corps, many of the community garden efforts, and now I am the Clean Power Alliance West Side Community Advisor. So it's really wonderful here to strongly support the staff's recommendations to add both sustainability, community connections, as well as social diversity and racial equity to our budget priorities. They are nested together. It's critical for us to understand that, as the young people noted, there is no future without sustainability. However, there's no racial equity and social diversity without our climate resiliency, recognizing that we need each other and that we need to value each other as dignified and valuable human beings. They are integral and fundamental to our capacity economically, to our safety, and to our cleanliness. Finally, some would argue, we don't have the resources of time. I would argue, we have no time to waste to access new resources, and unless we leverage with our budget priorities the federal and state available resources on infrastructure and climate work, we are going to undermine our thriving. I read a letter also about the youth priority that some are suggesting for education. I love that idea, because it is through young people like this, who are not just educated in individual classrooms but need to be educated throughout the district, how they can excel by taking care of each other, themselves, and using their academics to help us be more sustainable and, well. So I am happy to be here to support in any way that I can these new budget priorities. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. And Dan, before you begin, I'm going to call a few more names: Jerry Rubin, Jennifer Cowan, Carol Lemline, and Nicole Fairies.
All right. Good morning, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. I'm here today to advocate for the proposed budget priority racial equity and social diversity.
Dan, can I interrupt you for a sec? Is the mic on? It doesn't sound --
Test, test.
That's better. That's better. You're just too tall.
I guess so. All right, thank you. So I'm here today to advocate for the proposed budget priority racial equity and social diversity. The commitment our community has to equity and inclusivity is a major reason my partner and I chose to make Santa Monica our home. In my day job, I am a diversity, equity, and inclusion manager, so I live this work every day. It's tough, and it requires investment. As you consider whether to add racial equity and social diversity to your priorities, consider where we have come from and, more importantly, where we must go. Our city has passed a black apology, a long overdue first step. We passed a groundbreaking right-to-return policy, but it's yet to deliver the results we all hoped for. So what's next? Perhaps a serious discussion around the land the civic auditorium sits on, unused and crumbling. Where is our application to the Federal Reconnecting Communities Fund to explore capping the 10 and restoring the Pico and Broadway neighborhoods? We've passed historic tax measures to keep wealth gained from our community in our community and are able to make significant investments in affordable housing development and programs like the POD program. Thank you to the five of you who voted to defend Measure GS in court. Please continue to do so so we can subsidize the further development of affordable housing, which keeps our community socially diverse. Finally, if you do choose to move the $2.5 million from paying down our unfunding pension liability, I urge you to consider using it to further restore library services, youth and education programming, and the summer lunch program, which will disproportionately support our younger, more racially diverse, and moderate and low-income families most of all. Our neighbors rely on these services to keep their kids safe and healthy and provide the stability needed to realize long-term upward social mobility. If we're serious about adding racial equity and social diversity as a priority, restoring the social safety net as much as possible is a critical first step. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Jennifer -- oh, Jerry, I'm sorry. I skipped right over you there.
Okay. Thank you very, very much. Jerry Rubin, longtime resident of Santa Monica. Honorable mayor, councilmember, city staff, fellow Santa Monicans. Well, certainly easy following our dedicated young people to call to include sustainability. It's easy to follow you. Thank you. I'm glad our city manager is suggesting the addition to these two crucial priorities to go with the other three. I wish I had the power to plant a money tree, but, you know, it's important that we have the economic recovery and we all work together to get the money needed for these programs, but it's also about the energy, the personal energy, we put in to work together to help Santa Monica. So it's not always about the money. I want to put a shout out for the other priorities. Homelessness has always been a challenge for decades, but I think over the years, we've learned how to work together better to solve these challenges. As far as public safety, I want to give a shout out to our police department. They deserve the utmost respect. I've been going to the police academy the past few weeks. I urge everyone to fully support our police and our fire departments. As far as the economic recovery, hey, we can do it. We've had hard times, but Santa Monica is a great city. We'll do it. We'll do it. As far as sustainability, there could be a lot of subheadings under that. Clean energy, caring for our urban forest, which is crucial, mobility, alternative transportation, getting out of your car once in a while, getting on the blue bus. There's so many things that can be done. I just want to say thank you to everybody in Santa Monica and all the wonderful people that visit here that love Santa Monica, too. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Jerry. And just on time. Jennifer?
Good morning, council members. I'm Jennifer Cowan. I'm a parent and resident of Santa Monica. I'm also the executive director of Connections for Children, which is a current recipient of the Human Services Grants Program. We are so grateful for the city's long-term commitment to improving the well-being of children and families. Through the Grants Program, Connections provides financial assistance to low- and moderate-income and vulnerable families so that they can afford the high cost of childcare. City resources are directed to support residents who may not otherwise qualify for federal, state, or county-funded childcare subsidy programs. City funding allows resident families to receive childcare subsidies necessary for them to participate in the workforce, continue their education, and maintain their housing. Connections has seen firsthand the needs of the city's young children and families increasing since the Grants Program has initiated. Childcare costs, as well as other basic needs, continue to rise, yet the funding dedicated to support our work has not risen proportionately. This fiscal year to date, Connections has served 168 low-income Santa Monica children in our subsidy program. About a third of those are funded through city resources. However, 64 Santa Monica children are currently on the waitlist for subsidy, unable to be served due to limited funding. These are children from low-income families who rely on childcare to work, attend school, and stay housed. Connections supports the recommended fiscal year '23-'25 council priorities, and we, as you consider the budget to advance these priorities, we encourage you to allocate significant funding to social service agencies so that we can help adequately address all the needs for all of our residents, including those 4,500 residents who are under the age of five. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Carol?
I'm Carol Lemline, speaking on behalf of the Santa Monica Conservancy. When COVID shut down economic activity in Santa Monica, the city faced difficult budget choices. The historic preservation program was significantly impacted. Commission meetings were cut back to every other month. Preliminary review of demolition permits was removed from the commission's responsibilities. Staff was reduced, canceling plans to hire a dedicated preservation planner. Fees for designation applications increased to cover city costs, now among the highest in all of California. Application fee waivers for nonprofits were eliminated, as were fee waivers for applications from owners of designated properties, removing important incentives for property owners already fearful of the impact of designation on their ability to update and renovate their properties. MILZAC property tax contracts became virtually the only benefit of preservation. There have been several unintended consequences. Social justice concerns have become increasingly important, and preservation organizations from the National Trust to local municipalities nationwide have determined to broaden their efforts to tell all the stories. Yet Santa Monica's program has done the opposite. The increased costs of participating have made it inaccessible to those interested in honoring places of value to overlooked members of our community, including blacks, Latinx, and Indigenous people, putting it out of reach for everyone but the wealthy and commercial enterprises. Eliminating preliminary review of demolition permits with no public process has made it difficult to identify properties with cultural value that reflect marginalized communities. I'd like to add that preservation can play a key role in, in our economic growth as a high percentage of domestic and international travelers participated in cultural and heritage activities, and those that do stay longer and travel more often and spend more.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you very much.
Sorry to run over. And for those of you who don't know, that's not a rude cellphone. That is our timer going off. Nicole, before you begin, I'm going to call a few more names. Judith Meister, Danielle Borja, Alicia Miñano, Miñano, God, I apologize. The coffee hasn't kicked in yet, and Juan Matute.
Okay. Is, okay, you can all hear me. I, I just want to commend the students who just spoke, and they kind of go directly to what I would like to talk about. So I'm from SEPS, or Community for Excellent Public Schools. We are very aware of the challenges that you face in balance in proving, approving a balanced budget in June of 23, 2023, and we're sympathetic to the trade-offs you will have to make given the demands of multiple interest groups. After all, SEPS was founded to help SMMUSD with its chronic budget shortfalls, a predicament for the district which continues to this day. We have to cut, they have to cut 5% from the annual budget over the next two years. So we get it in the, in the school community. We believe that the potential purpose, purchase by SMMUSD of either the civic auditorium or the acquisition of the civic and the nearby sports field presents a remarkable opportunity to create one-time funds for the city's staggering liabilities, legal liabilities, while expediting the completion of the Santa Monica High campus upgrade. So we would encourage you to explore this option vigorously, as it would benefit both public agencies and continue our long-historied partnership between the city and the school district. As for funding the city's operational budget, we would urge you to preserve your long-term commitment to municipal funding for education and youth services. Too often, the public agencies have to trim their budgets, and items such as parks and kids bear the brunt of the cuts, while expenditures backed by more organized and influential lobbying are spared the chopping block. Yet what a better commit, what better commitment is there to a diverse and equitable city than an investment in our children and their future? In fact, we believe the council should adopt an annual additional budget priority of youth and services, youth services and lifelong education.
Thank you, Nicole. Judith?
Good morning, Mayor Davis and council members. I'm Judith Meister, and I'm the chair of the library board. As the staff report points out, the library was hit one of the hardest of all departments at the pandemic cuts, 44%. And, you know, I do, we do appreciate that the council restored some funding last fall with using one-time funds, and I'm glad to see that the continuation is in the forecast. However, we're still about 44% of pre-pandemic levels. You know, if you look at our libraries, libraries check off actually all the boxes of your proposed priorities. Our library staff welcomes those experiencing homelessness to the libraries and works with the public safety and human services teams in getting information about resources to them. The library is a self, a safe and welcoming place for all ages in the community. We have many programs that stimulate economic recovery, from classes and computers to finding information about how to start a business. Prior to the pandemic, the library was, had a full calendar of cultural events, films, concerts. We want to see that restored as a place for the community to come. Racial equity and social diversity, equity, diversity, and inclusion are central to academic intellectual freedom, which guides libraries' collections and programs. We have classes currently in literacy, citizenship, ESL. Our library staff has great ideas for expanding inclusiveness and diversity, but we need more staff and hours to do that. If I could just end with...
Go ahead, finish.
...the connected and sustainable community. Our libraries are key to connecting our communities. Right now, two of our neighborhoods feel disconnected since two of our libraries are only open for self-service. I really urge the council to restore full service at all five of our libraries as a top priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Judith. Uh-uh, no clapping, no clapping. Happy hands, happy hands. All right, Danielle?
Hi, I'm Danielle Borja. I'm a homeowner. I'm involved in the PTA. I'm on our DEI committee. At our local school, we have other representatives from the, from the, from the SMUSD DEI committee. I would like to say that as also a professor of ethnic and gender studies, who has heavily studied the Latino education gap as well as other class disparities, I see the institutional racism playing out in our, in our city, even in our schools, and working to address that in the last three years has, has made me commit to staying here. One of the things that made us buy a house here also were the incredible library programs. And I've seen that more in our schools and in our, and in our programming. They have been a safe haven, right, for our LGBT students. They have been incredible help, the after-school programs as well, to our working-class families, to our, which are often, right, people of color, to our, the libraries especially are a haven to our LGBT students. And if we think about the censorship and bigotry that's sweeping this country, unfortunately, our community is not immune as much as we like to think so. And preserving the programs that we have, from the early childcare programs that the library has, all the way through the fact that they are also a place where, after, they are a type of after-school program, right? There is after-school care that happens there. There is, there are incredible programs, for example, for SAT prep for people that don't come from college-educated families, to try to ensure that not only the college-educated families stay college-educated in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. School board member, Alicia Miñano.
Yes. Good morning, good morning, Mayor Davis, Mayor Pro Tem, Negrete, and other city council members and city staff. Thank you, thank you for being here today. And I am Alicia Miñano. I serve on the SMMUSD school board, but I'm here as a parent and a resident of the Pico neighborhood. And I would, I know that our city is facing challenging times, but I'm here to ask, respectfully ask, that we add a sixth priority, our youth services, education, and lifelong learning. Some of our priorities that have been proposed, there's a lot of interconnection, but I don't, I don't feel that we can address racial equity without providing services for our young people. So I know you're facing challenges, but I respectfully ask that you add that sixth priority, youth services, education, and lifelong learning. And yeah, I heard the lunch program, our VAP, our Virginia Avenue Park programs, they serve, a lot of the families that they serve are single parents, people that need those programs. And so I, I ask you to consider this in making decisions as you go forward. Thank you for your service. Have a good day.
Thank you, Alicia. And Juan, before you begin, I'm going to call a few more names. Serenya Matute, Denise Barton, Julie Tarrin, and it looks like, and I apologize, Carol Villa, Villa?
All right, good morning, council. My name is Juan Matute. I'm a Santa Monica resident and parent. I also work at UCLA, and because of my role there, teaching and advising students in our public policy and our planning program, I've become really aware of this problem of Santa Monica no longer being an employer of choice for public service. So I think the staff report is a fairly honest assessment in this regard. The 8.8% vacancy rate and 10% annual turnover rate are only part of the issue. They really mask an issue, I think, of city culture, and that is that Santa Monica for so long did not have to be a resourceful city. It had so many resources with its AAA bond rating that it could afford to pretty much do anything it wanted without making internal compromises about how those things were done and delivered. And this resourcefulness is an extremely important quality of a city that's delivering the services, the facilities, everything that people need, residents need, on a limited budget, essentially doing more with less. And so this city council and city management need to lead in the creation of a culture of resourcefulness. This includes soliciting resourceful ideas from staff and rewarding them rather than punishing them for maybe going out of chain of command and saying, hey, why don't we try this? And demonstrating resourcefulness through key projects and initiatives. So a key area, and I think we're seeing this now with the mountain communities where they don't have enough public work staff on top of the mountain because of jobs, housing costs, to clear their roads, and there's fatal consequences to that. So public work staff has a higher vacancy rate, transportation staff has a higher vacancy rate, and there's a growing issue of public sector compensation packages not being enough in coastal communities with high housing costs and with a lot of Airbnbs up in the mountains. So I think Santa Monica needs to be a leader in considering below-market rentals as part of a total compensation package for city employees using surplus land in this way. As California is removing barriers for school districts to provide teacher housing, the city should be a leader in considering that as well. In addition, I urge the city to pursue quick-build safety improvements and restore the Safe Routes to School program and show, as LA has led, that we can make streets safer extremely cost-effectively and quickly.
Thank you, Juan.
I'm just going to donate my time.
No, no can do. You're on your own.
I'm sitting down.
All right. Serenya is passing. Denise?
Good morning. In the staff report, I see many excuses as reasons why the city is financially in the state it's in. The Pala lawsuit, which is your fault, and has drained the city of most of its financial resources, exceeding $10 million, correct? We'll just call this your way of not protecting the children. The May 31 riots and looting, again, your fault, with some but not enough additions of the police officers to keep the city safe. Hopefully, you will be planning to rectify this issue with more in the, in the near future, because then the city's financial future will look better, brighter. And do you still have the no-bail action in place, allowing criminals to offend again and again? Then all of you sitting up there, and before you wanted the COVID pandemic to last as long as possible, giving you more power and control, yet what you did with it is create more divisive special interests, because isn't divide and conquer by races your new strategy, as well as further fund your other special interests at the expense of the taxpayers? And speaking of at the expense of the taxpayers, the city seems to be well on its way to being the city with the most staff per resident again. But city health services are still closed to the public, except developers, so please tell me how much the residents are getting for their money from the city's high-priced staff? I mean, considering that staff no longer considers property owners and residents as stakeholders, now apparently, staff considers Black Lives Matter, Community Corporation of Santa Monica, and the environmental activists are the only stakeholders that matter. You spend $50,000 for each homeless person yearly to keep them on the streets, and is having the needle exchange program in so many places within the city, your way of assisted suicide addicts instead of helping them. Oh, and did you forget payment for your lawsuit for the CRV case, showing you put your special interests before the residents and the city as a whole? Maybe you should switch your way of thinking. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Julie Tarrin?
Good morning, council members. I am here representing the Santa Monica Early Childhood Task Force, and we did submit a letter, and I'm going to just summarize it. For the 2023-2025 budget, the task force does support the current priorities of addressing homelessness, clean and safe Santa Monica, and equitable and inclusive economic opportunity. We want to add, though, that to prevent housed Santa Monicans from becoming homeless, we really want to emphasize that affordable, high-quality childcare is critical so parents do not lose their jobs and become unhoused. Families' access to affordable housing, behavioral health support, and other services addresses their ability to face challenges, adversity, and trauma that leads to improved outcomes and keeping them housed. These resources are vital for their economic and... These resources are vital for their economic and emotional recovery and children's social and emotional needs. With regards to a clean and safe neighborhood, we support this and want to add that we do support this in regards to supporting CREST, the playground club supervised after-school care at all elementary schools, and the restoration of programs and capacity for city-operated youth programs. We support also the two new priorities, and we recommend adding "learn" to the racial, to part of the statement in regards to the racial equity and social diversity priority stating "to improve the well-being of people who live, work, learn, play, and do business in our city." And it can go on in regards to the rest of the statement. In regards to the equitable economic opportunities, we really know that it's important because these, addressing economic and equity gaps for our communities, families, really means that they have then access to what other people talked about, public schools, libraries, and community-based support. You have the letter. I recommend that you read it. We have some other additional recommendations in it. And we just want to add that we'd be remiss not to say to increase the Human Services Grants Program. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Caro, and before you begin, I'm going to call a few more names. Kent Strumpel, Steve Etamian, I apologize if I mispronounced that, Angel Villasenor, and Ana Hara. You can go ahead.
Good morning. Sorry if I don't sound prepared. I'm not. But how fitting is it that the first thing I saw coming out of my apartment on my way here this morning was two SUVs speeding down my street? Because I'm here to speak up for safe streets and to ask you to reprioritize projects like Safe Routes to School. I think most of you are already aware of some of the impact of cars on the environment and the physical harms it can cause. But I'm worried that many people are not aware of how bad this is getting, because we do have some of the best bike infrastructure in Santa Monica, but we also have some of the worst drivers. And car manufacturers are making bigger and bigger cars with more and more distractions and heavier cars too, because the electric cars are heavier. And in case anyone wasn't clear, electric cars are not here to save the planet. They're here to save the car industry. And I could go on for hours about that. But you have other issues to worry about, which I think are also affected by safe streets. I don't have the ability to drive myself, thankfully, because the fact that I don't own a car is the only reason that I can afford to live in Santa Monica. Housing is strongly impacted by safe streets, by all the parking space that we're wasting that could be used for affordable housing. Cars are a financial sinkhole. They cause physical harm and mental harm. I just found out this morning that domestic violence in Los Angeles goes up when traffic goes up, when heavy traffic is around. And so it's also an equity issue. People with disabilities, people who can't afford to drive, are all impacted by this. And many of them don't have the opportunity to come and speak up here, which is why I decided to come this morning. So please prioritize safe streets and projects like Safe Routes to School, because when the streets are safe for kids, they're safe for everyone, and we all benefit from it, including drivers. Thank you.
Thank you, Caro. Kent Strumpel.
Good morning, council members and staff. I'm Kent Strumpel. I'm a member of Climate Action Santa Monica Steering Committee and Citizens Climate Lobby. I want to urge you to restore the priority for funding programs that address the climate crisis. And the thing is, making progress on our climate goals isn't just about reducing carbon emissions. All of the climate measures that our city is working on also address issues we confront on a daily basis: air pollution, equity, street safety, energy bills, affordable mobility, water security, and more. Climate solutions are also quality-of-life and equity solutions. One particular example is transportation, which is just mentioned, which is the single biggest source of the city's carbon emissions. We have ambitious goals for providing transportation alternatives and making our roads safer to help reduce car use. But our mobility division was cut 40% in response to the pandemic, whereas most other departments were only cut 20%. And we're down to only two traffic engineers who have to do the work of four, creating a bottleneck in project delivery. This slows down progress at a critical time. An example is the wonderful protected bike lanes being installed on 17th Street. As a cyclist, I am grateful to see our city finally installing the type of bike way that all levels of riders can feel comfortable using. But their drawn-out construction pain has caused unnecessary pain, and limited funding is part of the reason. Yes, we have a climate action plan, but that plan needs money to implement. Even with new sources of federal funding becoming available for climate-related programs, we need staff and resources to successfully apply for and manage the projects we need. Please prioritize the funding for our climate programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Kent. Steve.
Mayor Davis, Councilmember Steve Etamian. I'm the executive vice president of the Grant Elementary PTA. I am here to speak on behalf of, well, on myself. I don't think I'm allowed to speak on behalf of them. But essentially, just wanted to share some data from our Grant After-School Enrichment Programs. We were the first PTA in Santa Monica, unified to bring back Grant PTA after-school programs over, and I think the only one still to do that, to complement CREST and the other after-school programs. There are over 160 students enrolled in our programs. There are wait lists. It's a pay-as-you-can program. This is absolutely, after-school activities and after-school support for parents is absolutely needed. Young parents do not have time to come to these meetings to advocate for themselves. And I wanted to just be a voice for that. And also just say that over 30% of our students that are enrolled in it are pay-as-you-can. It is a pay-as-you-can program. And it just goes to show that there's just a tremendous amount of need. It is a DEI initiative. It's also an economic opportunity initiative for students to have these types of opportunities for their, for their, for families to have these opportunities for their programs, so that not only just the people that can pay for these types of programs can have after-school initiatives and opportunities to learn more. Thank you for making child, kids in our communities a priority, and thank you for all that you do for our community and all the hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Angel.
Good morning, council members. My name is Angel Villasenor. I prepped some words, because I'm a very passionate person. And you know how that can get interpreted when you're not organized. I'd like to, first, before I start, echo the sentiments of Alicia to add a priority for youth education and lifelong learning. That was great. Christopher Paulo, while you're in the room, I'd also ask you all to expand the equity, diversity, inclusion, include anti-racism, and pro-immigrant. We can't hold you accountable unless you write it in there. So, all right. I'm a sociology professor. In academia, we often talk about decolonizing our curriculum. To decolonize means to free institutions' fear activity from the cultural, social effects of colonization. In order to do that, it means that we must critically examine the way we do business. The way I do it as a professor is that I honor the agency of my students and view them as co-creators in the classroom where I intentionally mobilize their multicultural identities, perspectives, and lived experiences. More than that, I view them as epistemic resources and operate from that framework to foster an environment of learning that empowers them and that centers them in all that we do. So my ask here is that you decolonize the way you do business and mobilize the multicultural identities of your residents and view them as epistemic resources, epistemic resources in planning and operations. When budgets occurred in 2020, the city cut positions across the board because they had to, I understand that. But I couldn't help but notice that the majority of cuts happened to the ground-level staff at the direct-service level. And the level where positions were cut were staffed by people of color. All whilst, executive-level staff with dominant identities were renegotiating their pay and pay raises. This is called institutionalized racism. And I know, implore you to, and I implore you to expand your equity and inclusion efforts for currently the city responds to issues of race and racism from a black-and-white binary. This happens because of white fragility of our council members, department heads, and executive-level staff. This paradigm has limitations, and among them is a tendency to truncate history for the sake of telling a linear story of progress. This happens when our city manager meets with you and tells you to focus not on the past but on the future. And this is why CMO after CMO have made mistakes. Before you go spend millions on a reorg, I asked you to prioritize restoring funds that were cut during COVID, especially to our youth services. Thank you.
Thank you, Angel. And Ana, before you begin, we have three late shits. Typically, we only hear them for one minute, but given that it was a Saturday rainy morning, I'd like to move that we hear the three late shits for two minutes each. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so Ana, before you begin, I'm going to call our three, next three speakers: Kristin McCowen, Erica Leslie, and Heather Newell. You could have left your stuff on the chair. We wouldn't steal it. All right, thank you, Ana, for waiting.
No problem. Good morning, council members and everyone that gave up their Saturday morning to be here. My name's Ana G. Hara, and I'm a lifelong Santa Monicaan. I'm here to speak as a community member, a community leader, and someone who has over 20 years of experience working with young people. After a series of back-to-back tragedies, the city took a long-needed yet bold move to change the system by which a safety net was created for our young people. It taught us as a whole to look at data, align goals, share outcomes, and ultimately integrate our work with one another in order to radically alter the lives of young people in this city. The city poured training, resources, and relationship-building efforts to create a collective impact model. It gave many the courage to finally admit that no one system, organization, person, or idea could tackle the complexity of how social determinants of health impact public safety. It takes an entire system to change that requires agencies and systems to work together. Much has changed since then. In the time of crisis, it is human and system nature to go back to responding, to supporting the status quo and to old habits. This is where I believe that we are today. We have lost our vision for the future of Santa Monica, for the young people who we as adults are responsible to care for. And while I agree that homelessness and the struggles that it creates within our eight-square miles is a priority, it is not one that should eclipse the dire needs of our young residents. Our young people are not doing well. They tell us this every day, with their substance use, their isolation, their outbursts, their defiance, with their behavior, that they are not transitioning back from COVID well. Some are, but the vast majority are not. Read national papers, read the CDC reports, pay attention. We need data that shows equity outcomes or the lack thereof. We need resources. We need direct services. We need to restore Virginia Avenue Park programs. We need ground-level staff. We need someone to take agency and leadership to move the work forward. And we need to be brought back to interdependence. If we don't act now, we will have more homeless people on our streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Ana. Former council member Kristin McCowen, former mayor pro tem. I apologize.
You can leave that part out. Don't. Thank you.
No, no, no. You can't escape your past.
I guess that's what they keep telling me. First, I just want to, hi, Kristin McCowen. I want to thank Angel for so eloquently stating incredibly important truths that are at times, I think, speaking for myself, incredibly hard to articulate. And so I'm just so grateful for people like you and Ana in this community that like continue to push and say these things out loud. So having been on the council and having just gone through all the negotiations and everything, I, a lot of money was spent, you know, getting staff in certain areas to where they needed to be. And this was my fear, that we would find ourselves in this place where we would not necessarily have the funds required to expand services, especially up against the sort of impending terrible legal battles that the city's facing. However, we made priorities then. You're making priorities now. You're continuing the priorities that you had in the past, and you're even expanding them. And I think that needs to be reflected in the budget. And I think it is definitely the time to stop paying down, suspend the pension liability payments, add that $2.5 million back to the general fund so that you have the ability to actually meet the needs of this community. None of those priorities are possible without investing in our youth after school. We, as a council, fought for this at a really difficult time to expand after-school programs. We did that. We figured out a one-year Band-Aid. It's time to continue that. And I love this idea of adding a priority so that no one forgets the importance of youth services, even though they touch all of those other priorities. I think it's such a great idea from our school board member, and I think it should be included.
Thank you, Kristin.
Thanks, guys.
Erica Leslie, Rent Control Board Commissioner Erica Leslie. You too cannot escape your past.
Oh, Lord, here we go. Okay. Listen, I thank you for all the work that you've done to put in this plan. However, yes, prioritize homelessness. Yes, prioritize housing and services, but also prioritize our youth and our after-school programs. We are in desperate need, and we're in desperate times. You have to restrategize a way to put back those that were employed with you for our diversity and inclusion. Over 400 staff were laid off. You have to find a way to put these people back to work, whether it be with homelessness or whatever the way that you can structure to make sure that everybody wins. We can do this. It's not impossible. I understand it's an uphill struggle, but we can do this. An apology to our communities about systemic racism is just not enough unless you take action now. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Heather Newell. Oh, Novelle, I'm sorry. Heather Novelle, for those of you who didn't know, I can't read.
Sorry, I'm the last person to speak. I don't, I also don't have anything specifically prepared, but I love everything that I've heard so far. I feel bad for you guys. This seems like a shitshow. I mean, seriously, sorry. I, that's, you don't know me yet. Some of you do on here, but you know me, and that's just how I speak. I don't know how you're going to get us out of this mess. I have no idea. But I do have a suggestion, and I'm going to go a little over the map. But I think, I think an apology needs to be rendered and a better reasoning than some of the things that I've been hearing. While not all of you have been here for when the mess started, I don't, I don't, it just, we need, I think the city needs to hear that. We really need to hear that. We really need full transparency. Not only are we upset about all these things, but our trust in this process is probably worse than zero. So I don't know how you're going to do that. My interest right now is the public libraries. I want to see them open and fully restored. I cannot imagine being a new mother, for instance, in this city and not having the connection to community and not having storytime every day. I know from my own experience and from others that that saves people's lives, literally saves women that are depressed, post-pardon depression. It saves their children from being depressed. It offers, like I said, this hub, this place where we can talk and have a sense of community. That's gone. I had so much more to say, but thank you.
Thank you, Heather. And that concludes the public comment. I want to thank everyone who took time out of their busy schedules to come out here this morning. And I really want to appreciate all of your comments and let you know that we heard every one of them. With that, we are going to get into the, I don't want to say substance, because I think what we just heard was very substantive. But we're going to get into the part where staff now gets to make comments. So we're going to begin with our comprehensive budget update from our finance director, Gigi Decavales Uz.
Good morning, everyone. So on the screen, you see a timeline of the budget-related actions you've taken and will take over the year. Looking along the top, we're at the beginning of the fiscal year 2023-25 biennial budget preparation process. The budget's informed by council... The budget's informed by council's priorities, as well as the city's financial and operational capacity to deliver on those priorities, all the topics of today's retreat. Once we have direction from you, we'll develop line item budgets for the entire city, maintaining our current efforts, allocating new funds, or reprogramming existing funds to the areas addressing these adopted priorities. The budget will be published in early May, and will be discussed at the May 23 Budget Study Session, where we'll receive feedback and answer questions you may have. We'll return with any questions, I'm sorry, with any changes to the proposed budget on June 27, at which time council will adopt the budget. And along the bottom of that timeline, we have this current year's budget process, the fiscal year 2223 budget process. You adopted a budget last June, and in exactly a month, on April 11, we'll ask you to make some mid-year adjustments to this year's budget. The adjustments that we'll be asking you to make are, have been considered in the forecasts that we're presenting today. Before we get into the forecast, I'd like to set the stage a bit. The city continues to operate in a volatile and uncertain environment. We've done our best to consider these external issues in our forecast, but they do remain as risks. To start, high levels of inflation persist, and it's unclear how aggressively the Fed will increase interest rates to reach its goals. These elements impact our finances, but also those of our community members. We continue to feel the impact of a baffling labor shortage from anemic recruitments and our ability to retain staff, making it very difficult to run programs and requiring us to adjust staffing structures. We recently ended the COVID emergency, but we expect costs related to Caloosa requirements and potential surges to continue. Our retail areas that have relied on office workers, like downtowns around the country, are feeling the impact of fewer office workers as remote work persists. And our tourism sector is recovering with high room rates, but we have yet to see a strong return of business and international travel. And while we've already been impacted by some heavy legal settlements, we are facing additional liabilities from additional claims related to allegations of sexual abuse by a formal, former employee, litigation over a request to transition to district elections, and an urgent seismic retrofit project for Parking Structure 1 that comes at a cost of up to $25 million. As you know, most of the city's services count on the general fund. The general fund is funded mostly with tax revenues and is therefore the most impacted by economic shifts. Over the past almost three years, we've talked at length about the financial sacrifices that the general fund has had to make in response to the pandemic. These sacrifices have taken a toll on our ability to provide services and threaten our ability to respond to another emergency. At the end of last fiscal year, the general fund had lost $170 million in revenues due to the pandemic. During this time, the city also paid over $107 million in settlements of sexual abuse claims against former employees. A small portion of this was paid by our insurance funds, but $94 million was covered using general fund reserves. More than half of the $94 million in reserves, in the second box there, had been slated for necessary infrastructure modernization. And so, instead, we were required to issue bonds for the construction instead. This resulted in additional borrowing costs and pledging of assets that could otherwise have been used towards future community amenities. And moving further along the top line there, to make up for some of the $170 million in revenue loss, we shifted another $56 million from reserves, including reserves that were backing up capital projects that we had to cancel and rainy-day funds, so we could continue to provide services during the pandemic. Along the bottom, we suspended contributions to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, contributions that our voters had asked us to make as part of Measure GSH. We suspended payments to our long-term pension and medical liabilities, and used federal stimulus funds to plug the deficits that continue to exist even with the services at a reduced level and the use of reserves. So this impact has been very hard and harsh for the city, for its staff, for its residents, and for its businesses. This slide provides some context in terms of our sacrificed reserves since 2020. The general fund has had a long history of strong reserves that allowed us to provide lower-cost infrastructure and community amenity funding. We have the funds in reserve, and we're able to do what we call pay-as-you-go funding, which means we don't have to borrow, for things like the Civic Center sports field. We were able to do that, but we've also, reserves have allowed us to have a solid cushion against emergencies and unanticipated costs, and to maintain an economic uncertainty fund. All of these were very helpful to us in this last round of, this last emergency. When we compare the non-restricted portion of the general fund, now we get to this table here, at the end of last fiscal year, so on June 30, 2022, to the pre-pandemic times in 2018-19, we are at 71% of previous levels. That's the fourth bar, or the second from the left. And you can see that we've made some progress in increasing our reserves from the prior year, thanks to an earlier recovery last year that brought additional revenue. But what's concerning is that these reserves may be needed for unanticipated expenses, contingent liabilities, and working capital to fill future-year gaps. If we hypothetically removed these reserves that are set aside for these unanticipated costs and our working capital, the general fund is at a very low 31% of its previous level. This provides very little cushion for emergencies. Now let's move into another challenge that continues. I've shown you this graphic before, showing our revenue projections on the eve of the pandemic in orange, and where we find ourselves instead. This was the forecast that we had done in late February of 2020, in the orange on top, and where we have been in actuals and projected right now in blue. So the space between the two lines reflects the actual loss of $170 million in revenues through June of 2022, and we anticipate an additional $80 million in lost revenues by fiscal year 2728, at the end of the chart there, when revenues finally do catch up. The gap between the lines also explains our inability to restore services fully to pre-pandemic levels, even with the help of reserves and working capital to help close the gap. An added challenge that's not shown here is that we have new needs now, and higher inflation than we had before, that we hadn't anticipated before the pandemic when we were looking at our costs and revenues. And this puts additional pressure on our budgeting and suggests that even the orange line is likely too low, and getting to the orange line is actually not enough to cover a full restoration of services. In this slide, I've broken down the major revenue streams coming into the general fund, and how we project them to grow over the five years of our forecast. While we expect stronger revenues than we had budgeted this current year, we expect growth to slow dramatically into next year and beyond. For the five years, we're expecting average annual growth across all revenues of about 3.5%. It's a very moderate amount. Compare this to the current over 6% inflation rate. Hopefully, that won't continue throughout the forecast period, but it does show the differences. The one revenue stream that's showing a stronger growth on its own is the transient occupancy tax, our hotel tax, that's shown in orange. That revenue stream will, we expect it to see an annual, annual increases later on ranging from 6% to 17% year-over-year, as tourism recovers, but also as hotels that are closing and are expected to close for renovations will reopen by the end of the forecast period. So this graph includes new revenues from Measure CS and our digital kiosk network. Measure HMP, also approved by voters in November, is not reflected because it's, we're pending needed changes to the municipal code related to cannabis businesses. And Measure GS revenue is flowing into the Housing Trust Fund, so that's also not included in general fund revenues. Also not included, and potentially a way that we could see additional revenues to help the general fund, are any parking rate increases. On the expenditure side, we have many challenges in addition to the litigation and seismic upgrade liabilities that I've already discussed. In our forecast, we've included anticipated increases in our future pension contributions that are making up for the pension fund's investment losses last year, and the portfolio's little to no anticipated earnings this year. Healthcare is expected to increase at a rate of 7% to 9%. The long-term dollar impact of last year's negotiated labor agreements is also significant, but necessary for Santa Monica to remain on par with area cities and continue to attract and retain talent. Our utility rates have increased dramatically, as they have for everyone in this room. The forecast also includes significant assistance for the pier and beach funds. These two funds were badly impacted by COVID closures, the loss of parking revenue, and in the case of the pier, we're anticipating future business interruption while the pier bridge is constructed. So, now that I've set the context, here are the results of our general fund forecast. This chart shows revenues minus expenditures over the next five years. With the help of working capital we've set aside in reserves, we managed to remain in the black for the first three years of the forecast, but shift to a negative position in the last two years. Now, given the size of our budget, the negative balances of about $600,001.5 million are manageable, they represent less than half of 1% of our revenues. Some important points on what is in and out of the forecast. You may recall that our current adopted budget is supporting increased library hours using one-time funds. We're also coming up on the completion of the Community Response Unit pilot in the Fire Department. With the slight revenue recovery, we're able to maintain the funding that is supporting these two programs throughout the forecast period. The forecast also includes approximately $4.8 million in annual CS, annual Measure CS funding. Not included is the continuation of the one-time payment to the school district for the playground club program and youth program, and additional library hour restorations, at least in this forecast. We'll talk about that more this afternoon. And while our prior forecast had anticipated additional funding for the CIP program, our Capital Improvement Program, and repayment of the deferred affordable housing contribution under Measure GSH that we deferred for one year during the pandemic, at this time, we don't foresee having the capacity to make those commitments in the next five years. And while we're showing a relatively positive forecast, it does come at a cost. First of all, we're using reserves to maintain a balanced budget. This chart shows that forecasted expenditures, the red line, are anticipated to exceed forecasted revenues, the green line, for most of the five years. We anticipate that these are temporary deficits, due in large part to the closure of some of our hotels for renovations and some one-time expenditure obligations. For this reason, we've set aside working capital funds and reserves to smooth out our balances and maintain operations. These reserves were made possible from an earlier-than-expected revenue recovery, meaning we saw higher revenues than budgeted last year and this year. Because we expect revenue growth to moderate, we have set aside these funds as one-time reserves. The second cost underlying the forecast is that we're still severely underfunding our Capital Improvement Program. Annual funding for our infrastructure, our technology, and our equipment replacement continues to be nearly half of what it was, and we will not be able to reach our pre-pandemic funding levels until fiscal year 2526. We have over $300 million in unfunded projects, and our current replacement and maintenance schedules are deficient and unsustainable. And as I mentioned earlier, our forecast no longer includes additional investments beyond pre-pandemic levels in future years. Susan Klein will, will talk about the third underlying cost in our forecast, and that's our, that our services remain at a reduced level. So moving beyond the general fund for a minute, several of our enterprise and special funds are self-sustaining in the future, showing healthy reserves, among them, Water, our Big Blue Bus, our airport, and the Housing Authority, and a few others. The Resource Recycling and Recovery Fund, our R3 Fund, will require some attention in the form of a rate increases, in, in, a rate increase in order to remain self-sufficient, and staff will be coming back to council with proposed rate increases in August. And our Fleet and Technology Replacement Funds are still awaiting repayment of contributions that were deferred during the pandemic years. And as I mentioned earlier, the beach and pier funds are requiring general fund assistance during the forecast, and our Community Broadband Fund, which has also been impacted by changes in the office market, will not have additional funding that, that we used to be able to have a transfer of funds coming into the general fund, though that transfer will stop. In November 2022, Santa Monica voters passed three tax measures, and two of those measures are already in effect and poised to bring new funding streams to the city, allowing us to enhance services in key priority areas. First is Measure CS, an increase to our hotel tax of 1% for hotel stays and 3% for home share stays, that we anticipate bringing in about $4.7 million, $4.8 million a year. The proposed uses for these funds, as noted in the ballot language, are to address the impacts of homelessness and enhance public safety. The second funding stream is Measure GS. Measure GS was a citizens' initiative, increasing the documentary transfer tax on sales of property over $8 million. While this measure has gone into effect already, documentary transfer tax is a volatile funding source that is hard to predict, especially when we're dealing with very high-value properties. So we'll need to program these funds once we see actual amounts accumulate. The funding source is restricted in its uses, with the first $10 million in revenue going to the school district, the next $40 million to homelessness prevention and affordable housing, and any amounts beyond that broken out for these uses. The funds for homelessness prevention and housing will not go into the general fund, but their management and administration will dramatically impact the work of our Community Services Department. We have a lot more work and planning to accomplish while we wait for these funds to come in. And given that new funding streams are focused on specific uses, staff is proposing to reprogram existing funds to address pressing needs that we otherwise aren't able to fund. We've considered trade-offs, and the one that makes the most sense to us at this point is to continue the suspension of the unfunded pension liability paydowns. This would free up $2.5 million in the general fund. The fiscal policy to pay down pension liabilities at an accelerated pace is definitely a prudent way to manage and mitigate our long-term liabilities, and we've made great strides in this area. Over the years, we've paid down over $88 million of our unfunded liability, and that's beyond the regularly scheduled payments. We're one of the leaders in California in doing this. We also negotiated lower benefits with all of our employees that have further lowered our unfunded liability. The policy to pay down our unfunded liability over an accelerated 13- to 15-year schedule was adopted in 2019, when we were in a very different financial and operational position. We had full services, high reserve levels, and a lower level of liabilities on the horizon. Considering our current situation, we see a suspension of this policy in order, in order to focus on community services as an important pivot. And I will now pass the presentation on to Susan Klein. Thank you.
Thank you, Gigi.
Thank you, good morning, everyone. Susan Klein, Assistant City Manager. I'm going to talk through some stuff that's a little hard for me to present, so I just want to get that out of the way for me, and for some of the staff, and those in the community. But I do want to take But I do want to take a moment to appreciate council giving us the opportunity to reflect on where we've been and get us to a point where we are moving forward, but I think it's important to take this moment of reflection. So that was a lot of information about numbers and how financial volatility is playing a role in our moderated recovery. Now, I'm going to transition the conversation from numbers to people, and as we know, since we're a service-driven organization, this means when we, we need people to provide services. And when we need to make cuts on the financial side, that means we lose people along with those services. So first, I'm going to provide some background on the restructuring that our organization went through in April and May of 2020, shortly after the start of the pandemic. Due to the financial impacts of COVID-19 and the resulting shutdown, the city experienced a massive drop in revenue and underwent a restructuring that reduced our workforce by about 20%. In a matter of a few months, we went from an organization of almost 2,300 employees to a little less than 1,900. Staff worked on the restructuring in an immediate and abrupt, fully remote capacity over just a one-month period. These cuts, the 20% reduction across the organization, were decisions that were made in just a month's period of time, even though the process took a few months. So it was, it was pretty extreme. Many of the staff who were not laid off or demoted and received a temporary pay cut and other impacts, which were indicated in the chart on Page 20 in the staff report. Far too many feared for their own job in an organization where layoffs have virtually been unheard of. And our close colleagues, some were abruptly gone, either due to layoffs or because they had taken early retirement, earlier than they had certainly planned, and they were left, the remaining staff were left to pick up the slack. So a lot of people's jobs, even through today, are substantially broader than they were when they stepped into their roles. The resulting impacts to morale from the budget reductions continue to be felt across the organization to this day. Now, I know we all went through an extremely tumultuous time in the early months of shutdown, no matter where we were as community members. What I want to pause on here in terms of the health of our workforce is how abrupt, quick, and extreme the measures were in our organization to safeguard the city, and how those employees that are still here serving the community carry that with them today. We are working to rebuild organizational culture that brings our long-term employees and our recent hires together, which is certainly a work in progress. As a result of the shutdown and the restructuring, the shitty, this, boy, yeah, sociologists will have fun with that one later on, the city shifted in many key ways. Every department had to reduce its budget and workforce. Santa Monica Library that we're in today had to eliminate operations in all of its branches, as did many other beloved city facilities, a lot of which still remain closed. Many administrative positions responsible for responding to customer inquiries and supporting operations were eliminated, leaving departments struggling to effectively serve customers amid an unprecedented global pandemic, requiring many staff to absorb additional duties with fewer resources. Okay, so we're going to fast forward a little bit to today, moving on. As our economy recovers, most city revenue streams are beginning to return. This has allowed the city to incrementally restore city services as well as make important investments in priority areas. But while emergency orders have lifted and people strive towards pre-COVID normalcy, the pace of service restoration to pre-COVID levels is the source of great frustration among our community and staff. Part of why we are here today is to provide clarity and transparency to some of the impactful but not necessarily obvious constraints to the pace of recovery in Santa Monica as we endeavor to recover or to restore services at levels and that actually address community needs that are also aligned to council priorities. Today, the organization stands at 88% of the staffing levels citywide compared to what they were in 2019. We're still below our baseline level of staffing, and many programs and services continue to operate in a manner that does not match community need. I want to pause here again to connect the still currently understaffed operations impacting service levels with the significant frustration among our community and staff members. The revenues are coming back, but for many reasons that Gigi covered, their return is slower than we all want. And as we've been able to make restorations, we are still filling gaps in staffing and resources to just get back to pre-COVID levels in many areas. The good news is that we do have some proposals to continue restorations. We'll discuss more this afternoon. Okay, some more context setting. Here's a list, and this is by no means comprehensive, of some of the treasured community and fundamental staff resources that have been able to return, that are still under-resourced and not at the level of community need today. While this abbreviated list shows areas of cuts since 2020, it also reflects some restored services we've been able to bring back over the past three years in very incremental, incremental ways, as Gigi has made abundantly clear, our restorations have and will continue to be on this incremental pace. Later, you'll hear from the city manager about how even though we are recovering at a tempered pace, we are able to make strategic and impactful investments for additional Okay, well, that was a list of services and programs that were impact, that continue to be impacted by cuts from 2020, even in areas where, you know, we aren't down on FTEs and we have been able to restore resources. There are other concerns that are impacting how we serve the community. The organization where vacancies and/or high volumes for service hinder operations, even where budgeted staffing reflects operational need. Historically, high vacancies and increasing service demands have created additional ongoing challenges. Across the board, many required functions are getting done with fewer staff, leading to burnout. These functions range from financial services to childcare programs, to our Big Blue Bus, to our Police Department and Fire, and the list goes on. And here are just some of the capital improvement projects that were put on hold due to the pandemic and now are desperately overdue. Some of the operational impacts the organization and community are experiencing due to an inadequately funded CIP program include the lack of facility maintenance and replacement funds. Buildings and infrastructure are enduring substantial deferred maintenance, while computer and vehicle replacements are being deferred well beyond their useful lifespans. This will require additional funding resources in the future to catch up on all the deferred Okay, just a couple more slides. This is, this all has an impact on the state of the organization. Even if we did have the funds to restore staffing to 100% pre-pandemic levels, which as Gigi illustrated, is not where we currently are financially and would still not put us where we need to be to meet current community demands in a lot of areas. We face significant additional barriers that make hiring an even more labor and time-intensive process as we are seeing across the nation. The slowing economic recovery, combined with heavy workloads leading to burnout, our high cost of living, and extreme commute times, are resulting in the city organization experiencing greater levels of turnover, particularly among our newer and younger employees as we seek more, as they seek more compensation, schedule flexibility, and growth opportunities. Here are some of the staffing challenges, I'll highlight some that our organization currently faces. High staff turnover, so the city's attrition rate is close to 10%. After having operated with an attrition rate of approximately 5% for many years, which our HR Director, Chief People Person, Lori Gentles, reminds us, isn't necessarily great either. We don't want it to be too low because we do want people to progress. 10% is double digits is very high, and we could peak at 20%. We have some unique things going on in Santa Monica where we may see mass departures over the next year or two. The city could once draw talent because of its reputation for stability, focus on priorities, attractive retirement formula, and pay. However, today, Santa Monica's retirement formula for new employees is consistent with all other agencies, and the city pay rates are not as attractive in this economy. There's an extremely competitive labor market. The city had more than 630 requests for recruitments in the past 12 months. These recruitments yielded far fewer qualified candidates than in the past, and many had to be conducted multiple, multiple times to actually fill the vacancies. Staff burnout and low morale, it was reflected by 20% of staff who took a city-sponsored engagement survey, where they referenced burnout and low morale as a contributing factor in their current work experience. The increased demands put from COVID-19, combined with striving to provide excellent service with fewer staff, has taken its toll on the organization. Staff burnout is also fueled by the high level of disruption in city priorities and focus, staff turnover, and near-complete turnover in city leadership, which is now stabilizing. So that's, things are looking up on that front, too. The roadmap that staff has developed, reflected in the proposals you'll hear later this afternoon, will move us forward incrementally but across services. As council affirms its priorities for the next two years, there is an opportunity to signal to staff and to the community that the era of high disruption and under-resourcing is coming to a close, and that organizational leadership is focused on priorities important to the community and to the workforce, getting us back to previous level, service levels and beyond, to truly be responsive to community needs, which is why we come to work every day and choose public service. Okay, I'll close with reiterating that we are very focused on expanding programs and services in the community. This is what the community and staff are both demanding. The bottom line is that restoring services is also restoring morale. Though the pace of the restorations is slower than we hoped, it's worth noting the substantial progress that the city has made so far in our recovery. It's remarkable where we were at the onset of the pandemic and full shutdown after drastic cuts. As you might have heard in the State of the City address and read in the Economic Recovery Roundup, the city's recovery work has gone above and beyond what other cities of our size could accomplish. So while we all reengage with the world and things are looking up, today, we've covered the many reasons our services and programs will continue to be restored at a slower pace than expected or that we all want. But we do continue to restore services to the community and resources to staff, albeit incrementally. We can now open it up to questions for our staff team that is here today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan. So we're going to open it up to questions only about these two presentations. I know we have more to cover this afternoon, and we'll have a separate question time then. I don't have my little magic screen, so you're going to have to raise your hands, jump up and down, make weird noises to catch my attention. Do we have any questions? Oscar, again, we're going by first names today.
Thank you, Gleam. On the, on the question of reserves, what's a, what's a healthy amount that we should have? I mean, we're at 70-plus percent. What's the recommendation from staff, considering all the conditions and circumstances we're facing right now?
So we're 70% of where we were when we had healthy reserves, so I would say that we would want to get back to that, that 100%, which means that it's about, you know, it would be nice to have about 40% of our budget, of our operating budget in reserves, at least, and we've, we've done better than that.
Yeah, and how does that compare with other cities in the, in the, in the region, like Beverly Hills or Culver City, for example?
It's a best practice, I would say. I don't know what Beverly Hills or Culver City have right now, but it's a best practice, and every city is different and has its own, you know, whether it's, you know, depending, we are in a place where we have, what used to be a very stable set of revenues, we're not there anymore. Things, there's a lot of disruption, and you can't expect that you're going to see the same type of performance in the revenues that we have right now than we've seen in the past. There's a lot of disruption, just looking at what's going on with office workers, for example. We, we have a, an economy that is really relying on offices being in the city, and we don't know what, what's going to happen there, and the same thing with tourism.
Okay, great, thank you. And there was another quick question. The, there was a comment that was made, I think Susan, you made a comment regarding, we talked about in the last presentation, the vacancy rate of 10.3%, but you said that we can potentially get to 20%, that there might be mass departures. Can you explain that a little bit so I understand? I know you, maybe it was about the cost of living, sort of the compensation hasn't kept up with that, and there were some other, other items, but I just wanted to know, I wanted to be more clear on why we might get to the 20%.
Sure, I appreciate that. I'll give, provide the information I have, and I don't know if Lori wants to add anything. She's, oh, there she is. So our, when our, actually, back, going back to 2019, the city negotiated an EPMC payout for classic employees. So those payouts are scheduled over a six-year period. This July or August, when the, the third payout of the six will be distributed to those, to classic, remaining classic employees, will be the biggest percentage of the individual employees payout from the EPMC, from the retirement program that has now been eliminated in the city. So the, what we've heard from some employees is that they're looking to this payout, it's either this year, potentially next year, and also labor negotiations, you know, we may see people getting their, you know, last highest year, and then maybe departing later this year, or perhaps sometime in 2024. So it will be, not only will it be a large percentage of employees that are eligible for retirement in these, this compressed timeframe, it's also our classic employees, so those with the most institutional knowledge in, you know, departments across the organization. So it'll be kind of a double whammy of large departures, but also those with a substantial institutional knowledge.
Mayor Protem Lana.
Don't sit down yet. Well, I don't know who's, who it's directed at, but just to follow up on what Oscar just, we're using first names, right? On what Oscar just asked. So, looking at, you know, the top three positions that we saw the most reduction in public works being number one, community services being number two, PD being number three, obviously directly ties to our clean and safe, and, you know, how we're surfacing our youth and our most vulnerable community members. And looking forward to this potentially 20% reduction in staff, how many of those would you say roughly we will see affect not only those three departments, but what we consider as residents, the boots-on-the-ground positions, as opposed to just like executive-level positions, if you have an idea?
So you're talking about the potential departures in the next two years?
Right.
I don't know if...
Hopefully that made sense.
No, it totally makes sense, yeah. Where, where do we anticipate in the organization?
To see that loss.
The departures impacting.
Second to that, I know that direction and leadership within departments are important, and a lot of times, it's hard to recognize that as a resident, but for those of us that see libraries closed, you know, no more youth programs, we often tie that directly to the boots-on-the-ground position. So I'm just clearly, you know, I just want to kind of see, like, what are we looking at there?
So...
Before you begin, everyone, this is Lori Gentles, our Chief People Officer. We're going by first name, so welcome, Lori.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. We have taken a look at that data to see, is it going to be concentrated? Like, who would be eligible? Who would be eligible for those payouts in combination with their age and their tenure, because all of that matters? We also look at whether or not they have dependents, because all of that factors in to the predictive analysis as to whether or not they're likely to leave. So there's a difference between whether or not they're eligible to leave versus whether they're likely to leave because of some of these other characteristics. And we try to do predictive analysis around that. So when we looked at everyone that's, that's eligible based on that criteria, it's across the board. It is not concentrated in any particular area. However, I will say, and I know some of the, my colleagues that are here now, we are experiencing, just as you said, Lana, we are experiencing some higher turnover in those positions that directly tie to clean and safe, or the boots on the ground. So we are seeing that now, and a lot of that has to do with, a lot of those positions are either lower-paid positions, and they can find, and they have to be at work every day, and so they can find other opportunities nearer their home, closer to their home, for the same or greater pay. So those are just some of the other variables.
And maybe before you walk away, my follow-up question to that is, you touched on a great point. We are in a post-pandemic world, the job market looks different across the board, regardless of anything that we're saving, facing, specifically in Santa Monica. How are we planning for that, that loss of institutional knowledge in terms of training internally? I'm assuming leadership has sort of forecasted that and recognized this long before this discussion, and I, I'm curious, is there a roadmap as to how we sort of pass on that institutional knowledge?
That's an excellent question. When we, when HR went through the restructuring, we lost our entire organizational learning and development unit. So that is gone right now, so we don't have great support there. We are trying to reinforce transfer of knowledge just through a building of redundancies. Susan mentioned earlier that everybody's workload has broadened, and so by virtue of it just broadening naturally, people have had to pick up different pieces of, had to become more global in the work that they do. But in terms of a structured succession planning program and transfer of knowledge, I can honestly say we don't have a formalized system for that.
And then lastly, as, as we look at the, some of those lower-paid positions, where people are maybe seeing that they've worked a long time in a position, and now they have opportunities to maybe not have to do a job where you're physically there, that's taxing on your body. There's a younger generation, all, maybe trying to get into, you know, a city job that does have benefits that don't really exist in the private sector. Are we working and collaborating and creating new opportunities with, say, Santa Monica College, our high schools even? I know there's some, I know we talked about how we attract new employees, but just looking at our community members, our young community members in some of those entry-level positions?
So let me just say this realistically, I do a lot of studying around the generations, the millennials and the digital natives, and kind of what they're looking for in employment. And Susan also mentioned, we recently did an employee engagement survey. The largest population of employees within our organizations is younger, on the younger end. We have 50% are millennials. Digital natives are, are growing. And I can tell you that benefits, what benefits means to me, and to many in this room, is not the same that it means to that group. So that is not the selling point. So the selling point is to come and be able to have meaningful work, have flexibility, to be able to contribute and move up the ranks pretty quickly, to have life-work balance, all of those other things. So we have to find another way to market the city as a city. Someone mentioned earlier, the city as an employer of choice, how we can, we have to reinvent that, in my mind, because the things that used to be important in terms of benefits are no longer the number-one thing on the top of people's list.
All right, thank you. I know that that's, you're clearly thinking about that roadmap as to how we restructure what benefits look like. So hopefully, we can talk a little bit more about that later. Thank you.
Sure.
Carolyn.
Carolyn.
Hi. Thanks, Lori. Okay, I, I actually have more questions for you, probably. Yeah, and then I'm going to have some for Gigi. So it was mentioned during the presentation that we were usually at a 5% staff turnover rate. I wasn't quite clear, what is optimal for an organization? Because we know that 10% is probably too high, is 5% too low? Like, what should we be aiming for?
So I've been here about four years now, this is my fifth year, and this city has historically been pretty low on its turnover, and it ranged from anywhere from a 3% to 5%. And so 3% is way too low.
Okay.
For an organization, to have a healthy organization, you have to have some movement. It's like river, you have to have free water flowing. So for government, 10% is high, for other industries, it's not high. But for government, it is, simply because of the historical foundations. People come, they stay, it's a good place to work, you know, they spend their lives and their career, and it's, there's legacy. So 10%, anything, when we start to creep up over 10%, I start to get a little concerned, just from an HR standpoint. With the 20% that was mentioned, again, when we talk, when we do the predictive analysis, that 20% is what could happen. But again, when we look at what's likely to happen, chances are, I don't know if it'll actually reach the 20%, only because people have lost money in their investments and different things like that. There's other impending factors. But it certainly will go above 10%.
Should we be aiming for, like, 8% optimally?
Again, I would say anywhere from the 5%, you know, 7% to 8% turnover is healthy, I would say.
Okay, and then, what kind of impact, just to the questions that Lana was asking, do you think that pension reform has had any kind of impact on our ability to recruit folks into the city?
Yes.
Can you talk a little bit about that?
I think it has, only because, and again, I want to make sure I'm clear on this, Susan mentioned that we are now aligned with everybody else in the world. So it's not a city of Santa Monica thing, but what it does is we've lost our competitive edge, because our retirement was healthier, better than everybody else's, and so that was a, that was a great marketing, that was a great retain, retention tool. Now that we've lost that, it puts us back on even ground with everybody else.
And just to clarify, can you just, for everyone to know, this was a state, Governor Brown initiated pension reform. It was not like we had an option here, correct?
Right.
Yeah, okay. And so in light of that, like, to the things that you just mentioned, and as I was hearing the presentation and reading the staff report, I'm pretty concerned about this potential, A, this inability to recruit folks coupled with our high vacancy, current high, high turnover rate, and potentially even higher. What are we doing, or what could we be doing proactively to, and I'm sure you're already thinking about this, I'm just not here every single day listening to what you all are working on. How do we think about, like, the city contributing to, like, child savings accounts, thinking about how we're doing, I know we have paid family leave, are there other options for childcare? Are there options that we can put forward to improve work-life balance, flexible scheduling? As someone, in case everyone doesn't know, who works for also a government agency, County of LA with 110,000 employees, with a lot of them reaching retirement age, this is something we talk about a lot. How are we restructuring our benefits package within, like, our span of control? It sounds like our generate, the millennial generation cares less about, you know, how much pension they're going to get when they retire, and more about what are they getting right now? What's the salary right now? What are the benefits right now? So like, are we thinking about all of those things? And, and could we potentially hear more about that in the future, so that we're being proactive? Sorry, yeah, go ahead.
The money person comes up.
Sorry, thanks, thanks, yeah.
One of the things that I would say is, when we go through labor negotiations, we have people who are, you know, at the end, kind of, you know, nearing the mid-to-end part of their careers, and people who are in the beginning. So restructuring benefits is very difficult, because you, you know, people who are nearing the end don't necessarily want to lose what, you know, they've been working towards. And so a lot of times, even with paid family leave, it's additive. So we have to think about that when we're looking at the, the funding that we have available to us.
I would just say that if we care about equity, we care about being a family-friendly workplace and employer of choice, I think those and other options for families and work-life balances would be important to us, but I'm sure you all agree with that. Great. Okay. Gigi, another question for you. When you're doing the economic forecasting, like, what are you looking at? Because I don't, I've read the staff report, but I don't think I was clear on, like, the underlighting data that you're looking at to make this forecast, because it seems like we're going from this 30% increase down to 3.5 average, anticipated average increase in revenue. How are we making those forecasts?
So we work with several consultants, several economic consultants. We have specialized consultants in sales tax, in tourism, in property tax, and one of the things that, when you're seeing, yeah, it went from 30% to 3%, that's because we were, if you remember the V.
Yep.
We were still in the V.
Yep.
And things were recovering very quickly, but there comes a point where it gets to, you know, the, it's kind of saturated as to the, the recovery, and now we're just going to be seeing lower, in the old days, 3%, 3.5%, 4% was fine. I mean, some things go up a little higher, and some things go, you know, are a little less, but I, we do have to think about, when we're looking at our transient occupancy tax, which is a very important part of what we do, of the revenue that comes in, we do have a lot of hotels that are investing, making investments in themselves, and it's going to be great for our economy in the future, but it does have an impact right now.
Right, with, like, the lows, for example.
Exactly.
Yeah, I, I saw that mentioned. I think for now, I am good on questions. Thank you so much. And by the way, I just want to say, I was almost about to start crying when you were doing this presentation. Thank you to everyone who's been through this. I can't even imagine.
I have a couple of questions, I'm not sure who they should be addressed to, but I'm sure the appropriate staff will jump up, say, my God, what is he asking? And then eagerly answer the question. So first question is, why do the pier and beach funds need subsidies? I thought those two funds were somewhat on an equilibrium. Is there anything that we can do differently to try and make sure that we're not subsidizing the beach and pier funds over the next two years?
The beach and pier funds rely on their own revenues, and let's take the pier fund, for example. Over the, during the pandemic, and still, right now, parking was closed, the pier was closed for a while, parking was closed, we gave rent abatements to people who are leasing property. That hasn't, we haven't gotten to the same level of parking revenue in the pier, but the other, that we used to have before. But the important thing to know is that the pier fund has historically relied on general fund subsidies, because the pier is made out of wood, and it's sitting in the ocean, and it takes a ton of, of work to keep it going on. And so, you know, we're always updating, and I'm sure that Rick can give you more information on, on what it takes to keep the pier in good, in good health physically. But, and then the, the beach fund, we have the same kind of situation. It was relying, it relies on parking revenues. The beach lots were closed for a while during the pandemic. We also did a major, the North Beach Trail Improvement, which cost a bit of money, and that was literally right as the pandemic was happening. We were, you know, we were doing the construction, so we couldn't really stop it, we were in the middle of it. We also are waiting to see, we were counting on parking increases in these areas, parking rate increases, and we're waiting for the Coastal Commission to give us the go-ahead to move forward in those.
What is our average rate of annual subsidy for the pier and beach funds? I mean, what is the percentage rate?
The percentage rate is probably not big, it's the dollar amount, and I'm going to, Oscar might tell me I'm wrong, but I would say that at the pier, it might be about 3, 3.5 million dollars a year. I know, I know it was 2.7, and we needed to raise it.
About, about 5 million over the forecast period.
5, 5 million dollars annually.
Well, over the forecast period.
Over the for, yeah, during the forecast period. And then the, the beach is, might, might be about 1 or 1.5 million dollars annually.
Annually is about 2.4 million.
2.4 million annually for the beach.
So we take about 5.5 to 6 million dollars out of the general fund, and give it to those two funds?
Sounds like, more like 7.5.
I didn't say I was a math major. So what, what, is there any way to stem that, or is it just something that will recover over time?
I think that...
And I guess, as a follow-up to what you said a minute ago on that, was, you said it was primarily infrastructure, or that's what I heard, it was infrastructure that was causing the deficits.
Well, infrastructure has always, we've always had the pier kind of, you know, when we look at our capital programs, we always consider the pier to be something that might be covered by the general fund. If they don't, you know, do, capital programs take a long time to do so, if it takes a little bit longer, and we don't need to subsidize them, that's kind of been the history. It's a combination of, of capital improvements, but it's also the fact that we've lost revenues, and we are not, I believe that our parking is not at the level that it was at before. We don't have the parking deck open on the pier as much as it was before. So there's a lot of things, I think that that's more of a policy discussion on the pier going into the future.
Next, thank you for that. Our CalPierce liabilities. What is the increase in our debt this year due to state investment issues? Do we know that yet? And what was our, what was our indebtedness for pension plans has of, let's say, last June, what will it be has of this June? Is there, I've been hearing that there is a dramatic increase, is that true?
So if you, I believe that if you looked at our financial statements that we just published a couple weeks ago, you're gonna, it's gonna look like we are in great shape with PERS, because when there is, PERS takes two, a couple years to, they have bad, they have good returns one year, they had 21% returns a couple years ago, which means that the next year, it's going to show as if we're really well-funded. And from the good returns, two years later is when our contributions would technically go down, because we don't have to pay in as much. So everything is off with PERS. So right now, our financial statements show, show us at a very good funded rate, and I almost want to say that it's maybe even at 90%. But we know that ever since that happened, we had a 6.1, a negative 6.1% return the next year. We are anticipating, we just do our own, we have our own tools that we use, and it's probably going to take us down to about 75... have our own tools that we use, and it's probably going to take us down to about 75%. We're still, and, you know, we're better than many, because we have funded, paid down some of our liability. So, you know, we're going to go down, but we're not going to go down to like 50% or anything.
What, what have we traditionally paid out, paid in advance each year to try and reduce it? And if we stop doing that for two or three years, what would the difference be?
So we were anticipating about two, in the general fund, about 2.5 million dollars a year over the next few years.
Per year, if we hold on to those funds?
Yes, yes.
And, and what's the liability of not paying down? Is there, is there a, some sort of cost to us besides psychological?
When we pay down, we, it, it's over 30 years. You see the benefits over 30 years. It's not, it's kind of like paying down your mortgage earlier. It just means that your interest rate over the, a period of 30 years will go down. Over 30 years, it's going to make a big difference. Over a few years, it will not make a difference. Or as big a difference. I'm not going to say it's not going to make a difference. It would make a difference.
No, I'm holding you to just not make a difference.
It's always, it's always better to pay down early, but we have to look at a lot of different things.
Okay. It, since we're continuously, or continually having problems over the next couple of years, something that I'm not necessarily for, but I feel I should ask the question. In terms of outside services, I see that most cities, we're, we're somewhat unique in that we do everything virtually in the city, all of our services ourselves, where many cities contract out various services, either to LA County or to private services. Would there be a budget advantage to looking selectively at services? And I, not some of them in favor of, but I attended the Contract Cities Conference last summer. And I'd like to know, are there, for instance, and before everyone throws things at me, I'm, I'm putting up a shield. But, you know, Manhattan Beach, for instance, their libraries are LA County. Some cities have fire services, they're LA County. Some cities have private trash collection services. Some cities have different health services that take over. Is there any type of advantage, long-term, to looking at services that would not destroy the dedication of our workforce, but would help alleviate some of the, the issues we're facing right now?
I think that the labor shortages that we're seeing right now are across the board. You know, we have been trying to, even with, through contracts, I think we have problems. Our contractors are having problems hiring people. So I don't know that that type of situation would be alleviated. There is also, you know-
Would it help with pensions?
Our pensions for many, for about a half of our workforce are much lower now than they were because of pension reform. So, you know, there's a difference. If, if you're not getting the pension benefit, you might be getting a higher salary. And we do have a living wage. A lot of what we do is, if we contract out, we must pay a living wage, or our contractors must pay a living wage. There is also prevailing wage requirements in the state of California, and Davis Bacon, again, prevailing wage requirements if something is being paid out of federal funding. So it keeps salaries up, no matter who's doing it.
I was just asking, because I know most cities, I, I don't remember what the statistic is. Carolyn might know more. Between the 88 cities and, in LA County, how many cities actually contract one or more departments? I'm not talking about independent contractors, but departments that become either part of other services. And I'm not, the only, here, the comparable thing I would say is, we've been talking a lot about losing staff and having problems that way. I know years ago, a, a former mayor told me about a situation at Woodlawn Cemetery, and how he went there one day, and, and the, everything was not mowed. There were gray, former caskets stacked up in area, and he was horrified. And he went back to the city manager at that time and said, what's going on? And I think he, I recall that he said, well, one person was out on leave, one person was on workman's comp, and they had five full-time employees, I think. And they only had one employee on. And they ended up, this was under Lamont, Lamont ended up contracting that service out. And then they had five people there, no matter what, every day. You know, people were just there working. So I, I, look, and I'm not in favor of that. I love the fact that we are a city that has its own staff, that, that we're not looking at an outside service. But I, I at least wanted to raise that question. And have we ever done a study of, of that for different departments?
We actually did do a very comprehensive study on contracting out services versus contracting in. I think it was back in 2012 or 2013. I'm looking at Gleam.
I think that's about right. Sorry, yeah, I think that's about right. I was going to say 2015.
Oh, maybe, maybe. It's been a while. And it actually, the council adopted a policy for contracting out services. And, and we do contract services out around, throughout the department, including my, I, I know, we contract services out in the finance department for workers' compensation claims, in part, and, you know, throughout many different departments. But we do do an analysis to make sure that it makes sense before we do that.
And that, that's all I'm concerned about, is, are we making sense in all areas? I, I do want to take issue with one thing. I know I heard this morning several times that we need to return staffing to pre-pandemic levels. And I know, when I ran for election in 2020, there was a constant refrain from many people in the city that we were one of the highest ratios of staff per capita in the state of California. So I'd like to us to be able to work, I, I, I'm not as concerned with raising that bar, but I am concerned with making sure our services work. And I know, I know there's a balance there. So I'm not as concerned about us returning to 2,200 and, Susan, 98 staff members? Okay, I'm not as concerned about that as I'm concerned about making sure that services who hit our residents in the street level, building and safety, policing, sanitation, RRR, all those levels become fully staffed, that we're able to help our residents where they need help, that we make sure that our youth services are funded. So there used to be talk about, you know, well, somehow it seems like we're overstaffed if many other cities could operate, many other cities that are comparable to us could operate in, in a better way, it seemed, with less staff. So I know there were some members of the city, some constituents, who said, oh, well, the pandemic may be the best thing ever, because it reduces our staff levels. Well, obviously, it was a very crude staffing cut that didn't necessarily reflect where the city was and what our residents expected and needed from city services. Is there, if you were looking at our city staffing versus services, can we not aim for total restoration? But what is, and maybe this is for David, I'm not sure, but what is our, our optimum staffing level while giving great service to our residents and businesses and people in need in our city, without necessarily expanding services, expanding staff that much? Is there a, is there a halfway point? And I don't know.
Well, I'm not sure that there's a specific metric or number that I can call to. But what I do want to particularly call out and appreciate is the notion, as we continue to recover, to think about where we are today, and to think about our community need today, and to align our resources to address that. Not so much as thinking about where we were in 2019 or 2018, but understanding that we continue to evolve as an organization, we continue to evolve as a community. And so those staffing levels will reflect, right, where we invest our resources, where we need to be in the moment and going forward. We won't necessarily always be saying, you know, it's going to be the same numbers as it was back in certain years.
And I would presume that now, as we look at hindsight and look toward the future, some of the departments will end up staffed differently, because we'll know, for instance, building and safety planning is, is so short of staff that we can't oper, we can't offer the services we need to residents and businesses coming to Santa Monica. We know those things. So you will, you're working on shifts in, in department personnel needs constantly. That's what I wanted to know. And last question for me, I think, is, I fought, and I, and I thank our new city attorney at that point for contributing part of his budget to making sure our after-school programs were restored, were restored for this year. I know that was a one-year restoration, and that we continue to have issues. But I, I agree with members of the public that we need to make sure our after-school programs are funded. My question is, what is our cost last year because of Doug Sloan's contribution? He contributed a half million dollars from his budget back to fund our after-school programs. Is that the approximate cost of restoring elementary school after-school programs? And so, one, is that the cost, or what is the real cost of providing free after-school programs for all children in our elementary schools, A? And then, B, where are we in terms of the school district's obligations in that matter?
So I'll let Danielle come to the podium to answer. The half a million dollars for the one particular program, the supervised after-school program, is far from achieving a full restoration of our after-school and youth programs. And even when you look at what we're recommending to you in today's discussion, it's still, I'm sure you're going to hear, far short from the type of service levels that the community expects for after-school youth programs. But I'll turn it over to-
So what is our bar? That's, that's the question.
I'll let Danielle see if she's got an answer for you now, if we have to follow up.
Sure. So Danielle Noble, Acting Director, Community Services Department. I think the $500,000 you're speaking of was a one-time pass-through to the school district, so that they could contract with us, they're currently contracting with the Boys and Girls Club for Playground Club. So that's different than the out-of-school time programming that we offer through the Crest Pal and programming at Virginia Avenue Park. So I want to separate the two. Okay. So the programming at our parks, our out-of-school time programming at our parks, we're putting forward some proposal today to partially restore, and that has about a net cost of about $400,000 in the next year, in the biennial budget. We did talk with and get direction from our city manager about putting forward a restoration at mid-year, so we can begin to staff up, because it does take a long time to bring on staff. But that will not bring back all of our services. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I, I was concerned really specifically right now about our elementary school after-school programs on the school sites.
Okay, so that's Crest.
Well, well, it was the Boys Club operated Playground Club.
Okay, so-
So what is the cost of that specifically? Because that's what I think we contributed a one-time fee to.
Right, so, go ahead.
Miss Danielle, sorry. I think you need to be clear, there are two, Crest and after-school are two different programs. So I think you're probably going to need to break those out for Phil.
Sure, so-
Thank you.
So let me, I also want to address something that some people in the room might be familiar with, just to clarify. Prior to the pandemic, the city operated a program, after-school dismissal, at those elementary school sites called Playground Access. We no longer operate that program. It is not feasible with city staff, for a variety of reasons. And so, when we, in the last couple of years, we have granted the school district funds to, so that the Boys and Girls Club can operate a similar program. That is an annual cost of $500,000.
So for that particular program, to farm that out, to contract that out to the Boys and Girls Clubs, costs the city a half million dollars. Does the school district contribute to that amount?
I do not believe that they do. I think this is, I think we have an agreement with the school district, and they then have an agreement with Boys and Girls Club.
So it funnels through. But that's the amount of subsidy that's needed to keep that particular program going, after-school during, during the 2023 to 25 budgetary process, is approximately a half million a year?
Yes.
Thank you. That's what, that's what I was asking. I know Virginia Avenue Park, I know all of our parks need staff. They, we all, we need programs at every one of our parks. But that's what I was asking about specifically.
Okay. And I just want to clarify that in our proposal, those, there are, there's a recommendation to continue to fund the Playground Club, and there is also a recommendation to partially restore our city programming at parks that is our out-of-school time programming. So you'll see that, two items that are related to youth services.
Thank you so much, Danielle.
Okay.
And I'm finished.
Not seen any other hands up. I have a few questions.
Liam, sorry.
Oh, I'm, I'm-
Now we're going down the road.
Oh, no, no, no. I told you, you have to make noise, wave your hand, bring a flag. Jesse?
I think these would probably be for Gigi. The, the report that I read prior, I think, mentioned, and you referenced as well, I think it was around 21 and a half million of unanticipated surplus revenues from this year. I, could you break down a little, in a little more detail, what we're doing with that particular surplus?
Yeah, so when we were working on this year's budget, we were anticipating that we were going to need to use last year's surplus, about almost $11 million of it, to cover, you know, this year's budget and in the future, particularly because of our labor negotiations. Because we have more money coming in this year, this is, we now can keep the other money in reserves, but we're going to use it in the future. It's kind of, you know, we're moving it around. But it's allowing us to keep that money for working capital and any kind of contingent liabilities. We also have a few different things that happen. Whenever our sales tax goes up, and our, specifically our transaction and use tax, which is what our voters have voted on, that, you know, what goes through GSH, or Y and YY. If, for every dollar that we get from that, only, we, the general fund only gets 25 cents. The rest of it, the 75 cents goes, 50 cents goes to the school district, and 25 cents goes to Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So even though it's 21 million, a lot, about 4 million of it is going to other areas. And we have, so there's that. We have some other additional costs related to some liabilities from old litigation settlements, about $3 million that we have to do. And you'll see all of that in our mid-year report. We'll be very specific about it.
And the rest you're indicating would be to smooth out future years-
Yes.
-in which revenues are anticipated to grow less.
Yes, yes. We are really counting on this working capital and trying to keep as much money in reserves as possible.
To follow up on Phil's questions about the, the beach and pier funds, you mentioned there is a possibility of parking rate increases. This is something we've already sought and just need permission from the Coastal Commission?
We, there is, where's, do you want to talk about? I mean, I can talk about this, but Ed might be the better person to talk about this.
Good morning, Mayor Gleam, council members, Ed from Department of Transportation. In response to Jesse's question, we are now probably in our third or fourth round of communication with the Coastal Commission regarding the parking rate increase that we had proposed back in 2019. Once we get that permission, we're anticipating a community process where we would go out and, and request the community to give us feedback on a series of, of parking rate increases, not just for the pier and the beach lots, but for our structures and meters as well.
So hopefully, you're close with the Coastal Commission, and then there'll be a community process.
Yes, as a matter of fact, I- Yes. As a matter of fact, I think, I'm hoping, our final letter went out on Thursday to the Coastal Commission responding to their final request for information, and staff met with Coastal Commission staff last Monday to make sure that we were responding appropriately. So I'm confident that we're there. Once we get that approval from them, then we'll move the process forward very expeditiously.
Thank you. And Gigi, the report mentions that those funds are not currently factored in because of the uncertainty.
That's right.
But perhaps they will arrive if we are lucky.
We hope so. And as Ed said, there needs to be a community process.
And the reserves, I think the report says that we're currently around 13% of operating, of our operating budget?
So this year, in our current year budget, we are setting aside enough reserves to get us to 13%. Yes.
Got it. Because we are still emerging from a sort of unprecedented emergency, of course, there could be more over this fiscal period, but, and I'm talking about the five years that are mapped out here, what would be the cost savings of maintaining our reserves at, say, 13% over the period?
I think Oscar would have to do a quick analysis.
Okay. My last question, and this might be more for the city manager. Measure HMP was mentioned in the report, which passed, but obviously, there's no system in place to actually generate revenues in that regards. Is that something that is underway to bring a forward proposal to council, or is that something that council needs to direct?
No, councils already give direction to develop land use policy to allow retail cannabis. So our community development department, I'm going to say somewhere between June and July of this year, will have a study session for council to get specific direction as to where you would want us to locate retail cannabis operations. And then, once we get through that study session, we'll be able to bring the formal ordinance and policy changes so that that can start to move forward.
So, well, that's a little bit down the road as well. That's another potential source of revenue we can think about.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to take a turn very briefly here. I do want to pick up a little bit, talking about after-school programs, because I'm not sure everyone in the room, you know, may understand. We used to have Playground Access, but just, and maybe just the city manager can confirm this. One of the reasons we don't operate it in its current form was sadly, after the Euler problem with child abuse came up, we had a citywide audit of all our youth programs. And one of the things that they focused on was that the structure of Playground Access that we were using at the time, which relied on very minimal staffing, was not sustainable if we wanted to avoid further abuse issues in the future. Is that correct?
Actually, Danielle, do you want to comment on that, or the city attorney's office, who may be closer to what produced as a result of that?
The reason I'm asking is because I think people want to know, why did we stop the program, and then why is it more expensive than it was in the past to get going? And the reason is because we're requiring a higher level of staffing in order to avoid the potential for abuse. Is that correct?
Yes. The staffing ratios that are now proposed throughout our youth programs would not be something we could afford to do in a Playground Access program.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make that clear, because it's a little bit of ancient history, but I think it's important for people to understand. The other issue is, Phil talked about staff ratios, and I'm not really sure who the right person is. But, you know, we always hear a lot from the community that we have too many staff. But what we also have in this community are things that no other cities have. Beverly Hills doesn't have a beach. They don't have a pier. They don't have an airport. And so, I'm wondering if, you know, and I want to not say, well, we should just go back to the way things were, because we always should be moving forward and rethinking, every year when we do our budget, rethinking what's optimal staffing in each and every department. But I think, you know, can we confirm that one of the reasons that our staffing looks different than other cities is because we are doing things that other cities don't have to do? We manage assets that other cities don't have. You know, for example, we're spending a lot of money to plan what we're going to do when we close the airport. There's no other city in California that's having to spend that kind of money. Would that be a fair statement?
Well, you know, as I've been visiting various neighborhood organizations, I get asked the question about staffing. And I think it's important for us to think about who we are from a residential perspective, right? 93,000 residents. But then to also think about, I think, as you're sort of going down, which is, what do we become during the day and the night? And we know that we have a substantial influx of folks that come into our community to recreate. We have a substantial number of folks that come in here for tourism. And, you know, even though our office and technology sectors continue to be working from a hybrid and remote posture, we still do have a significant number of people that come in during the daytime to work. And so, as a result of that, our staffing levels need to be responsive to that so we can continue to be that preeminent place where people want to recreate, where people want to come for tourism, as well as to address our resident needs. So when we talk about staffing, we have to think about it through that lens to understand that may demand a higher level of staffing than what otherwise be expected from a community of similar size but doesn't have those other pressures or demands to me.
And actually, David, let me follow up on that, because you mentioned tourism. You know, I think one of the issues is that people don't understand what significant portion of our revenues come from our tourism industry. At least, they didn't before COVID. And then, when we saw a tourism crater during COVID, we really realized that that is a significant portion of our revenues. And so, maybe Ms. Decavola, Gigi, I'm sorry, old habits die hard. Gigi, if you can address, I mean, I'm not asking for specific numbers, but the fact that tourism represents such a significant portion of the revenues on which we rely to provide services to our residents and our businesses.
Yeah. So when you look at our hotel tax, our sales tax, that is very much driven by the retail industry that our tourists often come to, our parking, before the pandemic, it was about 40% of our general fund revenue.
So if we don't take care of the tourism industry, then it's going to be really hard to provide services to the people who live here and work here. Would that be fair?
Absolutely.
All right. You can stay up there, because I actually have a couple more questions for you. Sorry. You stand up there. So we're talking about reserves, and I know that there's been some discussion in the community, because you look at those reserves numbers, and they look pretty big. And it's like, well, could we just take a little bit out of those reserves and do some more stuff? Can you just explain for folks, we are still, despite some of those striking graphs that you put up, maintaining a high bond rating, and what effect on the city's ability to provide services in the future that high bond rating has, and how the reserves fit into maintaining that high bond rating?
Because we've actually had our AAA rating reaffirmed, even after the pandemic and the dramatic cuts that we've made, and the fact that we use reserves. But that was because the rating agencies, can you still hear me?
Yeah.
I don't know which one. Oh, okay. Is that better?
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
All I hear is the ring. The rating agencies appreciate a city that's going to be nimble. If we maintain strong reserves, and the rating agencies, so Fitch, Moody's, Standard &amp; Poor's is seeing the work that we're doing to manage our reserves, that means that when we go out to bond for any kind of infrastructure, any kind of amenities that we're looking at, we get a lower interest rate, so a lower borrowing cost on our bonds. And that means that, you know, the way that we pay for our bonds, if it's not a tax bond that goes out to the residents or the property owners in Santa Monica, if it is a bond, like many of the bonds that we do here, most of the bonds that we do here, it means that it comes out of revenues. So if you have a higher borrowing cost on your financing, on your bonds, that means that something is going to not be done in the city in order to pay for that additional interest.
So actually, it's a benefit to keep that AAA bond rating and keep those interest rate obligations down, right?
It saves us money.
All right, great. Thank you. I think that's all I have for you. Two questions, one for Susan, and again, this maybe goes to the staffing ratios. You mentioned that currently we're at about 88% of our 2019 staffing levels. And I understand that's a good metric, because 2019 was our last full year pre-COVID. But I'm wondering if you, and maybe someone else needs to do this as well, can address the fact that the world's changed over COVID, and that actually demands for services or our legal obligations, vis-à-vis state law or federal law, you know, how those have changed. Because my sense is that while we might want to use 2019 staffing levels as a convenient metric, the fact of the matter is that our obligation to do certain things has actually increased. For example, in our RRR department, we now have to have a complete and other set of trucks on the road collecting organics. We have to be able to make bins available to all of our residents and businesses so they can collect organics. That was something we weren't doing in 2019, but something that we now have to do in 2023. So I'm wondering if you can just, and again, I'm not looking for statistics, but just address the fact that 2019 is a convenient starting point, but the world's changed, and actually, the demands, I think, you know, and some of what we're required to do has increased.
Yeah, I think the R3 example is a really good one, and that is included in the current rate study that, you know, is going through a community process right now. By no means was meaning to suggest that we are taking a cookie-cutter approach at our restorations. We are looking where community need is and what resources we have available so that we can align those most effectively and maximize service restorations where the need is. Another example that was brought up earlier is the staffing ratio in our youth programs. So we have staff, for example, that literally cannot take bathroom breaks, because we don't have, used to. We've now right-sized the program, which has required us to reduce services. And we have a tremendous waitlist for our youth programs because we have aligned staffing to the ratios for youth programming. So that's an additional staffing demand. Again, services equal people. People need to be hired so that we can provide these services, and we're looking to provide these services and restore staffing where the greatest need is. And so, when we're looking at restoring youth programs, it's not just going back to whatever X, Y, and Z level. It's looking at the current needs, current requirements to make sure those programs are safe, that, you know, staff capacity is sufficient so that people get breaks, and we're keeping morale up. So we're looking at across services throughout the organization in that way.
Thank you, Susan. I appreciate that. And actually, I think this last question might be for our city attorney, Mr. Sloan. I don't want him to feel left out of the proceedings here. So one of the first slides that Gigi put up showed that thus far, we've spent $107.3 million settling the tremendous tragedies caused by the Eric Euler abuse cases. And that was for roughly, I think, about 100 cases or so. I don't want to reveal anything disgusting closed session, but we still have outstanding liabilities. Can you tell us how many additional cases we need to address in the coming year or in the future?
We have 131 pending claims in addition to what we've already settled.
So without, again, we know, we have some idea of how significant that's going to be.
It will be very significant.
All right. Those are all the questions I have. Apparently, Phil has more questions.
I have three, hopefully, quick questions. Gigi, I know, I remember in the olden days, the city used to be able to say, here's our number one generator of sales tax revenue, number two, number three, number four, number five. What would you say our top five are now? I know it used to be autos, medical, tourism, et cetera. Where are we now in order?
Oh, you mean within sales tax?
Yeah. What generates, what are the five top generators to us in terms of categories?
I can't tell you offhand.
I think cars is number one.
Yes.
Autos, cars is still number one.
But after that, I don't, I'm not, I couldn't tell you. I could tell you that, too. Yeah.
Let me know when you get a chance.
I will.
Okay. Number two, you know, I brought up staffing ratios a couple of minutes ago. And I think maybe we should be parsing that more, right? Because enterprise funds, like RRR, pays for their own staff through revenues. Water Department pays for their own staff through revenues. And maybe what we should be saying about staffing is, and maybe I'm totally just crazy, but, well, I am, but where are we in terms of, could we adjust what we say about per capita to talk about our general fund staffing versus enterprise funds? Does that make any sense?
I think you still come up to the issue that Dave was talking about with the fact that, you know, our daytime population is very different from our resident population. And that's general service.
And I fully realize that, you know, we've talked about this with SMPD before.
That's right.
There never, maybe at 4:00 in the morning, there are 93,000 people in the city. But every other moment, we could be 250,000, 300,000 on a day. And our police department, fire department have to be able to balance those needs, because otherwise, we'd be completely understaffed. So I understand that. I just didn't know if you said Big Blue Bus has the single biggest enterprise fund, right, amount of staff?
Right.
And if you parse that out and say it separately, it reduces the amount.
Yeah, it definitely gets closer. But, you know, I've done a lot of analyses of different cities, because we get this question asked a lot. Even when you're looking at general services, they're different. Everyone is different. The number, you know, the number of libraries people have, the, just, even if you have a lot of different enterprises, police and fire still, you know, deals with the beach and deals with a lot of different things that other cities don't have.
Yeah. And as Gleam said, we do services that some cities may do in combination with others, but very few have the level of staffing liability we have every single day because of the influx of workers and the influx of tourists.
And because we're next to one of the biggest cities in the world.
Yeah. We're not, wait, we're not isolated on our own? Okay.
Phil, just to real quick, answer your question about sales tax. So I just pulled up our latest report. So the number one sales tax generating industry is autos and transportation. The second one probably is, and I want to make sure I got the order right, but the second one is restaurant and hotels, which is probably not a shocker. Where I wasn't sure where this fit in, which will sound a little bit arcane, but the third highest is our county and state pools. So that's what we get allocated to us from the state. And then, general consumer goods is fourth, and that's been a sector that's had some issues, because we've had changes in how companies that are within Santa Monica allocate their sales tax. So that's actually been flattening out or coming down. And then, business and industry would be the fifth.
Okay. Thank you. So hospitals aren't, I would have thought medical was really high.
They're probably nestled within business and industry.
Six or seven, okay.
Well, also, medical isn't taxed. Medical devices, et cetera, are not taxed.
You're absolutely correct. And the last question I have, and I promise this is the last, is the community has talked quite a bit about restoring essential library services. And there may be some argument today, has the world changes, the nation changes, as to what is essential versus the services that we've enjoyed in the past in Santa Monica. But what is the, I believe, and I don't have it in front of me, sorry, David, but what is our amount of restoration to our libraries for next year? Are we able to increase our funding?
I think you're jumping the shark a little bit.
I know that.
So we'll be-
I jumped the shark a long time ago.
We'll be talking about that in a little bit.
That's coming up?
Yeah. And part of what is included in the forecast is, what Gigi referred to, was maintaining the expansion the council gave us one-time resources for last fall. So that is in the budget. And so, we will talk later this afternoon about additional restorations-
Thank you.
-for discussion.
And I just want to make sure we're discussing them as a whole package as opposed to isolate it. So that's why I'd rather wait until we get the full presentation this afternoon. And seeing no other flags, Ray, oh, Oscar.
Quick questions. Gigi, if you can answer these questions. What is the general fund revenue projection through fiscal year 2028, and having that correspond to the general fund forecast update on page six of the staff report? on page six of the staff report? Looking at, yeah, the rev.
I'm going to need to pull up some documents.
Do you want to pull up the slide? Because you had the revenues. Yeah, are up on that one slide.
Absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, I was, I was trying to understand the, the revenue projection through 2028 compared to the general fund forecast update. That's here on page six.
So that right there is the general fund revenue projection?
So, yeah, we're the blue line. So we're going to be at $503.9 million. And the general fund at that point is about $1.5 million. I'm sorry, the expenditures are about $1.5 million more. So expenditures are 505.4.
Okay, great. How much of the revenue, if any, is from one-time state and federal programs? And, and do we know what the termination date is of any of those funds?
No, this is, this is ongoing revenue that we have.
Okay. And the only other question that I had is, in terms of, and this is probably for our city attorney, the, the, in terms of the liabilities, well, actually, there's two questions that I have. One is in regards to the settlement cases regarding the child abuse cases. There was, there's some payment made, some payments are being made by our insurance. Are those, are those included in the forecast?
I don't believe that those are forecasted yet. There are pending claims against insurance companies that will be a couple of years out to be resolved. It's too early to predict that.
Okay, so, yeah, we can't predict that now. And in terms of the, the other liability that was mentioned was the, the voting rights case that, that is pending to be heard in the California Supreme Court. That, that case right there has costed the city a significant amount of money already. Do we, do we know how much more in terms of percentage it would cost the city? Like in terms of, if we've already paid, let's say, 85% of what the total cost is going to be? I, I mean, I'm trying to understand sort of how much more money do you think it would cost us? How much liability do you think that, that, that case would cost us?
I do want to be a little careful because obviously fees are subject to attorney-client privilege. So I think you can answer that generally, Doug.
Right, right. So we are, we are pretty much paid up to finish the case. We just got notice recently this week that it's set to be heard in the California Supreme Court in the next few months. The contingent liability is that if the, we get an adverse result of paying out fees to the other side.
And, and do we, we have an estimate about how much that would be?
I, I would have to wait and see a fee application. I don't know, but it would be significant.
Okay, thank you.
All right, seeing no other hands waved, flags waved, clearing of throat. We are, I am proud to say, exactly on time. It is 11:51. We are going to break for lunch from noon to 12:30, and we will be back promptly at 12:30 to talk about priority setting. So thank you all again.
And for council, council, Susan or Christopher can let you know where lunch will be, where lunch is for you. Christopher, Susan, I'm not sure where it is.
Wait, why? Because he, like, is it?
The sugary, sugary, from the service.
Wait, there's no, it's Diet Coke, it's Aspartame. It's probably going to be cancer or any of the other things.
Denise, are people coming in? Okay. Well, I don't see any public, but, but public comment's over, so that doesn't surprise me. All right, but I'm missing some council members, too. Everybody wants to get out, but nobody wants to be on time. Needing to order. I think that's the only way to get people back in here. All right, can people take their seats? Because I'm going to begin the program now. All right, folks, we're going to begin now. So I am going to turn the microphone over to David White, or Dave, as he's known today, our city manager, who's going to talk about priority setting and implementation.
Great, and welcome back. And I have control of something here. So we'll see how I do.
Only an illusion.
We just had it announced, and so our illustrious Jing had her baby, which I actually saw a photo of. Yeah, so if there's a photo to be shared, which I know there is, we can definitely pass it around. All right, well, the baby's out, so. Hopefully that gets us one day sooner that Jing will be with us. She's amazing. All right, we're going to talk about priorities. We're going to get really serious now, so let's go into it. So council priorities serve, from our perspective, to set up this conversation, three main priorities. They're an important component of our budgeting process, informing recommendations on new investments and focusing staff efforts and projects, particularly in this environment and constrained resources. Two, they inform staff on what issues are most important to council and serve as a lens through which to analyze projects and recommendations. And three, they serve as an important tool through which to communicate information on work that is most important to the community. And as we work our way through this discussion and the discussion around resources, I think you'll quickly see how these priorities were a useful tool for us in developing the recommendations on how to, how to deploy new resources and existing resources. In March 2021, following the restructuring of city operations and one year into the pandemic, the council adopted three priorities. Addressing homelessness, clean and safe Santa Monica, and equitable and inclusive economic opportunity and recovery. And that was to inform, at that time, the biennial 2123 budget. And they are presented here in greater alignment for today's needs. Over the past two years, we've made significant progress in each of these priority areas. But certainly, as we all know, there's much more work to be done. For us, for you today, we recommend that we retain these three priorities. And we will discuss in a bit proposals for how we can continue to further them. So let's start off with addressing homelessness. For sure, we've got the Moss-Adams study. We know Measure CS was adopted, Measure GS. We know we have a lot to do. I can also strongly attest that last year was overwhelmingly successful for us. We conducted our point-in-time count after a COVID hiatus and experienced an 11% decrease in people experiencing homelessness at that time. We were able to house 140 people experiencing homelessness. This year, we completed our point-in-time survey once again. And over the course of last year, it was a tremendous amount of work and effort from our staff and our organization. But we're able to support Moss-Adams in bringing forward their homelessness study, which we certainly will be using over time to guide our work. And as you'll see from our proposals, we've certainly have used that as a filter and a lens in terms of how we want to deploy resources. We've continued our comprehensive outreach efforts, and we'll talk more about where we see opportunities to expand. Working in partnership with Tracy, who's still here, we certainly helped to secure much rental assistance for our community, about $40 million, and set aside $750,000 for our community members living in rent-controlled units. And we continue to distribute over $8 million in grants to over 19 local organizations. And again, right with the overwhelming adoption of Measure CS and Measure GS, I think it's very clear to all of us and working with all of you that addressing homeless needs to continue to be a priority on our, on our, for our organization. For clean and safe Santa Monica, last year was a tremendous year for us. It started off in the beginning of the year. We heard council's direction to focus energy and intention on the pier. And that resulted in the establishment of the Pier Vending Task Force, which has now evolved into the Directed Action Response Team that is doing tremendous work, not only on the pier, but in the beach, in the downtown, and supporting operations throughout the city. Through our police department and their leadership, we made a tremendous number of pivots. We deployed new technologies. You probably have heard about our Drone as a First Responder program that is not only gaining local and regional attention, but I think now I can say it's getting national attention as well. And our police chief, working with his command staff and the union, were able to redeploy our current resources to be more present and proactive in our downtown and surrounding areas. So kudos and thank you for all of your work. In our fire department, we brought forward an Arcan Leap Behind program. And this is really, really important to us. As we all know, fentanyl is a tremendous issue in our community. It's a tremendous issue in the region as well and throughout the country. And so I'm really happy in terms of what we've been able to do to move forward in addressing that issue. And then lastly, huge kudos and thanks to our public works department. You know, through their hard work, day in and day out, and we all see them early in the morning and throughout the day, we have tremendous public spaces. Equitable economic recovery, there's no doubt, continuing to support this community as we recover is absolutely important. We're seeing a lot of tremendous signs of recovery throughout our city. The articles that we put, we put out as an organization and what is being discussed in local media really shows that with the reinvestments in our hotels, there's tremendous opportunity. The dining scene on Main Street has now clearly become the place to be. Montana is continuing to bring in new and unique retail. And I'm really excited with what Santa Monica Place has brought on the horizon with Arte Museum and Din Tai Fung. We're really looking forward to seeing the spillover and the positive impacts of all that tremendous activity. But certainly, right, there's a lot more work to do in that regard as well. Our economy continues to recover, and we're continuing to have to figure out how we're going to support our business community as our daytime population has shrunk somewhat due to office workers continuing to work remotely. So those are the three priorities that were in existence for the past couple of years. And we certainly want to continue to use those. We've heard very clearly from all of you, listening to, looking at 16 items, mining everything through the survey work that we've done, that these three priorities should continue. And I just went through all those slides, amazing. So now what I want to turn to is a proposal in front of you today to expand the priorities. So, and we did this in a very focused manner to really reflect where we are today as an organization, listening very closely to all seven of you. And certainly, as I mentioned before, paying very close attention to the feedback we've received through community engagement. So first and foremost, I want to start off with racial equity and social diversity. In the area of racial equity and social diversity, council's already taken some great action, and I really appreciate your leadership on this issue and your support. So in last year's budget, I believe it was in the late winter, early springtime, you authorized resources so we could form a diversity, equity, and inclusion office in the city manager's office. And the council has adopted a racial equity statement. And then also last year, we took some great action around adopting a statement against hate and formally apologizing to the city's African-American residents and their descendants for harms caused by redlining and other systemic inequities, among others. In April 2023, just to give you a heads up of what's on the horizon, our diversity, equity, and inclusion team will provide council with an update on our work, including data on the makeup of the city workforce, which is responsive to a 16 item from last year, efforts to engage the community on DEI issues, and work to further develop the city's workforce's understanding of DEI principles. And then the second one we want to bring forward has to do with sustainable and connected community. And this is important for a number of different reasons. Obviously, climate change is an urgent crisis, and we want to continue to be on the forefront of addressing this crisis. In addition to that, it's really critical and underpins, and underpins our economic recovery because so many companies today are looking to align themselves with communities that reflect their values. And certainly, sustainability is an important value that many corporations are using in making location decisions. For sustainable and connected community, our council has adopted aggressive goals to support making Santa Monica sustainable and resilient, including the Climate Action Plan, Zero Waste by 2030, water self-sufficiency, reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and the Electric Vehicle Master Plan. Last year in 2022, Santa Monica was certified as a LEED Platinum City, demonstrating leadership and accountability in improving living standards, ensuring everyone has access to healthy, green, and high-performing places to live, work, and play. And how I think this is also particularly helpful and useful is it sets the tone and foundation for the community. So yesterday, I had the privilege of being able to attend the ribbon cutting for a new affordable housing project on 14th Street. So what was really exciting about that was not only it was 100% affordable housing, it was an all-electric building, which is setting the tone for this transition that is on the horizon. And it was a LEED Platinum certified building. So certainly, our work, right, sets a tone and foundation for the community. And it's wonderful to see our community partners embrace these ambitious goals. Staff presented an overview of the city's sustainability efforts to council at the February 14 meeting. And we will report on our progress on our sustainability goals in just a few days and make recommended updates to the city's Sustainable City Plan at the meeting this coming Tuesday. So right now, we want to focus on our council priorities. And the goal of this part of the agenda is to consider and approve the proposed organizational priorities as outlined up there on the screen. One point I do want to make, just to be completely transparent, we have evolved the priority around economic recovery. And we have expanded it importantly to include community and cultural amenities. And we did so with intention for all of you and for the community because along with sustainability, what is really important driver, particularly when I'm speaking with our partners at Santa Monica Travel and Tourism, I understand profoundly how important the arts are to our community's restoration and economic recovery. So we wanted to be sure that it was clearly articulated in our priorities as we move forward as an organization. So Mayor, I can turn it back to you to help facilitate this discussion.
Thank you, Dave. I really appreciate that. Let's start out, do people have any questions about the presentation? And if we don't have questions, we can dive right into comments. So any questions? Carolyn?
Okay, I guess I have some questions on the, these are, we're just talking about the priorities right now, right?
Yes.
So just back to the underlying staff report on how we arrived at these priorities. It sounds like we, it's based on council direction as well as some sort of survey of the Santa Monica residents? Who conducted that survey? Was it the city?
The city conducted insofar as we paid for the survey, but it was conducted by a third-party firm. And it was done, I don't remember if they polled, I think, 500 to 700 residents, all done through the phone, I believe. And it was done last year in the, I want to say, spring of 2022. And it was used really importantly to help us determine what kind of tax measures would go on the ballot. So it helped frame priorities. And I think that's about the best way to describe it.
Okay, great. Because I love database decisions. So based, following up on database decisions, have we considered setting forward some metrics with respect to potential expanded priorities to measure how we are doing and actually achieving these? Because I think it's one thing to say that we're committed to this, and David's heard me say this because I've said it to him privately. I think you could almost fit anything under these five categories, as far as I'm concerned. A sustainable community is a healthy community. It's the indicators of how we're doing. It's all of the issues related, we talked about, related to child welfare and educational opportunity, it's mental health, like. So when we talk in economic recovery, I mean, again, very broad, how are we actually setting forward some sort of like impact metrics to show, again, what's within our span of control, how we're impacting these priorities in the community? Because I think if everything's a priority, nothing's a priority. Is it possible that we could think about metrics?
I think it is possible to think about metrics. And I think there are a couple of different ways we will be looking to metrics. So I know as part of our upcoming budget preparation, our finance department will be working to incorporate metrics into our budgeting process. It's a fundamental necessity and requirement. And then secondly, the area where I would love to explore with the entire council is as the Sustainability City Plan comes up before you next Tuesday. comes up before you next Tuesday, that is a document that I am just learning about over time. And I think that provides also a tremendous foundation for us to look to, what are the types of things that we want to use as an organization? The reality is, and you know this, and I'm learning about this as well, is that we used to have a tremendous number of staff that were really focused and dedicated to the area performance management and metric development. Those staff were lost in the last round of restructuring. So there is a moment in time where we need to rebuild that work and figure out how we can do that within the resources we have.
Yeah, absolutely. And if folks aren't aware, data.sustainablesm.org, if you haven't looked at it, I think there are some great points on there. I think for me, the question is how are we communicating to the public that we are actually making progress? Because we are making decisions today about our budget as a statement of our values. And if we're saying that we're making these decisions based on our priorities, I want to know that we're investing, just like any investment that you make, that there's some sort of return on the investment that you're making in these areas. So thanks. Appreciate it.
All right, Lana.
Too early in the conversation, but dovetailing on what Carolyn said as far as these being very broad. And I think we could fit in their youth programming, before and after-school programming, like we heard many of our speakers discuss. But I do feel like it needs to be prioritized and added to this list. I don't know if we're at that point of making that suggestion. That's not really a question, more something I'm putting forward in a comment, unless there is some discussion that needs to be had around whether all of the things that we're talking about, Virginia Avenue Park Project, after-school access on campus at our schools for Playground Club, and all the various programs that are funded or ran by city personnel, how we can make sure that that is outlined as a bullet point up there and a priority.
So I think one of the things we can do to be responsive is we can look within the body of the priorities. I mean, fundamentally, there are a couple of different ways. We could add a new priority. But I think what might be also a possibility is we could use one of our existing priorities to bring in the concept of youth. And I think there's a couple of different areas where it fits, particularly around where we have cultivate economic recovery and expand community and cultural amenities. We maybe could spotlight within that priority something around youth. Because we talk about cultivating economic opportunity and recovery and investing community and cultural members for all community members. And maybe we can come up with something to help build that out for youth. I don't quite have the exact wording yet, so.
First question, David. We haven't achieved our council priorities from 2020 yet. So we're not yet, and I'm going to change the wording a little bit, we're not yet at a safe and clean Santa Monica. We're making progress, but we're not there yet. And we've made some progress in addressing homelessness, but certainly not enough. And so my question is, is adding more priorities dilute our focus on existing priorities? Because I think residents are, as much as they can be, are focused on addressing homelessness and having a safe Santa Monica that's also clean. Economic recovery was obviously the third focus. But my question is, by adding two more, are we going to dilute our focus?
I really appreciate that question, so thank you. And as we thought about it and developed these priorities, that was definitely something that we were very focused on and concerned about. And I think within the context of both racial equity and social diversity, and then also sustainability, I think there's two lenses by which they're very powerful for us and will not dilute any of our work whatsoever. So I think in the context of racial equity and social diversity, right, we want that as a priority for all of us because, two reasons. We want to use that as a framework by which we're making decisions within the organization. So when it comes to focusing on our hiring practices, right, we want to do everything we can to build the most diverse workforce for so many important reasons. When we talk about hiring, right, we want to make sure that this is a core value in how we develop programs for the council to consider and a core value in terms of how we make decisions, operational decisions within the organization. But as important as that, is we want it to guide our work within the community on a day-to-day basis. So it doesn't, from my perspective, dilute whatsoever our work. It helps to inform and create a lens by which we do our work. I would offer the same thing in the context of sustainability. So much of our purchasing behavior, so much of our work, is focused on doing things in the most sustainable manner possible. So it doesn't take away from what we do, but it helps to make sure that what we do is in sync with our values.
So you might say, if I can paraphrase that, you might say that the last two, to an extent, or at least number four on that list, is very much our moral framework and our moral obligations to the community. And that satisfies that question. I just want to make sure that we're not diluting our priorities, our street-side, everyday priorities of addressing homelessness, trying to alleviate that situation, which also is a moral framework, and making sure that both our residents, visitors, homeless people, everyone have a safe Santa Monica that's also clean Santa Monica. So thank you. I only had one.
Lana.
I know we're going to dig into this in the next section as to how we reallocate. But oftentimes, you know, we're, we have to grapple with, well, if you want to put your priorities here or more focus in this area, where does it take away from? So comment question, just as we're looking at these priorities, it would be nice to be able to really just directly see, like, I know you can't say exactly, but the level of staffing, how that's impacted. So is it boots on the ground? Is it leadership from an administrative level that's necessary to accomplish those priorities? Because I think that gives us a clear understanding as to when we're looking at, where do we have to take away from to put more focus in another area? How that's directly going to tie in and impact the other departments and other priorities?
So I'm hoping when we get to some of the resource allocation discussions, that it's helpful and informing where we think resources are needed to help with these priorities. And then I think if the question is how do our department work aligned with some of these, to inform that with staffing and stuff, we can give more thought to that in terms of how we prepare the budget to see if I can, we can come up with data to address that question.
Yeah, just as an example, if there's, you know, X amount of boots on the ground, we keep calling it, needs to fulfill, say, public works, you know. And then as we shift and we look at some of these other priorities that we're adding in with youth services, I mean, some of these departments, there's overlap where there's need. But it would be nice to really tie it to physical bodies that are needed. And in that, if we're talking about leadership, you know, how that impacts, like, the top-down model of what, how things actually get done, where residents actually feel and see the fruits of our labor and our priorities being accomplished.
Okay, Phil.
A lot of speakers this morning indeed, as Councilmember Negretti mentioned, talked about our needs for youth as a vulnerable population and to make sure we're prioritizing our young. I also feel that simultaneously, you know, we need to make sure if we're going to prioritize the programs for our young, we also need to prioritize programs for our seniors because they're another program, another segment of the community that many times is neglected. So almost simultaneously, as you talk about helping our youth, you need to also talk about what can we do to help that other vulnerable population, that's many of our seniors. And the question there is, I realize, I realize that. It was coming out as a comment. David, the question is, if we, what else can we do to make sure that our seniors are simultaneously assisted as well as our youth and teens? Thank you.
Well, I'm still trying to play with in my head how to work with one of the priorities to include both of those populations.
Or maybe it just needs to be a subset that doesn't need to be included, but just needs to be stated somewhere that we are concerned about the needs of our young in our city and that we are also concerned about the needs of our elderly population. And I think, you know, if we are a city that prides itself on helping our residents from the cradle to the grave, that we not neglect a segment of that population.
I'm going to let the city manager. All right, Oscar.
Yes, I think it's also, it's really important for us to, once we, once we agree on this, to do, I think, what Councilwoman Terosis has talked about in terms of setting metrics. I think, and I think Councilmember Brock also said, well, we haven't achieved all our goals, you know. And I think it'd be good for us to structure ourselves in a way where we can evaluate our priorities, right? Like, right now, it'd be great to say, this is what we agreed last time, and this is how we're doing, sort of, in these areas. And so having, having those, those metrics and that evaluation sort of mechanism integrated within all of this, I think is going to be very important as we move forward. Everything I've heard from the community today and what we've seen in terms of all the public comments in the past around public safety, homelessness, which are the two top priorities in the city still. And the connection, I think, is around prevention, intervention, and enforcement working simultaneously. You know, so prevention, right? So we look at early childhood development. We talked about, you know, parents needing, you know, access to affordable childcare, you know, which is so important, especially for single moms and single, you know, dads who are trying to, you know, do a lot and keep their family moving forward. The services for youth, very important, you know, after-school programs. And our youth are struggling. There's been a lot of research done and reports that I've read about how young people have fallen behind, you know, because of COVID and the impact of distance learning and not just academically, but also around social, emotional development. So really important that we tap into that with culturally relevant services, right? So I see the word "cultural amenities" up there, but having culturally relevant services that take into account sort of issues of class and race, I think is really important. You know, we, one of our speakers talked about, you know, even like the college-going rate and how certain programs, you know, are geared towards sort of, you know, more middle-class, upper-middle-class students in our community, not so much for lower-income students. So making sure that those services and that programming is very relevant. What works for one young person, let's say at the Boys and Girls Club, you know, might not work for another person, another young person, you know, who has other needs or is not attracted to the type of programming offered in one program. So I think it's real important for us to look at, you know, the prevention-intervention approach and enforcement working simultaneously when we, when we discuss sort of these priorities around, especially around clean and safe Santa Monica. The other items that I wanted to, I want, around the issue of racial equity and social diversity, I think it's real important that we do make this as a council priority. But to change the word, or maybe just add racial justice, comma, equity and social diversity. Because racial equity, equity to me is, you know, when we talk about it, is it's more about looking at where the needs are greatest and putting, you know, resources where the need is greatest. Racial justice is different. Racial justice encompasses looking at historic wrongs, looking at remedying, you know, some of the, some of our past policies, you know, that have either led to segregation or marginalization. And it's real important for us to talk about that if we're going to be real about it. You know, a lot of times, people like to throw all these beautiful words of diversity, equity, and inclusion, but then ultimately, our hiring practices don't match, you know, with our words, or our procurement. You know, you look at, for example, who the city does business with now. Is there racial equity in our procurement practices here in our city? And I know that we've been talking about that, and there's plans to, you know, address that. But it'd be really important for us to add justice before equity. Because I think you can't even get to equity unless you have justice first. The other, the topics around climate change, sustainability, our young people, especially at Santa Monica High School, you know, some of the strongest leadership in our youth community, especially at the high schools, coming from young people advocating for, you know, against climate change and around environmental and sustainability issues. I think we also need to address environmental justice. You know, we need to talk about some of the impacts, for example, of the freeway, some of the, some of the polluting entities in our community, infrastructure, decisions that have been made, you know, by policymakers in the past, that some residents are paying the price for more so than others. Some, some share the burden greater than others. And usually, it's lower-income people of all races, and then also people of color that, that live in close proximity to these polluting entities. So I think we definitely need to be talking about environmental justice, and we have to get comfortable with talking about that when we talk about environmental issues and sustainability. Everything said about the, going along the lines of like intervention and intervention with library services citywide, I mean, public education, citywide. These are things that we need to be doing. After-school programs, before and after-school programs, citywide. There's young people struggling, not just in the lower-income parts of our city, but young people are struggling throughout our city. It doesn't matter if you live north of Montana or you live in the Pico neighborhood. The impact of COVID, distance learning, all that was, was, was citywide. And so, you know, looking at it from that frame of like, there's some things that we have to do citywide that's good for the entire city, supporting public education, opening libraries, services, restoring library services, I think, all around. And also ensuring that our youth have adequate culturally-relevant programming and services in before-school and after-school, I think, is very smart. It's just good policymaking for us. So I want us, I want to see us do that. And I think that's all that I want to say for now. Thank you very much.
All right. I saw your hand up, Carolyn. Was it for questions or comment? Because we've, it was, we've moved into comment, but I actually have some questions, so.
I do have some questions that feed into my comments. We can just wait, you should go first.
Okay, all right. So I want to build on what a couple of my colleagues has said. And Dave, I'm sort of thinking about it. Phil mentioned, you know, sort of what we're at least now calling racial equity and social diversity, as well as sustainable and connected community. Would it be fair to say that, so addressing homelessness, clean and safe Santa Monica, cultivate economic recovery and expand community and cultural amenities, those are sort of budget activities. That's where we're going to concentrate our spending, if you will. But that, the idea about racial equity and sustainability are not sort of, for lack of a better term, temporary budget priorities, but those are things that sort of infuse this community and will infuse it for the foreseeable future. So I think Phil referred to them as moral goals. I thought of them more as values, that we will infuse virtually everything we do, even if we were to, for example, and sadly, I'm not sure this is going to happen in any of our lifetimes. If we were to eliminate homelessness, we would still want racial equity and sustainability to be part of what we have going forward. So I'm wondering if that's a fair way of looking at it.
It is, although I think the nuance I would draw is that I could foresee opportunities where we want to advance initiatives or projects that are really focused on racial justice, equity, and social diversity that may not necessarily neatly fit into the other items. I don't have a specific as to what that looks like today, and we're going to present the work plan to you in April. But so I just want to throw out that nuance. But I mean, in general, yes. I mean, these are important to establish our values and lay that out there.
Right. And I wasn't suggesting because they're values, we don't spend money on them. I'm just suggesting that maybe they are more a description of what's important to the community. And the other three are more what I think of in the next two years, our economic values. So I do have a couple of questions, and they relate. Can you go back to the slide that's actually got the wording of the racial equity and social diversity and sustainable and connected community? There, perfect. I'm just wondering, because, and you know, maybe this is comment, I don't know, but oh, point of personal privilege, for lack of a better term. So after we say, "The city of Santa Monica acknowledges the effect in generational and institutional racism," is there, I would like to see the word "and discrimination" included there. Because there is some discrimination that is not based on race, whether it's our LGBTQ community, women. To some extent, in my mind, that goes both to youth and seniors. Frequently, youth and seniors, for whatever reason, are discriminated against. So I would just want to include sort of the broader term of discrimination behind racism. The other thing that I would question... The other thing that I would question about is, and its consequences that continue to impact our residents, I would want to, I was just wondering, could we add "and businesses"? We talk a lot about our local businesses, particularly ones that are owned by underrepresented minority people in our community. And we know, for example, that businesses that are often run by people who represent those communities are discriminated against in the financial world, in the opportunity to partake in certain economic programs. So, I'm, I'm just wondering if, if there's any reason for not including that? And then, and this-
Where, where were you with that comment? I'm so, so sorry.
After "consequences that continue to impact our residents and businesses."
Got it.
And, and obviously, this would be subject to council approval, but I'm just trying to throw out some, again, not in the form of questions, but, but I will have a question at the end of this. And then, and, and I'm trying to think about the best way to address the issue, because I agree with Phil, I mean, I certainly, everyone who knows me knows how I ended up on this dais, and that was as an education activist, and particularly as an early childhood education activist. So, I certainly support including our youth and youth programming as things that we want to emphasize, simply because if we're interested in a clean and safe Santa Monica, every study that's ever been done shows that high-quality, accessible, early childhood education programs reduce crime and reduce a lot of other social ills. We know that addressing the challenges that some of our teens face certainly allows us, if we can do it in a programmatic way, diverts them away from the criminal justice system. So, I think those are the sorts of things that, you know, I want to emphasize. But I also agree, as a former member of the Board of Directors, of when it was just Y Senior Services, that we want our seniors to thrive. We want everyone in this community to thrive. And so, I, I am just wondering, would it be consistent with your view of this, if we added a sentence at the end of the racial and, and, and justice and equity and social diversity, however we're going to end up labeling that, that basically a sentence that respects, that reflects our value, that everyone in Santa Monica should have an opportunity to thrive? I just think that at some fundamental level is a statement of where we are in terms of our values as a community, because it's, it's a broad statement, and, and I agree to some extent with Carolyn, that, you know, if we get so broad, or maybe it was Lana, I forget who said it, but, you know, we get so broad, we're not including everything. But I think that really what we're striving for in all of this is the opportunity for people to thrive, whether it's by putting a roof over their head, by making sure that they don't become homeless in the first place, whether it's by making sure they can walk our streets and feel safe, whether they feel that we are a welcoming community, certainly that, that as we come out of the pandemic, that everyone can be included in the economic recovery. So, for me, thriving is kind of the key word here, and I think maybe adding that really, in a sense, brings everyone into that. Because we know racial inequity, we know discrimination, but, but really, the idea is, the reason we want to eliminate those things is so everyone, and again, the previous sentence reflects that, differences in life, you know, differences in life outcomes cannot be predicted by race, class, gender, disability, or other identities. But, so, I'm just wondering if that, you think, would be consistent with that, that idea?
I think so. We can make something work.
Okay. Do we have any other questions? And then, we'll just move into comments. And I am going to turn it over to Carolyn, who was very patient, and let me go first.
Thanks, Gleam. So, in terms of the racial equity and social diversity priority, I think anyone who knows me knows that this is absolutely forefront in my mind for all of the work that we need to do here as a community. And to Oscar's point, I think, I, I would like to see that we are working actively to dismantle institutional racism, and let's be very clear, the, the segregation and racism perpetuated by government, by the, by the decisions that we have made, or our predecessors have, have made as government. So, how are we working to dismantle that institutional racism and throughout our systems? I think when we say that this is a priority for the community, yes, of course, I think there's a lot more work we can all do together as a community. I think we thrive when we build coalitions together. But I also think it's imperative that we look on, in, in our organization as well, because I don't think that this needs to be sprinkled on top. This needs to be baked into the way that we do business as a city. So, I guess, not so much a question, I mean, I was going to pose a question, but now I realize you're going to come back with this work plan, it sounds like? Is that, is that correct, the work plan on how we're going to achieve these priorities?
No. Our DEI, our DEI team will come back in front of you at the April 25th meeting, I think, to present their work plan for you.
So, I guess, to Paolo, you know, how are we working to dismantle our institutional racism in the systems that have been set up by government? How are we addressing that in the work plan? Also, for Lori, if she's still here.
She's not.
She's not, great. Well, I guess also for Paolo to communicate to Lori, sorry. How, how is racial equity going to be integrated and baked in to the way that we recruit folks? To the way that we promote folks within our organization? Through the way we engage with staff? And that we, we, let's be clear, potentially resolve, I don't know what the, the city's dispute resolution process is, if we have a city policy of equity, but how do we resolve disputes among staff, especially when there are power, race and power dynamics at play? I think that I would love to, to see that. And then, how are we looking at how we're writing our job specifications, what our minimum requirements are? How are those inherently inequitable? And how could we potentially reform that process? Because if we have as much as a 20% vacancy rate coming up here, or maybe 20% turnover, sorry if I'm not getting the terms correct, I think that is a wonderful opportunity for us to recruit, retain, and promote the new generation of leadership in this city. So, that's really important to me. I also think I would like to see how we're baking in equity, and, and not just equity, so, just so everyone's clear, it's not a one-size-fits-all approach. It's a, how are we pouring into communities and folks and, and areas of the city that have been under-invested in? And how are we making sure that our outcomes are better? And so, I would like to see, how are we baking in equity into every program that we deploy? How we're designing those programs with an equity framework? Are we going, when, when we get new, new funding and we deploy that funding out in the community, are, are we applying an equity lens to the way that we're distributing that funding in the community? And, and making those resource investments in the community? Again, not a one-size-fits-all approach, period. So, I, I would love to see that addressed in the work plan. And then, when we talk about sustainability, sustainability at, at the state level, and now increasingly at the federal level, has also been framed in the context of how are we creating the new green economy of the future? How are we making sure that we are creating good, quality jobs and economic opportunity for people using sustainable technology, creating sustainable infrastructure that, that really rethinks the way that we deliver services as government, that rethinks the way that we employ people, that rethinks all of our technologies, so that we are doing everything with zero emissions, right? So, I think that speaks a little bit to, how are we creating high-quality jobs? I think there was a mention earlier by one of the public commentators around workforce. And, and we are a huge regional employer here. Of course, as a city, we're an employer, but we have high-quality, high-paying industries that we are bringing into Santa Monica, whether it's tech, whether it's bioscience. How are we working as city government in sustainability to promote industries and jobs and access to opportunity that's sustainable, that furthers our climate goals? So, I think we want to create that high-road economy through sustainability. So, those, those would be my comments for right now. Thank you, Gleam.
Jesse?
There we go. Now that we're in comment period, I'll chime in, but just want to say that, as, as was mentioned, I think these new priorities are important for many reasons. The first of which being that they are central to our identity as a city, and I don't think even when they weren't included among those prior three, that we weren't valuing them and we weren't pursuing them. But I think it's important that they be stated so that the organization is clear, and the staff and others can justify and, and make the priorities that, that I think we all share, but we, they should be explicit. And I think that's important. And when it came to the many comments around support for our youth and families, after, early childhood education, after-school programs, all the things that, that, that make life possible for working families, those are very essential to what I campaigned on and the conversations that I had with people in terms of, again, part of what makes Santa Monica unique. And I'm not sure, I, as, as people mentioned, you can find ways of, of incorporating that within these five, and I'm not sure if we need to add a sixth or not. There, there was one commenter who, who also mentioned something when it came to racial equity and social diversity in our statement, which, who said that we could also perhaps add that we are committed to this work for the well, prove the well-being of people who live, work, learn, play, and do business. That could perhaps further emphasize that way in which our commitment, I mean, one of the things that's most unique about our city are the various financial commitments that we have made over the decades to our schools and to our after-school programs, and I do want to see that reflected. I would also say that a lot of that also does continue to flow from racial equity and social diversity, because our public schools serve a more racially and socio-economically diverse population than our city as a whole. And investment in our public schools is a form of investment in racial equity and social diversity. So, that was just one comment I wanted to add, and I'll leave it at that for now.
All right. Lana?
I just wanted to echo some of the sentiments Jesse just listed out, but also to say that although I do think it does fall in here, I think, as we talk about being, coming back and having benchmarks, there's something about having it clearly stated up there in one of those square triangle things, so that we can really focus on it. Because I do think prioritizing after-school youth programs and access for all youth lends a hand to all the things we just talked about, and Gleam eloquently put it about public safety. I mean, if any of you were at the PAL breakfast the other day, we were informed that most unsupervised youths fall into trouble between the hours of 2:00 and 6:00 p.m. And so, as a PAL kid myself, as a recipient of many programs, you know, across the board, as a latchkey kid with a single mom, I can say that the only reason I'm sitting up here in council is because of those programs and those community leaders that were free to my mom and free to me after school and before school. And so, I just want to really hope, point that out, because I do see that it falls into everything from public safety, homelessness, you know, cultural amenities. But I do think it's so important that we, we really make it very clear, because it doesn't just impact us for the future as our future leaders, but it impacts us today. I mean, as a business shop owner, I can tell you that kids come in and hang out after school, and we kind of provide a safe space, but depending on what your supervision is like, that can also turn into other unsavory things that happen after school, right? So, it impacts crime and, and graffiti. So, I just, I just hope we can find a way to really highlight that in there, because I do think it's not just about after-school programs and sort of the like, you know, yeah, it's in there. It's really about how it impacts every stakeholder. I do think it's a domino effect, and I think we are the ones pushing the first domino up here on the dais.
Phil?
You know, I, I really like how Mayor Davis helped frame my earlier discussion, because I think the values and morals of the people of the city are very important. I'd almost like to see the priorities, though, segued into our first three priorities, and then we could do something that is, that are, look, look at, the racial equity has, almost every one of us has said, from our hiring within the city, as Caroline said, to everything we do, our, reflect our city's values, reflect our city's morals. I, I'm wondering if we can somehow separate those. I just don't want us to lose emphasis on the things that our, our residents are very concerned with on our streets. And while the others are absolutely important, and as I said, youth, and I'm adding senior services in there too, but youth and senior services, helping our children and teens in this community so they don't get lost, it's very easy for them to be lost in this community. And those services are absolutely essential. You know, maybe we create a couple of subtitles within those, but I, I absolutely see our need to make sure, it should be self-evident, that that includes our after-school services, includes preschool services, it includes daycare, it includes making sure our libraries are open, it makes, it includes making sure our playgrounds are open. All those things are, are crucial to the development of our children and to make sure that our seniors are also taken care of. So, I want to come back to that and just reiterate that. I, I'm concerned that the last couple of years, we tried not to have a huge envelope of priorities, because it was hard enough for us even to concentrate successfully on one or two. So, that's why I almost wonder if the others are more value-oriented, which are absolutely crucial to our city, versus just the same level of priority. And I'm not sure. So, I'll leave it at that. But I, I appreciate how Mayor Davis helped frame that for us.
All right. Christine?
So, I just wanted to say that I'm really enjoying the conversations that we're having up here, and how everybody's kind of articulating what I had in my head, but I didn't know how to formulate the words. So, I really don't have a whole lot to add to the conversation, other than I'm in complete agreement with what's already been said. And I appreciate the addition of the racial equity and diversity pillars, as well as the sustainability and connected community, because there's a lot that I feel that we need to do and include among those two additional pillars. And my head is kind of spinning with, with different ideas that we could bring forward, but, you know, in terms of, with, with the, the equity and inclusion and diversity, I do feel that we need to do more for our senior population. So, I'm glad that you brought that up, because it's, I'm always thinking about it, especially as I've been dealing lately with my aging father-in-law, and, who lives in town. And so, there's, there's been a lot of work that we've been having to work with him, and he's, you know, partially blind, and trying to connect with services in the city and elsewhere, and it's been very difficult to navigate, and he's in that window of like, you know, he makes too much for this, but not enough for that. And so, you know, reaching out to all those resources within the community and other, and to other people that have experienced that. And so, I think that having more robust resources and people and things and for our, our aging community would be really wonderful. And so, I, I appreciate a little more emphasis and focus on that. And then, in terms of sustainable and connected communities, again, you know, we are, the more that we can do within that realm, the more that we can do in terms of being able to make our, you know, for example, a perfect example is our meetings, you know, and I know this is kind of a hot topic, but, you know, our meetings more accessible for everybody. You know, we've had this conversation, and I know, ad nauseam, and so, I remember just even before, back, before I was a, a council member, and trying to get to council meetings with, you know, three kids on my own, and, you know, during the time that they were doing all the discussions on the metro, you know, and all the meetings and all the different planning, and just really, I had to get a brush home from work, I had to get a, feed my kids, I had to get a babysitter, and then I had to get here and then wait, you know, to a council meeting so that I can have an opportunity to speak. And so, that was, that's what I had to do in order to be engaged. And so, now we know that with a hybrid system, you know, we can have more engagement, and we also, and so, I really would appreciate more support in that regard, to connect more with our community. And so, I appreciate the work that has been put into this by all city staff, and all the great comments by my colleagues up here. So, thank you.
All right. I don't see any other hands raised, flags waved. I don't see any other hands raised, flags waved, noises being made. So I think the best way to do this is, and I may be reading the room wrong, so someone can jump up and down and throw something at me if I'm wrong.
I was going to suggest Susan has been working furiously on a computer and taking notes, and I think we've got some ideas for edits to share with all of you.
All right.
That we could bring up here. We don't quite have everything, everything encapsulated yet, but I think it's a pretty healthy start.
Blue circle, blue circle, blue circle. The blue circle of death, as I call it at work.
Yeah, go for it.
Did she go back one slide?
Sure. Oh, you did it there. That's great.
I'll work on two, two computers at once, let's see. Okay, so if we're including youth, teens, and seniors under the Cultivate Economic Community and Expanding Cultural Events, I don't know if that captures. Not getting a lot of feedback.
I think it's great on number three.
Yeah, we're the red.
You probably couldn't do yet, getting rid of the word amenities. I saw you got rid of it down below.
Yeah, just, just converting amenities to programs in the title, since that's what you did.
Cultural programs, or cultural, or community and cultural services.
Well, once you all decide, I'll type it in.
Yeah, exactly, folks. Let's try and, I mean, I think if we're going to use programs in the body, it should probably be in the title.
Maybe culturally relevant programs, which addresses class, race, age, all that.
Yeah, although, I mean, I guess, Oscar, my feeling about that is that, and I'm not disagreeing that culturally relevant programming is important, but I think cultural also could include, for example, arts programming and things like that. And I want to be more inclusive than less inclusive on that. So that would be my one caveat on that. Carolyn?
I don't know if this is too like government jargon-y, but at least when I think of like cultural amenities, I think of cultural amenities, not programs. I don't know if Danielle could potentially say if you feel like there's a distinction between the two. Because I think that people come to Santa Monica, we usually say, for our amenities. If I'm wrong about that, please correct me.
So when I'm looking at this and I see cultural amenities, I think about spaces like the Miles Playhouse and Camera Obscure Art Lab that are currently closed and we'd really like to open. So we do want to focus on cultural amenities, but we also have cultural experiences, especially through Art of Recovery, that happen throughout the community with community partners, in open spaces, in business districts. We have temporary art, we have permanent art. So I think amenities to me reminds me of facilities, and I think we're, what I heard was a desire for Santa Monica to be a cultural hub.
So are you suggesting perhaps cultural experiences?
Um, I just came up with, so I'm not sure I'm suggesting a particular word. I think what I heard was a more expansive intent.
Yeah.
For culture.
Maybe, maybe we could do it, you know, not to be too wordy, but hey, I'm a lawyer, right? Cultivate economic recovery and expand community and cultural programming and amenities.
Okay, I'm down.
Does that, does that work? I think that addresses Danielle's concern about amenities being more physical things that attract people, but programs are things that probably serve our residents on a more regular basis. And maybe we just have to be a little wordy there to make it clear. And I think, by the way, also adding cultural programming and amenities would address Oscar's issue, I think, about culturally relevant programming, because I think that would be incorporated within the programming aspect of that. Does that work?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I think definitely looking at cultural amenities and pro, I guess, yeah, when you capture it all with programs and community, for all community members, I think it works. And then, I think the real goal, I mean, the impetus was to include youth, teens, and seniors, and I think we're adding more cultural relevance to it, and I think it's stronger that way.
Mr. Gupta, also known today as Anuj.
Hello, hello. I just wanted to jump in here to offer one potential way to strike this balance. I think amenities and programs in the definition may cover what we're hearing the council look for, and perhaps if we wanted to stay a little more concise in the priority itself, perhaps expand community and cultural offerings, or community and cultural assets as a way to kind of be the umbrella, and then you're fleshing it out. Offerings. And that gets to both programs, which are more resident-focused perhaps, and amenities, which are more visitor-focused.
Yeah, it's got to fit in the little blue thing, right?
Can always mess with the font size.
But we're putting, right, but that's only in the title, and it's more broken out.
There we go. Maybe I have to check out of it.
Yeah.
Should change. It's going to change. It's not changing.
Oh, and it fits. All right, are we?
Are we okay with the wording in it?
Are we good on that? So, so why don't we do this? So these are the three priorities that staff has offered up, you know, and again, not to put too fine a point on it, Dave, but as sort of our budgetary priorities. I move that we approve these three budgetary priorities. We'll get to the other two in a moment, but let's.
Second.
Focus on this. All those in favor? I don't think we need a roll call vote, since there's no money involved. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. We unanimously have approved those three council priorities. So now let's get to expanded council priorities. So I'm going to take a stab at this. I'm going to move that we approve these two expanded council priorities with the following changes. That we change the racial equity and social diversity to the racial comma justice, comma equity and social diversity priority, to include Oscar's comments. That we change the language underneath that to the City of Santa Monica acknowledges the effects of generational and institutional racism and discrimination, and its consequences that continue to impact our residents and businesses. That these lessons of our history cannot be ignored. The city is committed to advancing racial equity and social diversity to improve the well-being of people who live, work, learn, play, and do business in our city, and create a community where everyone, where differences in life outcomes cannot be predicted by race, class, gender, disability, or other identities. And then adding a final sentence that says, everyone in Santa Monica should have a full opportunity to thrive. And then I would also, as part of that motion, add the sustainable and connected community priority, although I didn't hear anyone have any issues with that language, so I'll offer that as, up on the screen.
Can we change the should to must?
Where, where's the should?
I thought you seconded the last sentence, where you said, must have.
Oh, must, sure, sure, that's fine. Must have an opportunity to thrive. All right. So is everyone clear on what those changes are? Jesse?
I'm clear. I just have a question or friendly amendment about the comma in the, in the title.
Sure.
I'm trying to understand.
No, no. They're, they're working on that. Yeah, I might.
Okay, no, I thought I heard it too, as, as part of what was suggested.
Yeah, I made it put justice in the wrong place. It's racial equity, comma, justice, and social diversity, but I made it in the wrong place on my notes. I apologize.
Thank you.
I'm dangerous with a pen.
It's a racial justice, comma, equity.
Right.
Yeah.
Racial justice, racial justice, comma, equity, and social diversity. Okay, I've said it three different ways now, but Oscar got it right. Are we okay on that?
Yeah.
All right. I moved it, Carolyn seconded it, Lana authored it, so we're, we're about to violate the Brown Act. No, so again, no money is involved, so all those in favor?
One question I have.
Sure.
Are we voting on both, or just one?
We're doing both.
Both, okay. On the issue of prevent harm to the natural environment and human health, what about prevent and remedy harm to the natural environment and human health? Meaning that we, if we have the technological capacity to remedy certain things like, that we, that we would be able to do that as well? So prevent and remedy?
That's friendly to the maker, it's friendly to the seconders, so we will include prevent and remedy harm to the natural environment. We all clear? All right. Again, voice vote. With the changes made, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, staff. You now have what we would call your marching orders. All right, and I just want to point out that we are ahead of schedule. You're doing a wonderful job, everyone, thank you. But there, but there are still opportunities to get bogged down, so feel free.
No, we will not get bogged down.
All right. So we are now going to, I'm going to turn the podium back to Dave, who's going to discuss priority implementation for budget direction.
Great, and I think I'm going to have Susan and Gigi helping out with this part, so I'll give them a second to make sure they're ready to go. Okay, okay, just Susan. Great, perfect. So we're going from the priorities, and thank you very much for working with us and the direction and guidance. It was very helpful and inspiring, so thank you. So now we're moving to asking to roll your sleeves up and think about how you, as a council, would like to deploy new resources that are coming to the organization as a result of last November's election, to think about how you may want to consider reallocating resources. I think very much so in alignment with the discussion that we just had about priorities. And so just to kind of transition formally before Susan gets up, in line with these priorities, we have the opportunity to discuss two new funding streams the community has supported to expand services in key areas. So that specifically is Measure CS and Measure GS. However, in terms of Measure GS, because of the nature of the tax and the timing of the tax, we're not quite there with resource allocation recommendations. This afternoon, we're going to seek your direction on initial allocations for Measure CS and focus on how we can set up the organization to best address homelessness through a homelessness strategic plan and a proposed reorganization of our community services department. In addition, we have identified an opportunity to reallocate $2.5 million in city funds, currently dedicated to paying down the city's PERS obligations early, in order to assist in restoring key general fund services while revenues recover. And we're going to go through all of these allocations with you now, as they are outlined for you in your staff report with some degree of specificity. So I will have Susan come on up to guide us through that conversation.
Go through each of the four areas. We're looking for direction as we move through the budget process. So this morning, Gigi outlined Measure CS funds that must be used towards efforts that support our work to keep Santa Monica clean and safe and to address homelessness. Today, we're proposing a set of uses for these funds that staff initially shared with the council and community in last May's annual update on homelessness. These were also included in descriptions for potential use of Measure CS funds leading up to the November election, and further affirmed as priority recommendations presented by the city's internal auditor, Moss Adams, in the November 2022 homelessness study. The enhancements represent a coordinated effort across many city departments focused on addressing homelessness and public safety, including expansion of the city's homeless, multidisciplinary outreach team's work beyond the downtown and beach areas, redesign of San Michelle interim housing program to accommodate 24/7 intake, giving additional options for after-hours intake and facilitating SMPD transports for people experiencing homelessness and non-urgent behavioral health issues, expansion of Santa Monica Police Department's help program, the homeless liaison program, continuation of clean and safe programs funded on a one-time basis in the current budget, which include the Directed Action Response Team, DART, which increases resources responding to people experiencing homelessness and allows public safety resources that had been shifted to deal with the increased activity in downtown, pier, and the beach, to be redistributed to neighborhoods and patrols throughout the city, making permanent and expanded security program in our downtown parking structures, expanding public space maintenance investments, including enhancements to ensure higher-risk cleanup activities are performed safely, using an additional specialized team and higher-frequency cleanup efforts focusing on encampments, maintenance of water fountains at Ken Ginsor Square and Tongva Park, and enhanced monitoring and enforcement of our home-sharing ordinance. So moving on to the next item, homelessness strategic plan. Today, we also bring forward a recommendation of a one-time allocation of Measure CS funds to develop the homelessness strategic plan, or HSP, because we've got to have an acronym. This would build on the city's four pillars framework and the Moss Adams audit to set clear policy direction, promote alignment across city stakeholders, and support regional efforts. The plan will lay out a coordinated and systemic vision for the expansion of the homelessness response system, measurable outcomes and goals, and strategies to achieve those outcomes and goals. The process to develop the HSP will include Santa Monica's community partners, people with lived experience of homelessness, service providers, city agencies, and public and private sector partners. Staff have already begun planning the HSP and anticipate the plan could be ready in spring of 2024 for council consideration and adoption. So organizational realignment and CSD. Next, so staff is proposing a new organizational structure that would create two departments from what is today the community services department, in order to better position the city to address our declared emergency on homelessness, advance the production of affordable housing, and manage the anticipated workload associated with housing and human services. CSD was created in 2020 as a part of the restructuring, merging the housing division and what was the Housing and Economic Development Department with Community and Cultural Services Department, so which included also community recreation and cultural affairs. Because we have ambitious goals to create housing, and Measure CS and GS in the long term have created historic, once-in-a-lifetime infusion of new resources and community expectations, staff is proposing a new organizational structure to focus leadership and expedite implementation of these dedicated resources. The proposed staffing plan would include necessary roles to both lead and execute on developing, launching, and managing the significant future and existing workload. A new Housing and Human Services Department would have a core focus, administering a comprehensive array of housing, educational, and social service programs, and investments to support vulnerable populations. This supports an inclusive and diverse Santa Monica that dedicates local investments in basic needs for education, housing, and stability. that dedicates local investments in basic needs for education, housing, and stability. A new Recreation and Culture Department would focus on the work that builds community through the arts and cultural affairs, which are essential to our economic revitalization, including planning the future of Miles Playhouse, Camera Obscura, and reframing the City Hall murals, and leveraging the beach house as a key destination of Santa Monica's beachfront brand. More focused leadership on recreation will align opportunities on managing demand for our recreational amenities, support improved customer service, and enable a 21st century approach to community events. Staff would bring forward this organizational realignment as a part of the biennial process. And lastly, the resource reallocation of the $2.5 million from diverting the PERS paydown would be used to restore city services in key areas to deliver critical services and deliver new programs that support the city's work in economic and community revitalization, racial equity and social diversity, and sustainability. So as we mentioned earlier this morning, we're looking to make incremental restorations, but across services throughout the organization to meet the community need that we can with the available resources. So first, we'd support public free art and cultural programming and events through the Art of Recovery Program, like Americana in the park, further restore library hours and services to include Saturdays and expanded hours so they'd open earlier and stay open later. In youth programming, there's support to restore the staff required to meeting staff ratios that we talked about earlier, per the city's child protection protocols, expand Crest, continue funding for Playground Club, and open VAP programs like the Teen Center and the Gem. And with all of that, we'd be able to serve more than 450 additional youth that we would take off current waitlists as well. And we'd also implement a program offering reduced resource recovery and recycling rates for qualifying low-income households that we discussed a council meeting or two ago. We'd also establish a $100,000 tenant improvement fund to assist small businesses, as also directed by council previously. We'd add planning and economic development staffing to support economic development and recovery. In addition, staff recommends that the city establish a fund for diversity, equity, and inclusion. As a part of the Out-of-Home Wayfinding franchise agreement, Big Outdoor agreed to return 2% of its earnings to the city. So staff recommends allocating the funds, which would range between $100,000 and $250,000 annually. However, we don't expect to see them until 2025, 2026, but those would be directed to this equity fund to support the city's DEI work in the city and the community. To reallocate these funds, staff needs direction from council to suspend the city's financial policies around the prepayment of the city's PERS obligations. This was suspended during COVID and staff recommendations recommends extending that suspension for another two years to address more pressing community needs. This is just a chart aligning some of this work to the priorities that have not been updated to what you just adopted. So with that, I'm sure there's a lot of questions on this front, so we're here to answer any of your questions and give you more detail if needed.
All right, thank you, Susan. Now, council members, we're going to stick to questions in the short term. I think I've been fair about giving everyone a chance to discuss, but let's stick to questions because I think there's probably a lot of detailed questions here, and I don't want to wander off into comments. I'm going to start at this end, I see Lana, Carolyn, Jessie. All right, we'll start with those three, in that order.
Okay, I wanted to start, sorry, I wanted to start with the separation of the two departments and just, I just want to say that sometimes we ask questions up here, I think staff knows this, that we may have discussed already, but we do this for the residents and everybody watching, so it's not that we don't read reports, or at least, I don't know, I'm speaking for myself. It's just that we have to ask these questions so it's clear when we're making our decisions where we're getting our information from. So, having said all that, weren't those two departments separate prior to the pandemic to begin with?
I'll start, and then folks who've been here longer than me will know. So prior to the pandemic, we had what was a Community and Cultural Services Department, and then we had a Housing and Economic Development Department. And in the restructuring of 2020, economic development was brought under the moniker of community development, and I think simultaneously with that, mobility was taken out of community development and put into the Department of Transportation, and thereby was created a department called Community Services that took on parks, recreation, cultural affairs, housing, Housing Authority, human services, the grant program, and our homeless services. So pre-restructuring, yes, we had two separate departments, Community and Cultural Services, and then we had a Housing and Economic Development Department. What's interesting to note is one of the, in bringing this forward, when we had the previous two departments, Community and Cultural Services and Housing and Economic Development, what wasn't united was some of the human services programs. And what staff have learned is that having the human services programs aligned with Housing and Housing Authority has a lot of value and benefit to our residents. And so one of the things that we're looking to present to you in terms of this opportunity is to keep those areas of work aligned, housing, homelessness, and human services.
So not, going back to how it was pre-pandemic, learning from having had to, and by the way, we had to combine it because of losing staff members, right? And so essentially, we put these two departments together, and I'm assuming that leadership and all the way down, people took on more responsibilities than what was then their current, right, job responsibilities. So now, we've seen that, obviously, people utilizing some of the housing programs, some of the youth might also be engaging in other programs, and so we've learned that those two pieces of it work better together, but by separating out the other pieces of it, we can provide more focus. When I read that, and I would just love for you to expand more, there's some concern that, and I looked at it both ways, are we just adding administrative-executive level positions that are going to be costing us a lot of money, and we're not going to be able to see the fruits of this labor from the top? We're not going to be able to see it as a community? It's just going to be this really heavily-paid administrative-level person, and we're not going to, and instead, could we use that money to actually put people in the libraries, to open the libraries, put people in the parks, have the programs open because you've got the boots on the ground, again, as we keep calling it? Can you just expand a little bit more on where the financial impact is?
Sure. So let me go in a few different directions. So I think, first of all, what we're talking about is an opportunity, I think the mayor has said it well, in terms of, you know, having the right generals in place to do the work. It's frustrating to hear our department leaders called bureaucrats. They're not bureaucrats, they work very hard to serve this community and provide leadership and provide connection. And what I'm particularly concerned about, right, is as we continue to press forward in a very aggressive way around housing and homelessness, but also really need to address our communities, we just talked about our youth and our teens and our seniors, is striving to have individuals in place that can provide that visionary leadership and that connection to the community to do the work. What we're presenting to you here is a framework and a concept of what would be, if council approves this framework and concept, a much more built-out reorganization. It would include not only leadership at the top, but staff throughout the department. So that would happen particularly in the area of our proposed Housing and Human Services Department, where it's been made very clear to myself, right, we need to address gaps in our housing authority. So we would want to propose resources to you in the housing authority side of the work, also on the housing division side of the work. What we have right now is just a massive consolidation, so we want to bring better balance to folks' work life, and we also want to make sure that we have individuals, not only at the top, but throughout the middle and bottom of the organization, that can get work done. In terms of the resource allocation issue, right, so with the Community Services Director, right, that human being has resources that are assigned to them through both the general fund and the Housing Trust Funds and Housing Authority. So if we keep the existing structure in place, we'd continue to have to diversify the funding of that person, so it wouldn't necessarily free up resources to invest in other community programs. However, with what we are proposing, right, we are going to need resources in Housing Trust Funds and Housing Authority dollars to support that Director of Housing and Human Services, and by doing that, it frees up the general fund resources to support the creation of that department. Now, it's certainly debatable whether or not you want to invest Housing Authority and Housing Trust Fund dollars into that resource. I would only suggest it is a worthy consideration for you because, for example, we have the Moss Adams homelessness study, which asks for an executive sponsor on homelessness. And you could interpret that, to do that, in all kinds of different ways, but I certainly think there is tremendous value in having the individual or individuals that are overseeing that body of work work directly with myself in the city manager's office and be that executive sponsor for it. So I hope that answers the preponderance of questions.
Essentially, we're freeing up more general fund money, is also what I heard you say.
By having the Director of Housing and Human Services will free up general fund resources to support the creation of a leader for Parks and Recreation and Cultural Affairs and supporting staff.
And I imagine what prompted this is not only the pressure on our staff having to get back to where they were, where they're not enduring, you know, multiple positions under one person, but also, and that goes into the mental health and wellness of our staff and how healthy we are as an organization, but also the residents' concerns and, you know, for lack of a better word, complaints about, hey, we've, it's time to get back to what we need to provide our residents and our constituents, which is what we've been talking about today. I read that, and I just wanted to clarify, when it comes to like cultural services, cultural amenities, there was some talk about partnership. And I know that that does probably need an executive leader to, able to tap into some of our big partners that are here doing business in the community to maybe offload some of the financial burden. We talk a lot about public-private partnership, is that a goal of that position as well?
From my perspective, yeah, so it's big partnerships and it's small partnerships. I mean, I very much remember a conversation that I had had with one of our neighborhood association leaders who wanted to partner with the organization to instigate some community programming in one of our parks, but we didn't have the capacity to be able to meet that person where they were and help facilitate those partnerships. So I see it both at the high level and also at the micro level in terms of the kind of partnerships that we could create to activate the community. And I certainly know in the context of the body of work that's being done with Miles and Camera Obscura, that I think partnerships is going to be a big piece of bringing that vision forward to help bring those facilities to life.
Okay, thank you. Carolyn?
Thank you so much. So David, if we were to approve this restructuring of Housing and Homeless Services and Recreation and Cultural Affairs into two separate departments, you know, my priority would be, I promise you there's a question. Obviously, we've all said that housing and homelessness is a priority, you've said that here today. How quickly would we be able to recruit a department head specifically dedicated to housing and homelessness? Because that's pretty important, and we don't have a citywide leader on that at this current juncture.
So in talking with our Director of HR, it all falls on how painful I want to make the process of it. So they're already at work developing the job descriptions, and then once those are done, once I approve them, I can give them the green light to go ahead and push it out. So I would say the next four to six weeks at worst, we could have a recruitment started, is what she conveyed to me, unless I want to create a more elaborate process to get the recruitment underground or off the ground.
And would we, so you're basically saying that we would not have to wait until the new fiscal year, '23, '24, to start recruiting this position and getting them on board?
If council is clear today and affirmative in the desire to create those departments, we can absolutely start the work to get those recruitments underway. That's the direction we need today to authorize us to do that work.
And again, just because I've had the benefit of having numerous conversations with folks in the community on this topic, I think this is probably one of the most talked-about things in this meeting today. I want to make sure, just to reemphasize this point, I saw a proposed organizational chart for this new department. I want to be clear, David, are we going to ensure that on day one with this new Housing and Homelessness Department, that we have folks at all levels of the organization, not just a new director, to support the work?
Well, I can't make a promise as contingent on recruitment activity, so what I can say is we can...
FTE positions like allocated, not necessarily hired, yeah.
Yeah, when we bring the budget to you in May at the study session and June for adoption, there will be recommended allocations to fill out the department, so that will be there. But when they're actually filled is a bit out of my control.
And we would not be using general fund money to fund those positions, is that correct?
We would be using, let me make sure I'm being clear, because there is general fund resource involved. So the Director of Housing and Human Services would be funded with Housing Trust Fund dollars and Housing Authority dollars. The resulting leadership for the Park Recreation and Cultural Affairs Department will be funded with the general fund, because those are general fund programs.
But those positions widely are already existing, correct?
Say, ask that again?
The Parks and Cultural Affairs positions already exist, correct?
No, there is currently only one Director of Community Services. There is not a Director of Recreation and Cultural Affairs today.
So how much estimated general fund money would we be drawing down for these specific new positions in the Parks and Cultural Affairs Department?
So super preliminary, I would say additional general fund resources is about $55,000 to $60,000 based on preliminary analysis, but that all has to be updated as we go through the current, as we update our budget, we'll get better information.
Okay, and then with respect to Housing and Homeless Services, obviously, we have cities in the county, cities across the state. What are other jurisdictions doing with respect to Housing and Homeless Services? You know, just by comparison to what we've done?
So unfortunately, I don't have a direct survey of what all organizations have done, but you know, for example, as you and I have talked, the city of Pasadena has its own separate housing department. And I think, you know, as I've had this conversation with our team and have thought about it, I mean, what I want to ensure is that an organization that is aligned with what the council and community deems as a priority. And so we, as a community, have done things around affordable housing that not many communities have done, thinking about historical taxes that have been adopted, thinking about taxes that were recently adopted, and certainly, our approach to homelessness is tremendously more sophisticated than the average city. So in that light and in that vein, right, this is where I think the need arises to capitalize on this opportunity.
Okay, and then just moving quickly to a point that wasn't highlighted but is important to me, you also mentioned that with this, with these new budget priorities and with the CS revenue, or maybe it was the GS, sorry, I'm looking at the staff report right now, I think it was GS, we are going to pursue enhanced monitoring of our home-sharing ordinance, and that's something that this city has vigorously defended. How do we plan to use efficient allocation of resources, i.e. tech-enabled solutions, to more effectively monitor our home-sharing ordinance?
So I don't know, David, if you want to comment, but our plan is, right now, we do it through direct staff, which has been very time and labor and resource-intensive. So our code enforcement manager, as far as I understand, is right now in the process of developing an RFP so we can bring on a third-party license or software platform. I think, I don't remember what one of the more common ones is called.
Host compliance, perhaps?
Yeah, so there's a few different ones.
I'm not trying to say that we're presupposing anyone, I just have...
But it's like that, in that vein.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm not sure exactly what kind of tech they will employ, but yeah, as Dave said, we're trying to bring someone on to help augment code staff in monitoring.
Because as I understand it, there are many short-term rental platforms that will remove their listings from the hours of nine and five when staff is working, and then will put them back up at night. We know directly in my family, which I think I told you... We know directly in my family, which I think I told you, there are hundreds of illegal non-hosted postings in Santa Monica. And so I would assume, just for my colleagues that don't know, with a technology-enabled solution that is scrubbing the internet at all hours of the day, finding out where these are, that we would be able to more effectively enforce our ordinance thereby hopefully restoring folks back into our hotels that are not going to be using kind of, for lack of a better word, illegal short-term rentals. And we would also be potentially restoring units to the rental market, especially rent-controlled units, which I'm very concerned about. Yeah, okay, great. And I would just say, I hope we're going to work with our rent control board on that, too. I don't think I have any other questions at this point. Thanks.
All right, Jesse?
There we go. I guess, starting with the organizational realignment, have Housing Trust Fund dollars traditionally been used to pay for staff salaries?
So I think we're using today about $3.5 million of, whether you want to call it General Fund dollars or General Fund dollars transferring to the Housing Trust Fund for staffing, if I have that right? Or is that wrong? Okay, I knew, I had a sense it could be wrong, so go ahead.
So that number includes money for program operations specifically for the preserving our diversity program, which has about a $2 million a year allotment of the General Funds for program operations, and then about $1 million to support staff. And that's something that, Gigi, I'm going to kind of rely on you, that's not necessarily something we've done consistently. It's really been a strategy to balance our budget in difficult times. So, you know, we can use those dollars for the people who support the housing programs. We don't have to, but we could. And so when we need to, we have been.
Okay, thank you. And when considering this reorganization, it seems as if it's quite clear that Housing and Human Services have proven to go together well and would also serve to stay together in the future. But was there consideration as to whether Recreation and Culture should be a standalone department or potentially combined with any others so as to avoid additional overhead?
So we did, and I think we have an obligation to look at all options when we propose something. So, you know, we did consider where else Parks, Recreation and Cultural Affairs could fit. But I think, you know, just being really honest in terms of all that the organization has been through in terms of budget cuts over the years and the rebuilding that we're doing, and also to put this work and give it the focus, attention and elevation that it deserves, I think in doing the totality of that thinking, we landed on this recommendation before you today. But we did consider other options for sure. We responsibly had to, but that's how we got there.
And I had a couple questions about what exactly is being proposed to be, have restorations of funding, I guess, in Part D of the discussion. There's a lot of different youth programs that we've kind of gone through today, and there's Playground Club, there's Crest and VAP and others. What exactly, are we proposing to restore all of those programs and to where they were before, or just somewhere between where they are now and where they were before? I heard the number 450 youth, but I just wanted to make sure I was clear on which programs were being fully restored or partially, and whether Crest and VAP are being restored as part of that.
So why don't I start talking a little bit about what it is, and then Danielle, as you make your way up there, you can talk about how far we still are from full restoration. So in terms of what we're talking about, one is to ensure that we can continue the Playground Club program operated by the Boys and Girls Club, and that was what was funded last year with one-time money, so we want to perpetuate that program. Then we're talking about restorations at Virginia Avenue Park, which would include expanding hours from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., restoring services to high schools at Virginia Avenue Park, so that would be our teen center. We'd also talk about opening the fitness gym at Virginia Avenue Park that serves middle and high school age youth. And then we'd be able to well-support our Crest clubbing, Crest Club, which would have six schools, at six schools, and Crest Enrichment at seven, and that's how you get the expanded service. But I'll let Danielle kind of walk through how that compares to where it works. I think we still are far from full restoration.
Right. We would call that a partial restoration. And I think just also naming that we're in a different environment, we're working with different staffing ratios. Now, we also, you know, have been challenged in recruiting and retaining people, so this is a bit aspirational that we could get to what Dave said. I think it requires, you know, the positions that we're proposing being consistently staffed. You know, and I understand and I agree that we don't, it's not always useful to talk about where we used to be, but if we, to restore to where we were before the pandemic, it would cost about $925,000, and we would be looking at, I believe, about 12 full-time staff and two as-needed staff. And that's not the number that we're proposing right now. We still would have a gap with the summer lunch program, we'd still have a gap with childcare, you know. And again, as people call out sick and as we're not able to staff up, there could be other gaps.
The, there was a number of 450 additional youth, that was the hope. How does that compare to wait lists for programs as they are now?
So as of a couple of weeks ago, we had 290 people on our waitlist, but it's, the numbers are not exactly apples to apples because we don't have a, some of the programming we're proposing to restore isn't operating now, so it doesn't have a waitlist. And some of the programming that could be expanded going forward is like a Crest Enrichment program, which we haven't opened registration for yet. So there's difference between waitlist and more capacity.
That makes sense. And the 925,000, how much money is being allocated to that? You said that would be for a full restoration. How much money are we talking about from this 2.5?
So I believe there's a, it's a, I'm going to pull it up from a different screen. It's about 500,000, but there's a little bit of revenue, but we're talking about, yeah, sorry. So the net is 426,000. So we add some staff, we change out some as-needed staff, there's some revenue we get from our contractual services.
Got it. And then the amount for the Playground Club is 500,000.
It's 500,000.
That's 500 as well. Yeah, so about a million dollars total.
Few more small questions. Was there consideration among this list, I heard there was comment from several people related to the Housing and Human Services grants, which have remained steady at around 8 million? Even as, as we all know, costs have gone up, and I've seen tuitions have to go up for some of the early childhood care centers and all sorts of things to keep up. Was there consideration of looking at that grant program?
The answer is yes. However, there is way more need than this money can possibly serve. And so we tried to do our best to develop a list of recommendations that would best address what we're hearing from council, what we're hearing in the community, but to be honest, that program has not received increases in funding for a very long time, and it's just another one of the long list of needs that we have.
And Christine mentioned at one point accessibility in terms of our meetings, and obviously council has brought that up a lot. Is there anything in either this allocation or any of the bigger, you know, biennial budget that we are talking about to try to get closer to accessible and perhaps hybrid meetings?
Looking at folks in the audience, am I getting this? No.
And finally, the DEI fund that's mentioned, that would use the 2% of earnings from our wayfinding, is there a proposal as to, I mean, something I think the whole council is in favor of allocating resources towards, but is there a little bit more in terms of what exactly that would be funding?
Truthfully, not at the moment, no. If council were to allocate this resource, that would give us the opportunity to build that program out, and we're certainly going to hear from Paolo in April about a lot of the big visions, big vision that they have for our DEI work. So I don't have concrete proposals for you today, but we will definitely want to build those out for you. This is the direction where council wants to head.
Okay. Well, the last thing I'll mention, which is probably the only thing that won't be a very good question, is that the Safe Routes to School program was something that was mentioned in public comment, and I think it fits under a lot of our priorities for children, sustainability, safety. It was apparently a rather small but important program that the city had before that was specifically working on safety improvements for kids that were getting to schools in every mode, car, bike, scooter, walking. It's something that I think is valuable and ties into a lot of the priorities we have on council and a lot of the priorities that we heard spoken today, and that's something I would also advocate for.
Okay, Phil?
So first, I wanted to look at CS dollars. I was concerned a little bit, and maybe it's not an issue, but it felt to me that when we were asking voters to support CS and we were talking to the hotels to get their support for CS, that a majority of the CS dollars were going to go to the areas around the hotels. And I'm a little bit concerned that we are maybe deviating from that mission of approximately, maybe, was it a million and a half this year, 4 million the following year? That we're using, we're utilizing some of that money potentially off balance of what we said we were going to do. And so I'm a little bit concerned about that because I think people were very interested in supporting that program or that bond issue simply, or tax issue, sorry, simply because a majority of that money was going to go to making the beachfront safer, the pier safer, downtown safer. And I'm looking and seeing short-term rental enforcement, I'm looking and seeing other things that go beyond downtown, and even to the point, things that I want. I want the homeless disciplinary, multidisciplinary outreach teams throughout our city. I've said that for three years now, that they need to be throughout our city, but I am a little bit concerned that some of the money is being siphoned into other programs instead of being heavily concentrated in the severe areas of need. So that's my first question.
So I'll try to maybe draw some connections in terms of what's being offered as a recommended allocation and maybe how it sort of works and fits, not only in the context of the beach specifically, but more broadly, certainly the downtown area, which I think the hotels are interconnected with. But just really, obviously, the short-term rental enforcement is very important to both not only our work around housing, but it's also really important to the hotels in bringing forward, they really wanted to make sure that we were beefing up our work around short-term rental enforcement because it undermines their hotels and stays there. So I just want to make sure we're on the same, that was very important to them in terms of growing that enforcement activity. Then I think there are a number of things that we're doing that I'm hoping are satisfying in terms of our work in and around the downtown and the beach area. So obviously, expanding our homelessness liaison program team, so right now they currently operate four days a week, we want to get them to seven days a week, is very, I think, helpful in terms of supporting our work downtown, on the beach, et cetera. We're also looking to use the dollars, as mentioned, to maintain our directed action response team that is very much proactively busy on the beach, downtown, on the pier, so they're in and around that area, and I think supporting that effort and activity. I think certainly by bringing forward the recommendation to offer San Moshe, or at least part of San Moshe, to be open 24 hours, seven days a week, does help in terms of our police officers being able to bring folks to that facility who might otherwise be on the streets in downtown or the area in the overnight hours. I think certainly proposing to use some of the resource, I'm hoping for parking structure security services is supportive, just generally of being in the area because the hotels are near and proximate to our downtown area. So I think it all sort of works together. It's, you know, we're, folks are moving around the city, and so I think the idea is to provide a set of resources that address that. Also, the tax was broad in the sense that it was about our work to address homelessness. It wasn't necessarily specifically geographically focused, so I think we're trying to bring forward an array of services that allow us to address the issues we're facing, not only in one part of town, but throughout the totality of the community. I hope that helps. But obviously, this is about you helping to help us shape where the money goes.
Right, well, no, I, look, and I understand all of these are needs. I'm just very concerned, I'm very concerned that we make sure that the dollars are truly effective in making sure that our streets, our parks, our beachfront and our pier downtown are truly serviced through the programs. So my ques, so you mentioned the parking structure security service, which we absolutely need, but I'm not sure it should be funded through that method. Is this, I guess, what I'm asking maybe more, is this allocation set in stone, or are we still just discussing?
Now, these are, in the purest and truest sense, right, these are recommendations to the city council, you know, based on our conversations with SMTT, based on our conversations with all the folks, staff is only left here, over there, this is where we, our recommendation to you about the best use of those resources, but absolutely, right, this is exactly what we need from you is where you might want to push and pull the money. Now, I think the one-
But you're not making suggestions now, you're just asking questions.
The one thing I do want to offer, and I know the mayor would probably punch me if I didn't say anything, is this is the money we have to work with as an organization, so I don't have other places to go to to support these types of programs and services, so this is what we get to work with.
Have we, as part of this program and part of the HLP team and the DART team, are we also looking at making sure that we add more security to Tangva and the southern part of Palisades Park?
I would defer to the chief about how you would deploy these resources. I think that's best suited for you to talk about how operationally and where people would work.
Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council, staff, good afternoon. Ramon Batista, Police Chief, with respect to how we'd cover, you said the north end of Palisades and I think Tangva, so-
South end of Palisades.
Yeah, so we've been using the direct action response team, which is a multidisciplinary team between code enforcement, public works and police department, very effectively to cover the pier, the beaches and Palisades Park, and now extending into downtown to include Reed Park and Tangva. So we've been spending, so we do, we are covering Palisades with this team. In addition to that, we've been covering Tangva with a special deployment patrols where we work together with folks from CSD, Salvation Army and the Help Team in order to address the folks that are there in need, and whether that's giving them additional resources or in some cases, addressing issues of criminal behavior going that route.
Is, are the CS funds, is, how many days a week is the DART team on?
The DART team is operating seven days a week.
They are now. All right, does this, CS funds, does this give us more hours or more resources for that DART team as well as the HLP team?
No. So at this point, the CS funds will allow us to continue to operate the DART team because the DART team was operating on one-time funding from last year.
Do you, I guess I'll ask you a secondary question then. Does the DART team and the HLP team, does the DART team need more resources for this coming year to be more effective? Or are you at a good plateau?
I'm always going to tell you that we can use more. What we've got right now, I can tell you that the team- What we've got right now, I can tell you that the team has been effective.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. I have a couple of more questions. In terms of, from the time that we eliminated the community and cultural services, I know we were in a pandemic, did we also see possibly less, less advocacy for our parks and recreation programs in the city? I know you weren't here for this entire time, but did we see less of an advocacy when the departments got realigned?
I don't know if, I'm not sure I'm best to answer that question.
Does that question make sense, or do I need to refine it? I guess what I'm saying is, without a community and cultural services, knowing how extremely important our parks are to the lives of our residents, was there, did we feel, or does anyone feel, there was less advocacy for parks, even though it was during the pandemic? And the reason I'm asking is, I polled just informally, the six living, sounds terrible, the six living Recreation and Parks Commission chairs over the last couple of days, and from 2008 forward. And especially in the last couple of years, the three different chairs felt that they had to find out that the department head wasn't as involved, they felt neglected, and they felt that it was of concern that there was nobody really advocating for the parks, the programs, children, seniors who use those programs in the city.
I think we are pretty much, if you think about what was going on, we haven't had any money. And where we've been able to restore services, we did. We restored the maintenance of the sports fields incrementally. We also, very early on, restored quite a bit in terms of parks, so that, you know, our parks didn't have to close completely. So where we could, we did what we were able to do within, you know, our very limited resources.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Carolyn?
I wanted to respond, I don't know, yes, it's not exactly a question, I just wanted to make a clarifying point, that I actually read the text of Measure CS while Phil was asking about the intent.
Well, can we wait till comment for that?
Yeah, that's fine. I just, okay, I would just say that all the things under there were like explicitly in the arguments, yeah.
All right, so seeing no other flags waving, I have a few questions, and they're pretty specific, but I think it's important to make sure we all understand them. So talking about the allocation of Measure CS funds, and going somewhat to Phil's comment, I mean, one of the issues that it's my perception we have, and I actually saw this in action the other day, is that when, for example, we see people here at the library, and we say, "You can't sleep in front of the elevators," they don't vaporize, they move somewhere else. And a lot of them are moving down, for example, towards the beach through our downtown. And so I'm just, you know, I'm wondering, you know, as we address these issues, maybe on what feels like a broader geographic area of the city, are we still not having an impact on, on the beach, the pier, Palisades Park, the downtown area, simply because instead of just moving people around like they're on a chessboard, we're actually addressing issues with the expanded help team throughout the city and expanding the hours, that sort of thing, or the multi-disciplinary outreach team throughout the city, that sort of thing?
Well, if I understand the question, I mean, I think I'd be remiss to say, right, without more housing, without more services in between the outreach and the housing, whether they're mental health or behavioral health, it's always going to be a challenge for us to get people off the streets. I mean, that's just the reality that we're facing. But our hope is that, you know, what we do experience is we don't, you know, everything east of Lincoln is really subject to LASSA coming out when we call 211. So we appreciate that there is a gap in terms of our ability to service that area of the city well and work with folks. So I hope that helps respond to some of the question.
It does. I mean, I think what I'm saying is that you can't divide the city up and say, "Well, in this area, you know, solving homelessness or addressing homelessness east of Lincoln," isn't it true that that actually has an impact on homelessness issues west of Lincoln? Because folks are mobile, they move around, if we move them and say, "Hey, you can't be here," what we see, at least, I will tell you, I actually saw this, we had an issue with someone in a park who was sleeping. I had my dog, and so I couldn't really get close to them. I called the fire department, and the fire department came lickety-split, addressed the issue, saw if the person had any medical issues, and the person walked, I watched the person do this, walked from our park towards the beach. So, I mean, it seems to me that that, that's the issue, is that ultimately, all roads lead, if you will, to the beach, the pier, that sort of thing. So if we're able to intervene, maybe even if it's east of Lincoln, we may be reducing the issue west of Lincoln, if that makes sense. The other question I have is about San Moshe interim housing. So allowing 24/7 intakes, and I know this may not be able to fully address the magnitude of the issue, but I know, for example, one of the issues the hotels, as well as downtown Santa Monica have, is the end-of-line issue with people being forced off metro trains at the end of the evening. If we were able to expand intake at San Moshe, at least some of those people, if they were forced off the train, would we be able to take them in at San Moshe, perhaps?
It'd be good for Danielle to talk about this recommendation, this proposal.
So, the idea behind the 24/7 intakes at San Moshe is really as a resource for our first responders. They have told us, and it is absolutely true, that there's no place to take people after business hours. And sometimes there are situations where people really need to be transported to a shelter, a local shelter, at night. And so that's what this resource would really be for, it would be really a direct access point into shelter facilitated by our first responders, and it's probably the first step towards a comprehensive behavioral health strategy for Santa Monica. So it's not exactly what you're describing, it's quite specific in its intent.
Okay, great, thank you. But for example, since I have you there, again, if it's a first responder issue, if our first responders encounter someone in the beach, the pier, and rather than drive them deep into the county somewhere where they might be able to get sheltered, they'll then be able to take them to San Moshe. Would that be right then?
Yes, and I think we will have a very specific target population for those types of drop-offs.
So it might help remove people from the immediate area when first responders encounter them?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you. I want to talk about continued clean and safe programs, and we mentioned parking. As I understand it, and you can just confirm this is right, it is not just the parking structures immediately surrounding the promenade, but it's parking structures throughout downtown Santa Monica, including both the library parking structure and the civics parking structure, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And then on short-term rental enforcement, so as I understand, well, not as I understand, it is in fact a fact, that, and we haven't talked about this very much, but CS did not only increase the transient occupancy tax for hotel stays, it actually had a larger increase for short-term rentals. So if we're able to do a better job of enforcing short-term rental, I'm trying to think, usage isn't really the right word, but, but do a better job of identifying short-term rentals that are being offered, for lack of a better term, off the grid, or that we're less able to enforce, that actually could lead to a revenue enhancement, because presumably, as those short-term rentals are identified and forced to come into compliance, they will be paying the larger TOT, is that correct?
That's correct.
Everyone's nodding yes.
That's correct, that's absolutely correct.
Okay, so, so in a way, for example, while short-
We're waving our hands.
Woo! So, so short-term rental enforcement is actually not just a way, as Carolyn pointed out, to drive folks to our hotels, which is great, we love our hotels, but it also, to the extent people want to avail themselves, and we call them vacation rentals, not short-term rentals, but vacation rentals here in Santa Monica, to the extent they do that, that actually could be a revenue-enhancing measure by enforcing it, is that right? Okay, great, thanks. Sorry, sorry to be weird about that. And then I wanted to talk about the one-time allocation for the Homeless Strategic Plan. I mean, it seems to me that one of the things that was mentioned earlier was, do we have metrics? And one of the subbullets under that was improving focus on measurable objectives and reporting. I mean, is that really one of the crux components of doing this plan, so that, I know there's been a lot of criticism, and I'm not going to say it's justified, but it's still out there, that we spend a lot of money and can't point to metrics, although, gosh, you know, housing 140 people in the past year, that's a pretty strong metric to me. But is that really one of the keys, is to be able to address that issue?
Is Anush, or do, you want to come and address this, or?
Come back, Anush.
Is that perfect timing? Don't leave anyone.
Good afternoon. I'd be happy to address it if I could get their question repeated.
Sure, sure. So one of the things we're talking about is a one-time allocation to develop the Homeless Strategic Plan. And it seemed to me, one of the things you and everyone else in this room consistently hears is you spend a lot of money on homelessness, but you don't know whether or not you're being successful. And while I think, I may disagree with that when I hear we housed 140 people, I think we have some very powerful metrics. But one of these subbullets is improving focus on measurable objectives and reporting. Would that be one of the key purposes of developing the Homeless Strategic Plan?
Yes, absolutely. And this, as we've referenced earlier, definitely ties back to the assessment in the Moss-Adams report on homelessness, you know, the development or identification, and again, it's not starting from scratch by any means. There are a number of metrics throughout, you know, metrics that our grantees are measured through, metrics that our own, you know, staff, whether it be the outreach teams, help team, et cetera, CRU use, but the kind of consolidation of those metrics and really assisting also, I think, in the communication of those metrics to the community. That was another piece of what Moss-Adams identified and will be coming forward to you, is to really consolidate our communications around homelessness so that our community is much more aware of it. So I think it all ties together, dating back to the Moss-Adams report, and the strategic plan will really align and elevate a lot of that work.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that. And then I think this is a question for you, Danielle, and I know you've answered it a little bit, but I just want to be as clear as I can be on this. So currently, it's my understanding, the Virginia Avenue Park Teen Center is closed, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the proposed allocation for the restoration of the 2.5 million would allow us to open it at least to some extent, is that correct?
That's correct.
So without suggesting that it's 100% restoration, at least it would be open to address some of the needs in that localized community where we're hearing that a lot of teens and young adults are really struggling coming out of COVID, is that right?
Yes, we focused our restorations on the services at Virginia Avenue Park, specifically for middle and high school age youth.
All right, great, thank you. Those are all my questions. So now we are into comments. Oops, I'm sorry, Oscar, I didn't see your hand. Go ahead.
The, I have one, a couple of questions regarding the homelessness strategic plan, and specifically the measured CS funds, the use of funds for expanding the multidisciplinary outreach team beyond downtown and the beach. And regard, you know, I've been very interested sort of in the concept that came out of the governor's office regarding the CARE Act and the state legislature and CARE Court, conservatorship and those types of concepts. Are we on any, on any pathway regarding connecting with that, with that type of program here in our city or in the county of Los Angeles? Because I know that they're doing it in other counties, but not, not sure if it's reached Southern California yet.
Well, I would lean on my county expert up here to help with that, because I'm not entirely sure where LA County is in embracing it, but I can articulate that both the mayor and I, when we met with Supervisor Horvath, one of the things we talked about is our interest in seeing that come to life, and certainly our interest as a community in wanting to work collaboratively to figure out how Santa Monica can be, can be part of that implementation.
Okay, great.
In the enabling legislation, we, the county of LA is in the second cohort of CARE Courts, so currently, the first cohort is being implemented. We're going to try to study those learnings and get additional resources, because it was very much an unfunded mandate, and that's a little bit of the concern.
So that's great to hear.
And if I can, actually, I might turn to Doug, who has recently proposed, because we already do have a homeless diversion program through the courts, and maybe Doug could expand on his plans for that.
Yes, we are looking at a potential grant that we may have to expedite here, an application for, that would provide, I think, up to $550,000 for basically homeless navigation, to get people out of the criminal justice system, get them placed, and that sort of thing. So we're looking into that right now.
Thank you. So I just want people to know, we're looking, there's a wide range of services, and we're looking at, leaving no stone unturned, maybe that's the correct term.
Yes, because I think it's so important, I mean, the tragedy that we see on our streets, especially, you know, individuals that are facing mental health breakdowns and, you know, and we need to really be responsive in that regard, and use this funding, I agree with Councilmember Brock, you know, that there was, there was a lot of talk and a lot of commitment from folks to support Measure CS, because they, you know, they were, they were assured that we would put a lot of funding and support in addressing homelessness and mental health issues, and also supporting public safety. And the last item here, the short-term rental enforcement, for me, I just, since we're transitioning to comments, I wanted to say that it feels a little out of place, I mean, with considering all that's going on in our city. I know it might be legal, let's say, Caroline will point to the measure and say that it's, it's totally doable, I'm not saying that it's not. But what I'm, what I am saying is that if you look at sort of all the other priorities, I'll give you one, like, I would, I would think that expanding our responsiveness to the 311 dispatch and having more community access, so that people know that they don't have to call 911 all the time. I mean, I've seen multiple reports where there's been a lot of, you know, just a lot of calls, you know, the calls have gone up, and in talking to residents, you know, they feel very frustrated at times that they, they'll call, you know, 311, and, and, you know, you can't, you can't get even service after like 5:00 PM. And it's not, it's not as responsive as, as we would need it to be, considering, you know, how, how much our residents are in need, you know, of that type of service. So I'm thinking that if you gave me an option between strengthening 311 responsiveness, community access, and so forth, or enforcement of short-term rentals, I would probably go more with, you know, with the 311 responsiveness right now, until we, you know, bring more money into the budget and we could, we could do more. But anyway, just wanted to give my input along those lines. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, we have now transitioned into comments, so raise your hands.
Councilmember Delatorre just had a good point, because I just remembered on March 9th, I called 911, and I had to wait on hold in Santa Monica over two minutes for 911 to pick up. I saw a potential jumper on the bridge, the Main Street Bridge, as I was heading east on the 10 freeway, and I think it was, I was past Centinela before an operator finally answered. So not only 311, but our 911 system, we've got to make sure, that was at 10:57 AM on March 9th, and we've got to make sure that people are picking up. I was worried this guy was climbing over the bridge and dangling, and I was scared to death he was going to jump, I couldn't stop because I was on the freeway. But I don't know what the result was, but that worries me, and yes, and the 311 response system is still, I think, I get good responses, but I know there are residents who constantly say, is, you know, it's taken weeks to, for someone to, to really respond to them. So I second that, I think that's a priority. I'm satisfied, for the most part, with the answers to my earlier questions, I just want to make sure that we are in the, in the CS dollars, and I know we have very little funds to do anything, but I want to make sure that we are satisfying what residents really were concerned about when they voted for that. They felt very strongly- When they voted for that, they felt very strongly that they were hoping to get a safer, cleaner downtown area. And for the hotels, they put a lot of their hopes on making sure they thought they were going to get more police coverage. They thought they would get more coverage, not only around their hotels, but in the adjacent parks and area, to make sure that visitors to the city and residents felt safe in those areas. And that's not only daytime, that's also at night. And I don't know if it's really an issue, but I know that there were people who wrote me about the Parks and Recreation Department restoration. I won't call it a creation, I'll call it a restoration. But I want everyone to consider, as I said earlier, how important Santa Monica's parks are to our residents. They're also extremely important to our visitors. And imagine how many millions of people go to the bluffs at Palisades Park. It's a world destination, it's a worldwide area. So I just want to make sure that the community understands that the overall well-being, health, and quality of life of all of our residents is really part and parcel of having a directly supervised Recreation and Parks Department, Parks and Recreation Department, whatever way you want to handle it. But our parks affect our tourism industry, they affect our business community, and being the bottom rung, if you will, in a mega department was kind of a dismissal of the needs of our residents. You know, we need someone in the city to really be advocating for our parks and our recreation facilities and not just the Recreation and Parks Commission. But they need a staff member that they can turn to as well, that all of our residents can turn to, because our youth, and I repeat many times today, our seniors, and all of our residents benefit from the open space in our city. Apartment dwellers benefit from having more open space in our city. So I really didn't understand when I was getting the letters from people saying, oh my God, we don't want a Recreation and Parks Department. Well, we had one historically since the city's been founded. We may have called it different names, but it's always been there. So I believe that is not only important, it is of utmost importance. And especially since, yes, our housing programs with the passage of GS are going to be more robust and stronger. And they need a director there who focuses completely and utterly on housing, on human services, and makes sure they're really focused on that. It is two different missions that all make the lives of all of our residents better. So, thank you.
Thank you. So I just wanted to chime in and say that I support the discussions that we've had today around measures, around the measures, Measure CS and the reorganization of the departments. And one of the things that I wanted to just kind of point out briefly, again, you know, I agree with what Phil said about being able to really focus our attention, especially with everything that we have coming down the pike with housing and, you know, and the new money that's going to be coming in, and really being able to do some additional work in that field. But then also with Parks and Recreation. I know we do a lot with our cultural department, just a lot of beautiful work in that realm. But like, you know, I had a moment to take a look at other cities' websites and look at ours in terms of, you know, some of the activities that I'm really excited about with the potential of us being able to bring back here, you know, if we had a dedicated department and entity that really, because I know we've got programming, I've been very intimately involved. I've got three boys, so trust me when I say that I know we've got programming, because we've done, I'm recipient of a lot of programming here in Santa Monica. But what I'm saying is, it's really nice to be able to see some of the things that we could potentially look forward to if we had a dedicated division again on Parks and Recreation. So just looking at this one particular site, it says, Mother's Day Tea, you know, so I would be looking forward to something like that at a park. Parents Night Out, Let Us Watch The Kids. There's Neighborhood Services, like, so they'll get together and do things, you know, at the parks for like different neighborhood services. Movie Night At The Park, Parks Just Make Better, and Movies At The Park is even more fun. So, you know, again, having that dedicated staff, that dedicated plan, really will give us a lot of, a lot more opportunities to bring our community back together. Because as you know, with COVID, we've been broken for a while. And I really feel like, you know, having these opportunities to bring people together is a beautiful thing. And I can't tell you how many times, I mean, I brought my kids to the promenade to watch a movie at the end of the promenade, which was really like Los Amigos, Los Tres Amigos, or that was one of the ones that we saw. And I took them to Tonga Park to watch movies, where they had Back to the Future with the car, you know, and so, and these are the things that I think that are, that are missing. And I would really love to see that expanded and brought back. And I think that this is a perfect opportunity for us to do that. So, thank you.
Lana?
I just wanted to reiterate, and if any of the staff want to, maybe Gigi, I don't know if it would be you, but just to be very, very clear, because going, hearing both sides of the argument, if you will, about whether or not we separate those departments, I just want to make sure, and I know Carolyn emphasized, and I said it in my beginning thoughts as we went into the details, is the concern was that maybe, are we not going to actually see the positions filled that make these things actually happen, and that it's just going to be this executive level position? And I know I'm repeating that over and over again, and are we spending too much money? I just want to be very clear, it would have been nice, I know you guys do so much work on all of this, but it's nice to kind of see it if it was up there to say, if we were to keep these organizations, you know, the way they are now, the two departments, this is what we would be looking at from a financial impact and how it would impact these programs in the community, and then like, be able to kind of see it like you guys do in all the billions of presentations you make for us. Because then it just creates a visual, and we don't walk away misinterpreting what we heard. Because everyone seems to take like their own interpretation of what you guys are saying, even though it's pretty clear. So I just wanted to have somebody just really limit, like, make it very clear that this is an effort, how I'm hearing it, is staff is overwhelmed, staff is overworked, staff has been cut enormously, but yet the pressures of doing what we used to do pre-pandemic and going forward with the new, am I still in here? I don't know if you guys can hear me. Going forward with the new, the added resources that we need, just outside of the pandemic, the extra, you know, picking up the extra, you know, if it's Public Works and RRR. But I just want to make sure that we're super clear that we are doing this in an effort to respond to the community, the residents who need, who are crying for these services and who need these services, that these services are tying directly into our priorities, but also as a response to staff who has been doing the work of multiple positions. And so I just want to make sure that we're serving that too. Because if we're not serving the staff appropriately, then, then we're not going to get what we are trying to do up here. And I just want to be very clear about that. If, I don't know if that's you, David, I know you sort of already said it, or Gigi, if that's you as it pertains to finances, like, does, I want to make sure that this is clear, that we are not spending more money on an administrative level executive who is ultimately not going to, we're not going to see the fruits of this labor out in the community like we're talking about. But in fact, it's going to be a top-down approach where we're also going to be fulfilling the positions that will be doing the actual boots-on-the-ground job to get these services back out there to the community.
Just to be clear, the totality of what we're proposing to bring forward at this point in time is all outlined in the staff report. So in terms of the totality of the programs we're bringing forward, the totality of what the department separation would look like, I mean, that's at this point in time what we can afford to do. Certainly, the hope and prayer would be that over time, as we continue to recover, and we're working with partners, that we're able to build out more opportunities for the community. But in terms of what we're talking about, in terms of restorations here, is well outlined. When we get to the biennial budget process, there will be additional discussions, particularly in the area of housing and housing authority development, that we'll be looking to bring forward. But all of that work has been progressing slowly, but also a little bit on hold, depending upon how we're approaching this discussion today. So there will be more to come, for sure, as we bring forward the budget to you.
It sounds like this is the necessary first step to make in order to get to all those other priorities. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. That was my comment slash question.
Jesse, then Carolyn.
Just listening to the comments, I guess I just want to make clear for the record, while we don't have our own Department of Recreation and Parks right now, we have people who oversee those divisions, I assume currently. So what we're discussing really is not whether there will be resources for Parks and Recreation, which I understand, you know, has had movie nights and has had things like that, but rather whether or not it needs a new director level position to handle those specific areas. And I, I do believe that, one thing that concerns me a little is that this city has traditionally allocated a lot of money to affordable housing through measures that have been voted on multiple times. And I think the intention when people voted for those things was that that money go directly towards those programs and resources. And when I hear about housing trust fund money being used to finance what would previously have been general fund dollars in certain positions, which essentially is then freeing up money for other general fund positions, say, as a director of Parks and Recreation, or Recreation and Parks, it makes it so that the housing trust fund money is no longer additive. It's in fact, in some ways, keeping those dollars the same so as to hire more positions in other departments. And, and I do worry that that is in some way diluting the intention of the voters who chose to tax themselves and allocate this money in a specific way. So while I get that this is largely revenue neutral to create this new department because of the fact that we're using these trust fund dollars, I do worry that it's ultimately taking away from the amount of resources that the people of the city have voted should be allocated specifically to programming around affordable housing. So I'm not 100% convinced, I do understand why we want a Department of Housing and Human Services, why that's a department that has more than enough of a mandate to exist on its own. But I am not 100% convinced that we need another director level position when what we're clearly hearing from council is that we need a lot more staff who are able to give immediate services in the community. So I want our parks to flourish as well, but I'm not convinced that allocating the money to making it its own department would actually further that. If that could also be money that could be used to help keep them clean and do more programming. So that's a concern that I still have, and especially when there's so many unfunded priorities that I'm concerned about. The HHH grants that haven't moved from $8 million in many years, the summer lunch program that still won't exist, the hybrid meetings that we keep asking for. So in a budget-constrained universe that we are desperately still dealing with, I'm not 100% sure whether we need a new department, and whether we couldn't look to another department to say, say libraries, which obviously have a lot of overlap. There are some libraries in our parks and all sorts of things, when it comes to whether we needed another department.
Carolyn?
Yeah, I guess I'll start with the last comment that Jesse made, because that was going to be one of my questions for David. Did we explore, in looking at this new structure, did we explore the FTEs that are dedicated to housing and human services versus the FTEs that were dedicating to Parks and Cultural Affairs? And whether it makes sense for those folks to be standalone, or whether it would make sense for the Parks and Cultural Affairs to be combined with another function or department that is similar, yet small in nature, with similar functions? Do you understand what I'm asking?
Yeah, I think we talked about this, I think there was a related question about whether or not we looked to where else this function could reside in the organization. So I think, in terms of how we're looking at it preliminarily, I think each department would have about 75 people-ish. Is that right? Well, if I'm way off course, jump up. So that's roughly, I think, what each department's FTE would be. And we did, as I mentioned earlier, we did look at where else, you know, we might be able to put a Parks, Recreation, Cultural Affairs work. And we thought about, you know, could it fit within the notion of the library? I think in our discussions and thinking about where the organization is today, that that wouldn't be the best movement for that body of work, and that we were really concerned as well in thinking about how to continue to have a focus and elevate the work that they're doing. So in thinking through all those items, that's how we got to the recommendation we have for you today. Certainly, if council wants us to continue to pour into that and look into that, we're more than happy to do that. But we did spend time thinking about that and coming to the recommendation for you.
Thanks. And I want, just want to say, I understand that this discussion is probably difficult because we have staff in the room, and I just want to say how thankful I am to everyone in the city family who's done all of this really incredible, amazing work throughout the entire pandemic, who's probably dealt with a lot of trauma, and who continues to show up and be here on a Saturday answering our sometimes inane questions, so thank you. I also want to just say with respect to the CS funding, I know that we want to decrease police response times, but I also want to give like a little bit of a shout out, because I went back to the presentation that Chief Batista gave to us a couple of weeks ago. It looks like, you know, with respect to the limited resources that you all have, you're doing a really fantastic job with your response times in the way that you've worked together with all of the different departments, and then within your own department. I'm just, again, looking at the 2022 response times versus 2021. So sad to hear about Phil's experience, but I just want to say, you know, thank you to our police department for all of the work that they've been doing, and of course, fire, Public Works, et cetera, on the DART team. I would also just say that, you know, I'm really proud to live in Santa Monica, because we've been a leader regionally on so many issues, whether it's sustainability, homelessness, obviously, our cultural amenities. People come to live in this city because of our schools, because of our beaches, because of our parks, like you mentioned. And I think that staff has done a really wonderful job of kind of marrying a lot of these priorities that we have put forward as a city within limited resources and putting this framework forward. So I just want to say thank you for that. I do support pausing the paying down of our pension liabilities and reallocating the 2.5 million dollars if that was not obvious. So I don't know, as a starting point, I would just put out there that I'm supportive. I hope my fellow council members will be supportive. I'm supportive of the nice combination that we have under the way that we've proposed to spend the CS funds, just given what I believe the intent of the measure was, what I've heard from our business community, our tourism community, our residents, our chamber, et cetera, and the hotels, and what they're looking for. And so I think I'm very supportive of what we've put forward and how we want to spend the CS money. And I would say that I'm, I'm still open to hearing from my colleagues on the issue of the two departments.
Okay, so I have Phil and then Oscar.
Hi, colleagues. So, you know, I want to reiterate, and I will tell you, you know, I ran on reducing staff in the city and saying we had too many staff. And I support fully David White's request to form a separate, to spin off Recreation and Parks back into its own department. This is not new. It was destroyed during the pandemic. We've always had a cultural and community services. Before that, it was just Recreation and Parks Department. And in fact, the Recreation and Parks Department and the commission, for instance, is one of the charter commissions of the city. So this is not a new program. It's not trying to do something that creates a new department. It is a restoration of a necessary department that has constantly worked with the commission, worked with the residents of the city to open new parks, to create more opportunities. We had a park planner temporarily after the start of the pandemic, and then that park planner ended up being spun off to Public Works. So presently, even though we can't build any new parks right now, we don't have a park planner, and we don't have anyone who is of ultimate supervisory capacity over all of our wonderful park employees who work at every our wonderful park employees who work at every park in our city. And yes, the Parks Department has steadily had things removed from them over the years. Public Works acquired the Parks Maintenance Staff 10, 15 years ago. So there have been parts of that because we've never had enough supervisory capabilities in the Community and Cultural Services Department. They've always lost staff first. And I worked for, worked, our volunteer commissioner for three different Directors of Community and Cultural Services. All of them said that to get the work done, they needed, they needed more staff. They were always concerned because they had so many projects because we were also in a time of rapid park expansion, which we will be again. And we won't be able to plan that park expansion, facilities expansion, and working on the public-private partnerships that may be necessary to get Miles Playhouse open, that may be necessary to restore services at Camera Obscura and the former senior center next door. All those things take someone who really can be an advocate for the staff at every park and work in tandem. So, you know, we're talking about a Parks and Recreation Director, has suddenly this major staff outlet of dollars when we have added staff, you know, over the years that are going to be much higher paid and have less responsibility. Now, Housing and Human Services absolutely needs to be a separate department. The need is great. The state's responsibility that they've given us to add a tremendous amount of affordable housing. All those things combined are things that will not only provide the funding for that department, but are absolutely necessary to increase housing. But I want to remind you, especially council members of WIC, that in order to build that affordable housing, that most of the time won't have open space next to it, it is vitally important that Euclid Park, that Shacter, Shaffer Park, whatever, Goose Egg or now Holbrook Park, all those little parks, those little patches of green space in the city, need attention because all those people we're going to add to the city need that green space. So I, as a former Recreation and Parks Commissioner for almost 14 years and a former Chair of that Commission, I am adamant that a Parks Director and a Recreation and Parks Department is absolutely necessary for the city. And I can give you even details, even down to, for instance, the Verizon Station that was being, that was going to be utilized in Memorial Park. Well, there isn't a Recreation and Parks Director right now who's been advocating. So if the Commission members had not come to the City Council and come to David White, that Verizon broadband station would have risen in the middle of Memorial Park because we haven't had a Recreation and Parks Director who would inform the Commission, who would inform City Council, or would be someone to help retain park space adequately in our city. I can give you, right in front of me, I have 20 more examples in the last three years of where that staff was needed. And as much as, you know, I went to the voters in 2020 and said, I don't want to add more staff. I want us to reduce staff. And then unfortunately, it got reduced through nothing that any of us could do about it. But Recreation and Parks Director combined with Cultural Services, yeah, it's necessary in our city. Thank you. Oh, wait, I do have one other, I have a question. I'm sorry. And this, I want to, or not only a question, I want to back up something that's been said about the fact that we should have the ability in our city to have hybrid meetings for City Council. That should be non-negotiable. Other cities do it. You know, I was the alternate director for the West Side Cities Council of Governments the last year and a half. We're the only city in the COG that can't host a meeting because we don't even have video facilities to be able to host a West Side COG meeting. The meetings alternate between West Hollywood, Culver City and Beverly Hills because we're the only one of those cities that can't even do that. Whether we look for grants somewhere or whatever we have to do, we also have people who need the ability in this day and age in the 21st century to be able to attend a City Council meeting and speak remotely if they need to or attend Commission meetings. That needs to be a priority of our city. Thank you.
Oscar.
Yes, real quick, I also support that we postponed the pension liability so that we have resources to do what we need to do and deliver more services to our residents. I also support the organizational realignment. A lot of good points have been made. I just think that leadership really matters and having, you know, a point person, you know, in both of these areas, I think is going to be really important. When I was on the Board of Community Corporation here in Santa Monica, we started talking about the concept of having recreational rooms, like mixed-use projects, not just all housing, but having, you know, rooms to do tutoring and financial literacy workshops. And at first it was an odd sort of thing because the answer was, well, we're good in providing housing, you know, not these other social services. Let the other social service providers provide that and we'll do the housing. Low-income families need more than just housing to get out of poverty. You can break generational poverty by providing the types of support services that we know can be very effective, you know, after-school, after-school programs, for example, effective public education, all that we know works. So it's really important, I think, what we're doing here tonight is to put those, the Housing and Human Services in one department, I think is so, so important, you know, really, really important. We see also models like Virginia Avenue Park. I mean, at first it was just a park. Now it's home to a teen center, a library, you know, like we, as time got, as time went on, we added different programs, supports and services, you know, where they were needed. And we see a transformation of the community. I mean, we don't have the gang problem we used to have, in part because of the resources we put into the Pico neighborhood. And so we have to, we have to understand, you know, that, that this model that's being proposed, as staff's making this recommendation, I support it. I think there's a lot of good thinking behind it. I think we can fine tune it as we go. I think we're going to have more money coming in for a more effective and robust affordable housing program. We need to create the infrastructure. We need to lay the infrastructure so that those resources come in, we're better equipped, you know, to respond and to do a very good job. You know, with Parks and Recs, everything, you know, also has been said, you know, by Councilmember Brock. I just, I just think it's smart, you know, to do this and that's why I support it. I think leadership matters. I think we set the infrastructure by doing this tonight, by supporting this tonight. Thanks.
Okay, well, I haven't had a chance to go yet. I'll try and be brief. So sort of going down the list, I do want to emphasize that I actually think the short-term rental enforcement is really key. It is something actually that our hoteliers really were quite adamant about because every unauthorized short-term rental takes away from them. But as I pointed out earlier, it's also a potential source of revenue. So as we sit here wringing our hands about not having enough money for whatever it is we want to do, it's actually one way to raise money. The second thing I want to talk about is the proposed organizational realignment. And certainly I agree with much of what my colleagues have said and, you know, I think we should address the elephant in the room, that we had two former employees, both of whom I respect immensely and both of whom I actually consider personal friends, you know, make some comments that, you know, they were, they were having trouble sort of understanding the need for it. And I respect their comments and I think in many ways they were expressing the opinions of a lot of people in the community. We always say, why are you hiring more high-level personnel when we really need people who can deliver services on the ground to people, who can actually have, be those touchpoints for people? But as the city manager said, and maybe it's because my son's in the Army, you can't have soldiers without a general. And if we really want to have effective programming, we need people who are able to be those generals. And I think the idea of splitting up into the two departments is important for several reasons. First of all, I think being able to have someone who is solely focused on housing, human services, homelessness is really key. We can bring someone into that position who not only will sort of be familiar with the panoply of services that exist, and it is, it is a morass. I think Carolyn can address the fact that one of the problems we have is that it's all over the place. We have this funding measure and this idea and this kind of thing coming in. And I think someone who can bring that all together and create not only a coordinated program, but also accountability for the community so that they can say, here's how we're taking all of these resources, here's how we're taking all of this, and here's what we're delivering, I think is really important. And frankly, I think if we have a snowball's chance and HE double toothpicks of solving homelessness, if we don't have someone who's working on it a big portion of their time, we're never going to get where we need to be. So then the question becomes, do we create a secondary department of, you know, Rec and Parks and Cultural Services? And actually, I think a couple of things. I mean, we all, I think, have recognized that housing and homelessness have sort of sucked all the oxygen out of the room with the existing department. And that's nobody's fault. That's just the fact that both the state and our local community have insisted that we spend the bulk of our resources, time and energy on that. But I think what we should do is sort of envision what it could mean if we did have a separate department. For example, if we were to have a separate department that could focus more on cultural amenities, I think, for example, we could activate. Everyone forgets we have an amphitheater in Tongva Park. I think activating that amphitheater would not only serve us from a cultural standpoint, but would also make Tongva Park feel safer because we would have people in that park. But frankly, when I've talked to Shannon Dodd about it, it's not that she doesn't think it was a good idea, but it's just because she has X amount of bandwidth to do it. So creating some additional bandwidth, I think, could actually have some beneficial aspects or spillover aspects. So for example, you know, the Annenberg Beach House, which is this amazing resource we have, but in talking to staff there, they want to do more cultural programming. They want to do more things that will attract our residents and be something that visitors can actually come to. And now with the expansion of the North Beach Bike Pack, it's a bike path, it's a lot easier to get there. And yet they don't feel that they're able to offer the kind of programming that would be attractive to tourists simply, again, because it's a lack of bandwidth. It's nobody's fault, it's just a lack of resources. So I think, you know, and one of the things I want to emphasize in terms of the Rec and Parks issue is we now know that isolation and loneliness are not just sort of emotional issues, especially coming out of COVID. There are studies now that show that isolation, particularly among seniors, has the physical impact of smoking three packs of cigarettes a day. And so if we can use cultural and recreational amenities and programming to reduce the isolation, and we've emphasized seniors now, so we can do that, I think really could make a difference. I think emphasizing programs that would get people out of their apartments now that we're less concerned, not completely unconcerned, but less concerned about COVID transmission. And I think addressing specifically the isolation that not just seniors, but everyone has been feeling because of the pandemic, I think would not only improve our community morale, if you will, but actually be physically, emotionally beneficial to the community. So while I'm always hesitant, and I come from a largely bureaucratic organization, if there's one thing you know, working for AT&amp;T, it's bureaucracy. But, but I do think that this is an opportunity and we should view this as an opportunity to really create some more robust programming, both in the parks and in the cultural arena. So without further ado, I think it's probably time, I'm not seeing any other flags waving or hands moving, I think what I'd like to do is just so we can all go on the record of this to, is break it out into A, B, C, and D, so that everyone is clear what we're doing. So item A is the allocation of Measure CS funds. I don't know if someone wants to put that back up so people can see what we're talking about, but if, yes, that's great. I would move that we allocate Measure CS funds in accordance with the recommendation of staff. All right, moved by Davis, second by Negrete. I think what I'd like to do, because although we're not specifically allocating money, money is involved, so out of an abundance of caution, can we take a roll call vote, Ms. Anderson-Warren?
Can I, can I make a substitute motion?
Sure.
I'd like to move that we allocate Measure CS funds as noted in the staff recommendation, replacing short-term rental enforcement with expanding and strengthening 311 dispatch, community access, and responsiveness.
Is there a second for that?
I'll second.
All right, so we'll take a vote on the substitute motion, which is to replace short-term rental enforcement with expanding 311 and 911 services. Yeah, Christine.
Can I make a second friendly amendment?
Well, you can now, now you can only make a friendly amendment to the substitute motion.
All right. Can we, is there way, can we keep the short-term rental enforcement and add what, Oscar?
This is where we mentioned trade-offs before.
I thought we're already allocating money. Like, it sounds like part of what we're allocating under CS would go to address Oscar's concerns, would it not?
Well, I want to make sure everyone's clear about the amount of money we're talking about. So the amount of money for the home share enforcement is about $150,000 to engage a third-party software platform. So I just want to make sure, Oscar, in terms of what you're thinking, would this provide enough resource to get you to where you want to head or, because if we could understand that better, it might give us some better sense of what we're actually trying to move around.
How much are we spending right now in our 311 service?
Christopher, that's your baby, so do you want to? I will destroy it if you don't talk about it, so.
You tried to lurk in the background.
Yeah.
I think you need to turn the mic on. Just hit the button.
Just touch it.
Oh, great. Thanks. Christopher Smith with the City Manager's Office. So we currently have five operators, customer service assistants for the 311 program. They, fully loaded cost for a service assistant is just about $100,000. So the total program and staff is just over $600,000 or $500,000, sorry.
Can I ask a question to our city attorney? Mr. Sloan, would it be legal for us to allocate the money from CS to this purpose? Because as I'm reading it in the ballot initiative, that was not one of the items that was mentioned.
It would be legal as to whether it be advised would be something else. This was only an advisory measure that went along with the matter.
Yeah, it's a general fund tax. In fact, I don't even think it was an advisory measure, it was just the question that we asked. But it is a general fund tax, so the council can allocate the resources as you see fit. Our recommendations align with how the question was structured.
All right, so we have a substitute motion, which is to adopt the allocation of Measure CS funds, substituting the, whatever money was going to go to short-term rental enforcement, moving that to the 311 and 911 system. Jesse.
Can I ask a question about that? Because I wasn't here when this was, when this was placed on the, on the ballot. I wasn't on this council. But there was allusion earlier in this conversation that some of the organizations and entities and businesses that supported it, say the hotels, did list the home sharing as one of their priorities for which they wanted this to be spent on. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question too. I just wanted to.
Just that being considered, that being stated, because I want to make sure we live up to the, to the premise on what brought CS forward and why we voted on it. I'd like to amend my original motion to go along actually with what Councilwoman Barra suggested, so not to eliminate, not to substitute one for the other, but to add on to it, so keep the short-term rental enforcement, but add up to $100,000 of.
I think we've spent every penny of CS on this list and more, Ms., sorry, Gigi is mouthing at me, and more. So I don't think, if you want to take something, if you want to add something, you have to take something off this list. That's, I think, the bottom line.
Well, is there short-term rental enforcement, 100? Well, is there short-term rental enforcement, $150,000 a year is what, is that just a one-time thing, or is it annually $150,000? Like, once you buy the software, you have to buy it every year?
Yeah, it'll be an annual repay for the software platform year after year.
I know we didn't go into this, but I would love to hear about how many people we, how many staff people we had dedicated to short-term rental enforcement pre-pandemic and what a cost savings this is.
Yeah. Davey, can you do it? Because I don't have my notes on that.
Thank you. So we had, obviously, code officers, when the complaint comes in, they would go out and investigate. But we have someone in the office who would track the complaints, follow up, work with the, the host providers to make sure that they were complying with the law. So one person dedicated to the effort, and then other code officers who would respond on a complaint basis.
Counsel, then we have our consumer rights lawyers involved, too.
Can I, can I ask a question, Mr. Martin? Do we anticipate that moving to this enforcement platform, will that free up code enforcement officers to do code enforcement, which we also know is a community concern?
Yes, sir. I mean, the officers will still play a role, of course, but this will give us more information about what's going on out there. So where, before staff would be, you know, looking at the website, seeing where there were illegal home shares advertised, this service will provide us with that information. So it will free up staff for other things.
Freedom code, code enforcement staff to do other code enforcement.
And my recollection is that we had several staff members dedicated to this, which were eliminated during the pandemic. And all we are proposing under this is to automate the work of many staff members with this mere $150,000 allocation to a software solution that would greatly reduce time. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. I mean, we, if we were to have this level of staff in-house, it would definitely cost more than $150,000.
Thanks.
Phil?
Councilmember De La Torre, would it be better if we hold the 311 until HMP money starts coming in and try and designate part of that at that time?
That's a, that's an awesome suggestion. I'm totally high on that idea.
So I'll withdraw my second. I'll withdraw my second so we can move on.
Okay, Lana?
I think Phil offered a solution, so we can move on.
That's right. I want to take advantage of Oscar being baked right now. All right. So, so with the substitute motion withdrawn, we have a motion to allocate the Measure CS funds in accordance with staff recommendations. And I think we were going to do a roll call vote. Ms. Anderson Warren?
Councilmember De La Torre?
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Terosus?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Negrete?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Councilmember Para?
Yes.
Councilmember Swick?
Yes.
And Mayor Davis?
Yes, that passes unanimously. Now we'll go to suggestion B, the homeless strategic plan. I will move that we, I guess we're adopting the homeless strategic plan as proposed by staff with the funding coming from one-time CS funds.
Second.
All right. Can we have a vote on that as well, Ms. Anderson Warren?
Councilmember Swick?
Yes.
Councilmember Para?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Negrete?
Yes.
Councilmember Terosus?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Torre?
Yes.
And Mayor Davis?
Yes, that also passes unanimously. Now we are moving to C, organizational realignment. I would move that we direct staff to begin the organizational realignment as outlined in today's staff report.
I second.
All right. I'm going to give that to Phil, moved by Gleam, seconded by Phil. May we have a roll call vote on that, Ms. Anderson Warren?
Sure. Councilmember De La Torre?
Yes.
Councilmember Terosus?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Negrete?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Councilmember Para?
Yes.
Councilmember Swick?
Yes.
And Mayor Davis?
Yes, that also passes unanimously. And now we are moving to D, the resource reallocation for restorations of the $2.5 million from the general fund. I would move that we, and this is going to be a three-part motion, one, reallocate resources in accordance with staff recommendations, two, that we use those resources in the manner outlined by staff, and three, because I do want this to be specifically part of it, that we direct staff to designate 2% of earnings from the out-of-home wayfinding agreement with Big Outdoor to a diversity, equity, and inclusion fund. And the use of that fund will be developed by staff.
Second. Oh, sorry. Did you want to?
No, 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 go.
Second.
All right. Do we all understand that? Because that was a three-part motion. All right, let's have a roll call vote, Ms. Anderson Warren.
Councilmember Swick?
Yes.
Councilmember Para?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Negrete?
Yes.
Councilmember Terosus?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Torre?
Yes.
And Mayor Davis?
Yes, that also passes unanimously. I want to thank you all. This was a lot of work, and you all gave a lot of thought to what was discussed, and I really appreciate that. I believe we're going to be losing Mayor Pro Tem Negrete, or Lana, as she's known today. But Dave does want to remind us of what the next steps are with regard to the June budget adoption.
So I won't regurgitate everything on the slide, but I'll just really use this time to extend my profound gratitude to all of you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and City Council for all your work today. This was a lot to do. I also look around the room. I want to thank all of our department head leadership team, all the folks in this room supporting us, looking over at, right there where we're videoing or recording, all the way to Christopher over there, Gilbert, who's probably in an office somewhere on the side, all the logistical work, Sandra Santiago, Colby, so many people made today happen that I just want to take a moment and thank them for everything because this was a Herculean effort, and I'm just incredibly grateful. So thank you, everyone. And to the community members left, I see our representative from the school district. Thank you for hanging out with us. We appreciate you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
And I just, I do want to pile on a little bit. You know, I think we ask a lot of our staff. We ask you to go to community meetings in the evening. We ask you to sit through our long and tedious council meetings. And asking you to come out on a Saturday, albeit a somewhat dark and gloomy Saturday, is really you all going above and beyond. So I really was, really want to thank, I want to thank the public who gave us tremendous public input. I want to thank my fellow council members who really obviously gave tremendous, tremendous thought to the discussion here today. And I really want to thank everyone who cares about Santa Monica. We are, we are a rowdy child, but, but we are a child with tremendous potential. We're a good kid, and we're going to get better. And I really want to emphasize that so long as we all keep pulling in the same direction, we'll get where we want to be. So thank you again, everyone. I hereby adjourn this meeting. Hi. All right.